February thirty first, two thousand and eighteen, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. If you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first order of business will be accounts payable today.
Okay.
I forgot to grab the invoices, so I'll have to grab them real quick.
Um, this is not an accounts payable question per se, but I think we need to ask the highway department where we are on the chip seal budget since we chose to do patching only this year and forego. The act, the whole, we normally this year we would have done.
I see it here, they spent twenty-two thousand on it.
Right, but I think our whole bud line, line item in our budget was about a hundred and fifty, so I'm thinking. We might have a little excess there, which is something we should.
What do you do with excess, carry it over for the next year?
Or we need to talk about what purchases we're making and how to, we can manipulate the numbers within the line.
You can move it around with them line items, while I was in the highway department.
Exactly.
Okay, I didn't know for sure.
And you can roll over.
I didn't know for sure the policy of, cause I know some things are really strict, you can't move around, and sometimes you can.
There are just a few, there are just a few specific accounts where you can't move any money, but you really can't cross departments.
No, not departments.
But from the general fund, you, you could.
Okay.
Because you can pull from the general fund, but what I'm wondering is what we've spent so far and you know, where that puts us as far as an overage.
I don't think we'd use hardly any money for machinery or for, you know, equipment.
Not to me.
Not, not yet, not yet.
Right.
But yeah, well, I think, I think we got a bill in here for that one mower.
Um, and I forgot to mention before we started that there is a change to the agenda, I don't know who I gave the change to, cause I wrote it in, but John Paul canceled.
He gave it to me.
Mike Wagle was needing to get somebody approved, so he's taking.
Mike Wagle is gonna be in place of John Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I have invoices, if you need to look at that.
I'm sorry if I, that Mike Holman, I swear there wouldn't need his name.
I, there's two Mike Holman's.
Apparently, yeah.
Yeah, and this one is Hillary Larson's husband.
He's our employee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have to have it a problem with it.
Yeah. Nope, that's okay.
You were thinking of Mikey.
I did look though, cause I was like, oh, I better double check. I normally do.
You mean you were questioning why he was on there?
What's that?
You were questioning why he was on payroll?
No, uh, the Mike Holman I know doesn't have an E in his name.
Oh, your question is spelling.
And I didn't realize we had two Mike Holman's.
Yeah.
I don't think that's right, we need to get rid of one of them.
You would be the man to do it.
Not after today.
Oh, today?
This is it.
Congratulations.
Ten o'clock tomorrow.
Free experience.
So you'll go into the next month, huh?
So you don't have to worry about me following you around now, cause I don't care anymore.
Okay.
Um, what does Central Publishing Company, Dawn, for nine hundred?
It is the rule directories that we give, so they, um.
That?
That thing.
Yes, they haven't been updated for a while, and then we sell them, normally we buy them for the departments, but then we also sell them for costs to anybody that comes in. Because they will mail them to each of the people that reside in the homes, but they won't necessarily mail them to landowners or.
So how many do we keep on stock in any given year? I didn't even know that.
Um, if you divide that by nine hundred, sixteen dollars.
Sixteen dollars a piece?
I think I ordered, yeah.
So.
In lieu of that, you can also get a map, a wall map, same thing, except it's in one big wall map.
I ordered sixty of them, yeah, well, you can, we can get the whole map from the appraiser's office, but.
Yeah.
That audio election stuff, that's for your upcoming election, right, yeah, okay.
So just out of curiosity, and this is late in my term to ask this, but we never get a statement of receipts as far as income? Do you do that every month, just like you do accounts payable?
Uh, no, uh, you kind of do when you get that budget.
The, the quarterly report?
Yeah, it shows all the income, it doesn't necessarily get it broke.
It shows that, yeah, that quarterly report shows, I always wondered what that was, and that's income, yeah.
Yeah.
Receipts, it says receipts, doesn't it, yeah.
Yeah, one line item is expensive.
Yeah. It's part of that, it's all income.
But nobody does a monthly, like, we have accounts payable every month, so if we wanted to know any particular expenses for any given month, it's there, but no one does that for the income.
Accounts receivable, like, say for the EMS department, accounts receivable, say for ambulance services, people pay.
But we don't have a total.
We get, we don't have a total, like, from, uh, for Blue Cross would pay for some ambulance, some guy got hurt, and we don't have that, do we? Yeah, that'd kind of be nice to know that, wouldn't it, how much income we're getting.
Well, I was thinking about that.
When you are getting it monthly, when you get that budget.
Yeah.
You're just not seeing the detail, you're seeing what the line item says, so, like, if it's ambulance, it's coming in as patient fees, if it's health department, it's coming in as patient fees. But then you're also collecting taxes and you're, cause most of our revenue is taxes, not necessarily.
I know, I know, but just, just to see what the collections are or where they come from, such as, I've never really paid attention to us selling gravel. So I've had a lot of questions about why are you not selling gravel, or who was buying gravel, or why, or is it that much cheaper than, why are we out selling, underbidding APAC? You know, I mean, those kind of questions, I've never really seen a breakdown of, this is how much, I mean, I know, I know what you're saying, it's quarterly, under the highway department.
Yeah, monthly, it has a month to date, a quarter to date, and a year to date, so it would tell you monthly what the gravel is, but it doesn't tell you, I could look up and tell you what the monthly is, but.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's a report we could print out that details that.
Not, not that I want the extra work, I was just thinking about that in terms of, we always look at the accounts payable, and I've never kept track of the accounts receivable. Because I didn't even know for a long time that we were renting land, I mean, what is the point of the county owning land and then renting it, leasing it?
For future developments, like the, the.
The area around the, I know, the CDP, I know.
Yeah, um, well, in the, um, area that's north of Dollar General, they bought hoping to be able to incentivize a manufacturing firm to come in. And.
How many acres is that there?
I think it was forty-five acres.
Oh, really?
It's less now because of Dollar General coming out and, and there's wasteland, but.
Did we partition off, or what do you call it, subdivided for Dollar General? Did the county do that?
We gave them or sold them the land, I don't, I don't remember what it was, yeah, and then I think the city then annexed that property in to get it into.
Yeah, the city limits.
Dawn, let's on the Department of Revenue this, uh, oh no, Secretary of State, the Elvis election, two thousand, but.
So the, the, I was supposed to pay that in March, didn't know we had an invoice sitting out on, they have a website that's called Confluence, it's like a special, but we're not getting emails. But anyways, so each year, each of the counties is required to pay for the statewide voter registration system based upon the users. So we technically always had three, but we always say we're only going to access it two time, or with two users at a time.
Okay.
So that helps them pay for the security and the updates to the Elvis system and the statewide voter registration.
What is the Elvis system?
It's the voter, statewide voter registration system that we're mandated to go to.
Oh, okay, it's an online system, oh, okay, I didn't know that, thank you.
It helps stop duplicated people from registering in different counties, yeah.
Re-registered wise or something, yeah, okay.
I've had an ad bid question, why are we billed with Precision Electric and Street Plumbing, are they not the same corporation?
No, I, I don't know, I think that's.
I'm just curious.
How they are, but they send us the bill that says Precision Electric, and they send us a bill that says R and R Street Plumbing.
Okay.
I think they, they kind of are together, but, uh, I think they operate, they still have their separate.
Apparently, yeah, I just.
Obviously, yeah.
We've been pulling out quite a bit of gravel, would you guys notice that?
Yeah.
And our Thomas.
Well, some of the bills are from last several months, so that hadn't been, that were put off, and they finally got all that figured out and paid.
Oh, the ones that were.
Uh, Bill Moore's science that's out on the highway that says, sometimes they say.
Yeah, we're storm ready, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, come work for us, or we have.
You know, Mr. Minor called, he was upset that we hadn't paid him, you know.
And that is a joint effort, which we don't.
These are other cities.
Well, I think these are other ones, that nobody complained about, we, finally, finally, he finally paid him, yeah.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
We can ask him that when he comes here.
And I think some of that gravel is the catch-up for the ones that we haven't paid.
Right, that's what, that was his total access, yeah.
I saw a little of the problems in there.
That Lindbergh Volvo, that's the auditor that we had with that.
That would be the final, so we've received all.
Final auditor, uh, and that's a yearly fee or a, or just the audit when it came this summer?
It's the whole year.
The whole year?
Yeah.
They support us, and that's that Jeff guy who's here?
Yes, so we start sending them information in March, April, whenever they ask for it, and then they start accumulating it, and then they come and actually physically audit us.
Sure.
And then they finish it and they do.
Do reports and, and talk with us, that's fine, I just wanted to know what the, if it's a whole yearly deal, do we have a like a contract with them every year to do that then? Okay.
Okay, so out of curiosity here, to your office, Dawn, we have paid, like, just for example, this month. Just for you to do the billing for the landfill, a hundred and twenty-one dollars, fifty-five cents to you guys, to your department for doing it for one month. And how many hours is that then?
I think this time it was eight and a half hours, it's probably on the underside, I told Hannah she's probably being cordial with it because.
So it's a day or two a month?
Ba, yeah, basically every single day she does something with it.
And I know I've asked you this before, but just for the record, the reason that your office is doing that instead of the landfill itself is because?
I really have no idea.
When did you start doing that?
We did it, when I first started working here in ninety-four, part-time, we were billing businesses out of the clerk's office. And all we did was bill the businesses solid waste fee. Um, then they combined the noxious weed and moved the noxious weed out to the landfill, and they had three employees, um, so they would have the noxious weed director, the landfill operator. And they had a sec, full-time secretary for noxious weed, so they combined those positions and they started taking over their bills. Then when the landfill operator's health started to fail, and, um, and that person was on family medical leave, it came back to us. And in the meantime, I think a little bit prior to that, they downsized the department and cut out the full-time secretary.
So now they have?
They just replaced the full-time secretary, and so now they have the two and a part-time person. And so originally, when they hired the current landfill operator. He was told that he would be doing the billing and it would go back out there, and we had their computer in here at that point in time and was doing it off of their computers, and it never happened. So when we bought new computers, we went ahead and just installed the QuickBooks program onto our computer.
So they have nothing up there to even do it at this point?
They have computers, they have the ability, I just don't know if they have the skill.
Okay, and I wanted to mention that too, not to jump too much further away from accounts payable, but do we want to do another department gathering with them? Cause we haven't done them, and I was trying to think if there's anyone else who admits, we did the courthouse and the EMS, the health department, the highway department.
Yeah, it's hard to do the sheriff's department because.
Well, they're not really ours, so to speak, I mean, not that we couldn't have a formal gathering, but I was trying to make sure we hit all the ones that are directly under.
No, they're not the sheriff, yeah. They're not, yeah. The one that we directly under our, yeah.
Yeah. I would like us to, before the end of the year.
Yeah. Okay.
Or invite them here, I mean, if, I don't know what the, what it would be like up there to get them out for an afternoon or not, but.
Yeah, we could, yeah, and talk to.
Do you want to just, I mean, for sure, maybe after our, our conference, cause we don't even have a meeting.
Yeah, after we get back from, yeah, Wichita.
That week, so after that week.
Well.
And then you, and to get you through election.
And I can't remember what we discussed for the eighteenth, so the eighteenth you guys will need to canvas, are you coming in at eight to canvas and we start the meeting at ten? Or are you coming?
The eighteenth?
Cause we have to start.
We talked about coming in early.
We have to start by ten.
We talked about coming in early, cause we're not gonna have a meeting the week before at all, we're gonna be gone, so then we will come in at eight on the eighteenth.
Okay, eight on the eighteenth, we'll canvas, and then I will probably like start agenda items at eleven and after, I, I think that's more than enough time, but.
Eleven, exactly.
Okay.
And even if you wanted to do a lunch, like, schedule a lunch break for an hour and a half, that way if we get a little bit long, we still have an hour, and then bring people in in the afternoon, we can just plan on a long day that day. Is that all right with everyone else?
Yeah.
I just could remember for sure what we hit the second, so.
And have them guys, uh, I don't know if I can make it.
That was a really, that was a really slow response there.
That's tough for me to get up there early, but, uh, no, I can, uh, we want to have the, uh, landfill guys here then?
No, we're talking about the fact that we don't have a meeting, we're going to our trip.
Right. Right.
And then Dawn has election, and then we have to.
Canvas.
Yeah.
And then our regular meeting.
So if we start at eight, we can be done by eleven.
That's fine.
This day you guys are gonna come in at one, do you want to do lunch out there? And then come in at one, and, cause we were gonna do accounts payable and payroll and everything, and you said to move to, it's just a start time of one o'clock, and you'd have an afternoon meeting.
So we could meet out there at lunch.
Oh, start with the lunch, and I see what you're saying.
Meet out there at noon and.
Or, or you could have, have them come in and.
The thing is, somebody almost needs to.
Can they shut down during, that's what I was gonna say, do they shut down during lunch?
Somebody needs, they can't shut down, so we could go out there, of course.
We can go out there.
Of course, it's, we could go in and.
If we did something like sandwichy, then we don't have to have like a full table and all.
Well, there's only three of them and us, so.
Yeah.
We could, or, or Dawn, if she wants to come out, but, uh.
I'm saying space-wise.
They have it in the office, we can just go in their office, their dad, Hannah's got that office, so.
Yeah, I'm thinking that it'd be better to not do, fortunately, fried chicken, sorry, guys.
Well, we don't have to.
We could do. Liver and gizzards for the trash people.
Well, we can get some.
You might please someone with that, but not I.
It's, whatever, you don't like fried chicken?
No, he said liver and gizzards.
I, I don't want to force you on that, but.
That's a good idea.
Otherwise it's into December.
No, that's a good idea, I think we should do that.
If you guys are used to coming at ten anyways.
Yeah, right, that's, so we'll come in at noon, or we'll go out there at noon and then meet here at one.
I think we should go out there to like eleven, that way by the time we talk and eat and get back here at one, cause we'll have to go out there.
That's fine, all right.
Okay, so eleven o'clock on the.
Twenty-five.
Okay, let me open our email here, and do we have any more questions on accounts payable, so we can make sure we get that out of there?
Then I'm, uh, gonna sign it, cause I, is everybody okay with it?
I'm all right.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, accounts payable for, uh, in the amount of three hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and sixty-six cents. For the month of October.
On second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable, do we have any other questions or, um, discussion? If not, if not those in favor, but I, if I, motion carries. Okay, do you want to look at the payroll?
Do you want to do payroll, tell them, we might as well.
Why not, I mean.
Here, you want to sign that, or?
Yeah.
I have Jim signing, Jim will sign, then I go look at the payroll part, or the, yeah. Okay.
I didn't see anything wrong with the payroll when I looked at it, we need to study it or we good to go on?
No, I just like to look at it to refresh my memory, sometimes I glaze over.
I need a glance. Well, I look at it on the internet, yeah, maybe, you see something different on the printout, maybe, but I don't, let's see, I didn't see a problem with it.
The personal services for Katie Good, is that just a, a remanded or a pay due for overtime or vacation?
No, she's, she's coming up and helping Liz with like new things, learn how to do new things, um, that Liz had not done in Selina County.
Does she still help?
Selina County is a little bit bigger than we were, so they like segregated duties a little bit, so, and I think she's also helping with the tax sale, finish that up. Which I'm not sure what the date of the tax sale is, but.
Did Mr. Wagle get, get a raise here recently?
Yes, there's that one in the last month.
Brendan McKay, uh, we just pay him a flat fee, they're the five thousand, and the rest of them we pay the salary or the hour, like, that.
So how, how are we affording the, I mean, I don't remember what Mr. Wagle's pay was before, but five thousand a month is sixty thousand, and how, how did we, um. Budget that, I don't remember that being a budget. I know he updated, he updated budget line item for twenty twenty. So I guess maybe just because we have additional money left over in that line item. From not having a full roster, I'm assuming.
He, he sets his own pay, right?
Well, he doesn't, I mean, we have to approve it, we either approve it or we don't, but.
Does he request if he?
No, I haven't seen anything come across the desk.
I don't know if officials can set their own pay.
Yeah, but we don't have to approve their pay. I guess I would just like an explanation as to how that's gonna factor, I mean, for the rest of the year, I'm assuming it's because we have money left over in the line item of pay. For the pay.
Well. We can look in the budget here, what we gave us, right, see, make sure we have enough, what's left over.
Yeah.
But I assume there is.
So Dawn, you did the same thing?
Yes.
On your overtime, Dawn, is that still a lot of that coming out of the HR department then, okay? I don't have any issues, as long as we're within the budget. I can look at what we had, and I think we're fine, I've worked through it.
Dawn, how many hours is that overtime for you?
This month was ninety-five and a half or ninety-five and a quarter. I guess we're close to a full-time payday.
Just on payroll?
Yeah.
Or are you counting anything that you're doing for taking phone calls for HR and all that?
Um, what I had told you guys when we did this is that I would do payroll. And you would have to pay me for every hour that I work over, whether it's doing payroll or doing clerk's office, because I'm doing payroll during daytime. And I can tell you, there's a lot of payroll being done during daytime, and not just issuing payroll, but HR questions, answering. Questions, trying to get fully files.
I don't know what probably you're paying yourself for it, I'm just saying, where are we financially, what do we want to do with this hire, because at four thousand dollars for the month in overtime pay.
You could have a person.
Right.
You could hire a person.
Exactly, so, but the motion was on the table to dismiss the first candidate, and then to dismiss the rest of the candidates. So how do we want to proceed with that is kind of where I'm going with the conversation here.
I'm of the opinion that we hire a non-HR, a clerk person, and train them and bring them along to, to teach them HR, be a homegrown HR person. We can start at a smaller pay scale and one advertises an HR, and then we could raise pay as we require the skills that we need to do HR work. Or we likely find anybody that wants to work around here.
Well, Dawn, we talked about this before, would, would you want to still keep doing it in your office, but then you get all this overtime and a lot, there's a lot of work for you. Would you like to hire another employee under your office, or?
If we're gonna continue this cycle, yes, I would like to hire another employee in my office, and we train them, and, um.
That's fine.
And then we move them out.
Because we.
Or we hire somebody, but I just can't physically continue.
No, well, I know, I know, that's why, I know, that's why, well, I don't know what you would like to do, you're doing all this, so you probably have the best idea what to do to, to help yourself.
And exhausted.
Well, here's the thing, we can't keep going through rounds of interviews and rejecting everyone, you get who you get, we've had about fifteen applicants. And if the consensus is we're going to cultivate someone and train someone, then we can't squabble over what their experience is, or what exactly they know or don't know. Because we're bringing them in to train them then, which makes me question why we took all the candidates off the table from the last round.
Well, we took them off for the HR position, I think we could say that we're hiring them now for a assistant county clerk position and still interview them for that. It'd just be a different position, not the HR position.
That's fine, then maybe we need to call them all back in and do interviews, the longer we wait, the more of an issue this becomes.
But if it's gonna be under me, I'm gonna hire the person.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why.
That's fine, just like Brendan did.
And I call them and ask them.
Well, that's fine, and you could, you could interview them, just like Brendan interviewed, uh, for the office.
But how, but then how are we asking ourselves for a secretary, but that secretary works for another elected official, doesn't jive, I mean, it's one or the other.
Oh, you mean a secretary for us?
That's what we asked for, we asked for someone who was willing to do payroll, take all the employee files and, and keep everything straight in the HR department. And perform the functions of the secretary to us so that Dawn doesn't have to.
I believe in the handbook, it says that the county clerk can, uh, appoint us a secretary, if she doesn't have to do it, she can have somebody else do that for her.
Absolutely.
Well, then she could hire this.
So she could hire somebody.
Hire a person and have that person help us, help us do a commissioner like today, so, you know, in other words, she could still hire it and be working for her.
He's in the handbook, authorizes her that, she doesn't have to be the secretary, she can have somebody else do that in her stead, that's it.
That's the recording secretary, recording minutes, that's not the secretarial work of it, that's not the.
Agenda and the.
Well, it's the agenda and the recording.
Bringing all the resolutions forth, printing up all the paperwork that we have to sign, I mean, she's, you have to keep records, I mean, that's your statutory, statutory duty, to keep the records of the commission. She can't have someone else keep the records of the commission, but I'm talking about what we talked about, which wasn't my idea, taking the phone calls, relaying all the messages, getting, getting in contact with the department heads. Making the phone calls to us or for us, all the follow-up liaison stuff that takes hours of the day during working hours when there are phone calls and whatnot to be done in her office.
Well, I, I think we can work that out.
Did we approve that accounts payable?
No.
Okay, or, I'm sorry.
We did accounts payable without payroll.
The personal services pay to, uh, then Crackey, is that for his maintenance on the fire department?
Um, depending on where you're at, he's paid under ambulance with the ambulance people, and then the bottom one is for the fire department, and they pay him monthly.
Okay, a, a flat fee.
Mm-hmm. And the rest of the fire departments pay their guys quarterly, so.
Okay, I, someone did ask me why we're taking the fire truck from Sylvan over to Lucas to be serviced. And isn't the person who's getting paid to service it at Home Oil on the fire board, which would be total conflict of interest? For the board to be paying one of its own members?
He's not on the fire board, he's the fire chief.
Well, that makes it even more conflictual, that it's not a whole board making that decision, if the fire chief themselves is making that decision just to get paid to service their own. I mean, I'm.
Can we service that in Sylvan?
We can.
Yeah, Falcons probably, yeah. Well, we should request them maybe not to do that.
See, he has Sylvan Fire paying himself for a battery in the accounts payable.
I'm not sure what control you guys have over the fire boards, the only thing that we do for them is, cause they're their own taxing entity, is we just say we will take care of their money for them. So then that way, you don't have money just out there flowing around, but technically I don't think.
It goes through our system, that way we got accounting of it, yeah.
So you're saying we couldn't exempt payments from accounts payable?
Well, we don't maybe have authority over it, because we don't tax the fire, fire departments are taxed by themselves.
I guess I'm just concerned, we have someone who's been running the fire department, paying themselves with their own business to do the service on the equipment. I mean, that's like, that's the prime example of conflict of interest.
Well, maybe we should request them to. Well, maybe we should request them to, uh, not do that in the future.
Well, or just ask the fire board if they'd look at it, see if that's what they'll do.
Well, see, I don't think the fire board's doing their own paperwork. It's just someone submitting bills to Dawn. So are we in charge of it or not? Because they need to submit their own bills and have their own board do their own paperwork then. Why are we paying Dawn, who has to charge us overtime to do HR, to do the fire boards for keeping? I mean, I'm a little over, I'm pushed over the edge with all the extra work that has been justified to go through our clerk's office, who we pay, but then is charging overtime to do another job down the hall. Those fire boards make their own money.
I agree, but I think there's a conflict, the fire board's the one who'd have to make that decision, I would think.
And the accounting goes through us, just like we said, so that there's a county accounting of it, which is what we got here. They don't, otherwise it would be money that out there, they'd have their own accounting system, and it wouldn't be open to the public probably, like we have.
Well, yeah, it has to be, because it's all tax money.
Well, but they'd have to have their own accounting system to keep track of it.
But see, we appoint the fire board, so that makes them actually accountable to us, just like the halls.
I know. I think it's working fine the way it has, they've been doing it forever. If we change it now, it's gonna make it worse. Well, you're gonna make it worse, what are you gonna do? Okay, tell them to do their own accounting, we don't do this no more?
Well, why are we paying for it, is what I'm saying. We're literally paying overtime to an office that's doing the bookkeeping for another entity that collects its own taxes. Just like we do, we're paying Dawn to do Randy and bookkeeping, and then she's charging us overtime to do HR. That's crazy.
Well, beca- because everything comes through a central place, a county clerk, because then it's organized through one place in the county, that's why it's set up that way.
But in other counties, every city has their own contract with their garbage pickup man, yeah. He would go to the city council, and he would say, would you like to contract with me this year, or for X amount of years, and then that city clerk does the work. There's no way twenty-five cents per parcel is paying for the time. Because that's what we're collecting.
Well, we don't collect, we're not. We don't collect twenty-five cents per parcel. We add the parcels to the tax rule.
Well.
I had to rephrase that, you're right. For the cities, we do.
Yeah, so if he would go and just contract with the city on his own, you wouldn't have to do any of that. That all that billing would go through each city, not you. We would still be responsible for the seventy-two dollars per dump, uh, landfill access, which I still think you should have to buy a ticket and not pay it if you don't want to, don't go up there if you don't want to. But, okay, well, let's, let's move on. I would entertain a motion to do payroll.
I'll make a motion to approve counts payable, or, uh, or not counts payable, payroll. Make a motion to approve payroll, the amount of a hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred, twenty-two dollars and eighty cents for the month of October two thousand nineteen.
Has been moved and seconded for the payroll for this month. Any questions? Those in favor vote aye. If aye, motion carries. Let's look at the minutes. I'm sorry.
I said I better open the minutes. I'm talking to myself, sorry. Probably a bit in my head, not out loud. About Masonary Bones.
Sure.
Oh, Schwarzer. I got his name right.
Just take the E out.
Yeah.
I thought, wasn't, didn't I make a motion for a cora request? Or was that the week prior?
I think, for the hospital, I think that was the week prior.
Where is that?
Um, that would be ten eighteen. Fourteen, no, twenty?
Yeah.
I think it was in that one. I'll check her out to keep that address, I'll do that while I was.
Did you send out that cora? I didn't open my email if you sent me an email when I asked you that.
No, because I thought, I thought you were sending an email or something.
Yeah, I wonder if it was safe.
Was that what you guys were wanting the addresses for? Maybe it was one of the special meetings.
Well, the addresses was also to let them know that the board did not hire a consultant consultant to comply with the PBC bond, uh, requirements. So.
It's the seventeenth meeting, the special meeting. And then I was supposed to get you addresses on current board members. And then there was something last week though, and let me see if I can find it.
Where is that on the seventeenth though?
Very last paragraph. Oh.
Oh, oh, yes, it is, okay, yes.
Is that the one you wrote?
Yes, and I, see, I thought I sent that email, but when I look in my email, it's not, there's nothing in the send. Oh, yes.
I'm gonna go get that workbook really quick, and I get addresses updated and then print it, because I can do that from here. Are you guys ready?
No, this is not it. I don't know, maybe it didn't save.
Oh, it was up above.
Morning.
Morning, morning.
Okay, I'm gonna create that now and work on that.
What were you doing now?
Oh, we had some unfinished things here, like some correspondence we needed to send out and.
Cora?
Yeah. That's one.
Oh, it's here, on twenty, twenty-first. I, it's under agenda items, but I probably should have put it in the new paragraph, on the second page, the second to the bottom. Lexus Flea moved out, the hospital provides county commission copies of all contracts of providers and service contracts. Oh, it's on October twenty-first. With companies providing for the hospital and complete listing of building.
So that was, that was two weeks ago. Or no, no, it was last week.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's this week, so you're recording.
Where'd you find it?
Second page, bottom to the, second to the bottom paragraph.
Part of the agenda item.
Yeah, sorry, I probably should have broke it out.
Oh, there it is, okay, I'm sorry, I skipped right over that. Because it said it should be placed on the future agenda, review the PBC bond, we need to do that.
I probably should have just labeled that hospital, oh, really, because it's kind of all one and the same.
I thought it was in here.
Yes, so you weren't here for that, but that's what we did, and I'm going to send that, um, now. I will create that.
Will you find the rest of the minutes?
Yes, I, that's the only thing I wanted to double check, because I had skipped right over that and didn't see it.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen minutes.
With an administrative correction.
Yeah, with, uh.
As corrected, just as corrected.
As, as corrected.
I second.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes from October twenty-first. Those in favor vote aye. If aye, motion carries. And we are at eight forty-one.
Do we have any correspondence?
We do have a lot of correspondence, I'm almost thinking we should just push that until later.
I have another.
What?
DH Pace, uh, one more, there was a different door, I guess I told you about, at the, besides the fire doors.
Yeah, why is my, my computer says eight forty-one? Okay, it's on a different time zone. Do you want to just hold that off?
Yeah, let's do it later.
Let's do all the correspondence at once later, and we will move on, because.
Leanne's not here yet.
Yeah.
Just two minutes.
I could just talk briefly about this. There was another door, not the fire doors, up at the, uh, and they gave us a different separate quote for it. And it's, uh, needn't fix also, I've looked at it.
So they already gave you the quote for that add-on, and what is the other?
It's twenty, twenty-eight hundred dollars, fifty-four cents.
Is it a replacement?
Yeah, it's a replacement, and it was a big door, uh, it's like an outside one. I think, I can't remember for sure, but anyway, uh, I don't know if we want to, I don't know if we want to prove it today or nothing.
I don't see why not. I mean, I think they did a really good job at coming back, following up, I mean, obviously they didn't follow through the first time, and it saved us money.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe.
We could prove, well, they were.
I think they're already gonna be there, so.
Well, I talked to, uh, uh, Jonathan Shale, he said, uh, their plan is when they do the other doors, the fire doors, to do this too, so it'd probably be good if we could approve it.
Sure.
Because that'd all be one, oh, those that are, I'll make a motion to approve it. You want to do it later? All right, I'll make a motion then to approve this, from DH Pace, uh, contract proposal here for fixing a different door, galvanized flush door, uh, which is separate from the, uh, fire doors at the price of two thousand eight hundred sixty, or two thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars to be installed when the other doors are being installed, uh, the other fire doors would be installed.
I second that motion to.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the bid for an additional amount of two thousand eight hundred.
Eighty-four.
Uh, for the nursing home fire doors.
Yeah.
Any further questions, discussion? Those in favor vote aye.
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 Motion carries.
Not really, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rhonda and I were working with Comtech and Thomson Reuters on getting our taxes online. Comtech would need a four hundred and eighty dollar one-time setup fee. Thomson Reuters would need a six thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollar one-time fee and fourteen fifty yearly to maintain it.
Fourteen hundred fifty dollars yearly to maintain it?
And, and what's the six thousand?
Nine hundred ninety-five.
Why is one so much higher than the other?
It's the setup fee.
Which was the one, what was the first price, the cheaper one?
Four eighty. That's our Comtech, that's our system we work with.
And that would work for us?
No, they don't have that to offer. They would have to set up something so that Thomson Reuters could access and pull.
Oh.
But is there a yearly fee for Comtech or just Thomson Reuters?
Just the one-time for Comtech, which to me is a lot of money.
Did you say it was fourteen?
Fourteen fifty a year.
And how much is set up?
Six thousand nine hundred ninety-five to Thomson Reuters and four hundred and eighty dollars to Comtech.
And that Comtech would be a one-time thing, four ninety?
Yes.
But then we would have to pay this one-time sixty-nine hundred dollars to Thomson Reuters, and then fourteen fifty every year after.
How long have we had Thomson Reuters running our website, anybody know?
Since we went with the website.
And is that a contract, or we just pay as you go, or?
Originally, it was with Infinitech. There's probably some security things that we should discuss in executive sessions, so.
Over the taxes?
Over the website. Well, I'll just say it. We were told by the Secretary of State's office that our website and eight others that are still on Thomson Reuters was hacked during the August primary election.
This year?
Yes, and Thomson Reuters apparently is not willing to, um, acknowledge it or fix some of the security issues, so they're asking us to move away from Thomson Reuters for a website. But I haven't really had time to start looking at websites, so it kind of alarms me. But originally, it was with Infinitech, and all of the contracts are with Infinitech, when we, when Infinitech told the Thomson Reuters they didn't change any of the agreements, so that's what, now, I don't, I didn't notice that our website was down, but we weren't also posting it. But apparently, um, the counties that were posting the election day results had big giant middle fingers and swear words posted all over their websites. And so, um, and apparently, some of this could have been resolved if they were just installing patches, but this is all just basically what they told us, I haven't really checked to myself. I do know that we've had an issue posting the agenda up ever since probably about that time. We have to kind of do a backdoor way to get the agenda posted. So, I don't know, maybe it's time to consider something different.
Other internet providers around, it'd probably be better.
So, Leanne, do you do much with, um, the website at all, or you, you don't really? So it's mostly just the clerk's office, and then who else is really accessing that?
The health department.
Yeah.
It does quite frequently. Um, I think emergency management did when he was up, but basically, most of the departments are just posting like information or, or links to get whatever it is that they need, and so there's not a lot of maintenance to it besides that. Um, the other thing that Leanne and I talked about, and I think I had said this in the May meeting, we have the capabilities of printing the tax rule to a PDF. Would printing the tax rule to a PDF and making the link available on the website be enough to answer the questions that people have that are wanting to look?
I think that makes the search process a little more cumbersome now. I mean, I'm in favor of spending money to give public access to the information. I think.
That's a lot of money.
It's only fourteen hundred and fifty dollars a year. I mean, that's nothing compared to what we pay for IT and all that stuff. Yeah, the initial setup is kind of expensive, but if we don't go with Thomson Reuters, maybe there is something a little more affordable, maybe that could be part of our new setup package if we go with a new provider for our website. But I think, you know, since we know we're using Comtech, we can go ahead and have Comtech get that prepared, so that anybody that comes in that wants to do that is.
I'm concerned if the state finds him to be vulnerable and not fix it, you're looking at ransomware here too. If they're not gonna fix this, they won't fix a ransomware.
Well, okay, so, let's, let's talk about it a little bit. So Infinitech used to be a software provider similar to our Comtech. It was one of the choices that you had, you had CIC, um, Infinitech or Comtech, and originally Comtech was with CIC for your software providers. And Lincoln County at the time had what was called Sunrise Software, was, which was a mom-and-pop software company. So when they decided that they were gonna retire, they joined forces with CIC, and we went with them. So the two major tax things was Infinitec, Comtech, or the three, and CIC, to do our accounting system. Now, when Infinitec sold, they sold to Thomson Reuters, and they took over that aspect of it, so the taxation and everything else. When we bought the website, it's a different, it's different, but it's still the same company. So when they bought Infinitec, they kind of took over everything. Now, I don't know if we went to a different website, if they would be able to do that, because Infinitec has and understands the tax rule process. So they kind of built that module as part of their package for their bookkeeping, their taxation programs, what we have with Comtech. I don't know if we switched websites, whether they would have that ability to do that, because that's still a software company. Does that make sense? Because that's why it's costing us seven thousand dollars, because they're gonna program all of our tax rule information. We're gonna send it to them, and they're gonna program it, process it, and spit it out, and give you a link onto the website.
I wonder if Paulson Communications did that.
I think it's gonna have to be Comtech, CIC, or Inf.
Wilson doesn't, they don't do websites. They farm it out to people like us.
It's, it's something we should be discussing.
Well, what we can do is we can transfer over to a different web provider, if that's the proper term.
And I'm assuming that if we went with those at that cost, they would be able to have the link installed on the website. It's just, it's just two different things.
We can wrap that initial fee into the transfer of getting their service. What we also want is this provided on our website. You know what I mean? I mean, it might cost something, but maybe it won't cost seven thousand dollars. But I think we should move forward with Comtech and have them do their end prep for the four hundred and eighty bucks. I mean, we can take that right out of the commission budget and have it ready to go. That way, we can get this. If Thomson Reuters stays or goes, whoever's on that end, it's up to them to do the rest of the work. Comtech's done. That initial setup fee, we can afford that out of this year's budget.
Well, we don't need to do that yet, until you're ready for the other people, if you're gonna get somebody.
I would want to talk to Sean and get his take on. Sean is Comtech, from Comtech. See what he thinks about setting it up, and then whoever takes it. I mean, I would assume it wouldn't matter, but I don't know that, because I'm not checking.
It's all with him first. I'm what to do here.
Will we ask you to do that? Would you be willing to follow up on that end of it?
I'll try. I just printed tax statements yesterday, so I'm kind of.
You're in the middle, you're busy.
It wouldn't need to be immediately. What's, no big hurry now, is there?
No, but as we come to the end of the year, we come to the end of this year's budget, you know, I mean, that's.
I tried to shoot him an email.
And if we did this sixty-nine ninety-five.
By my calculations, the commission itself can afford to pay Comtech to be prepped. We don't have to.
But if we did this sixty-nine ninety-five or something similar to that from another company, what budget would that come out of?
Well, that's what we would have to look at.
Yeah. Then a fourteen fifty a year.
You don't think putting it on a PDF and putting it on our website would be sufficient? You could search by name, probably legal.
But how many years back? Wouldn't you have to do a PDF for every single document, for every parcel, for every year, for so many years? Like, that's like, if you did ten years, let's just say.
I'm not sure if that fee is going to do you every single year. I think it's only gonna do you the current year, and then you would move forward.
I would assume.
Otherwise, they'll have to pay, I think we'd have to pay that fourteen hundred dollars for every year that you add up.
Every year backwards.
That'd be tremendous amount of data. If you're going back, how far are we gonna go back? Ten years, fifty years? You know, that'd be tremendous amount of data.
I just don't know if there's enough.
You may not be able to access something twenty years later.
Not unless somebody wants to come get our old tax rolls.
Anything that's, anything that's already digital is more appropriate. Like Dawn went back in her office and did minutes, and what else did you do? Resolutions on, so that we can at least see them back.
See, we can, I have the real estate rule right now, well, I haven't converted it to PDF, but I can convert it to PDF, and it's sitting on my computer. We can upload, I just don't know if the file is too big. It's three hundred and some pages. It's called a condensed. We could do a bigger one. I don't know the difference between just that it went from a stack this big to a stack this big, but, but if you do the Ctrl F, you can search whatever you're looking for.
Like by name, by parcel number.
If I wanted to search by Harlow, I could search. That way, if you knew the KMA number, you could search the KMA number.
But does it also have the breakdown? Like, if you have a residential don style, a detached garage, a chicken coop, I mean, does it have any of that breakdown, like it does on your actual statement?
No, I don't think it does on your statement either, does it?
Doesn't get that.
It just says FR or AR, doesn't it?
Which is farm residence or ag land. They don't break out your garages and your chicken coops and things.
And your barns and your machine sheds and.
Rhonda can do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Of course, they do that, because how else do they come up with your dollar amount?
Rhonda does for taxing a new building.
But that's the whole point, is you built a new Morton building, and I built a new Morton building, and they're the same size. How much are you paying, Randy?
I don't know.
I mean, that's the point of the conversation. It's, it is equitable.
But they could tell you up there.
And that's the whole point of why we were being asked this at the table. Yes, every person could come in individually and show their face in the appraiser's office and request so-and-so's information for, you know, because it's their neighbor. And ask, and have their own information, obviously, because they get their own tax roll. We're saying someone wants to look at it.
You want to look at it online, is what you're saying. So all that information online for everybody, but is it that?
Because it's public knowledge.
Is Orca only one year?
Yes, that's the problem. Orca is the current year.
So maybe the aspect is to ask the state if they would give more, access to more years than just.
Yeah, why doesn't Orca have a database that is, but Orca also does, due to breakdown, I think, was part of the issue. I think that's what.
Because it'd be tremendously big amount of data. You're talking about trillions of terabytes of data.
I can tell you right now, if you go to other states, their own state has that retrieval.
Yeah, well.
I mean, Kansas is very locked down with their public information. I mean, you have to go in person, go to the desk, know who you're asking for, know what numbers to ask, and then get that information personally. It should be available, I mean.
Well, you need to lobby the state about that.
Yeah, absolutely. But that doesn't mean we can't make it happen too. Other counties do.
But is it worth it? How many people are gonna utilize that system? We're gonna spend.
Well, I don't think you were here yet, but there was, last year, we dealt with the issue that certain people were being taxed differently on their gravel pits than other landowners. So that, that raised the question then, you know, hey, if I'm paying X amount on my gravel pit and so-and-so, it doesn't have to pay that. Why? Where is the miscommunication there? There has to be either human error, a satellite imagery error of the portion of land that's being taxed, or just a mistake.
Well, that may be true, but how would this system help that?
Because like I said, if you're my neighbor and I see you putting up a building, and I realize that you're only paying half the taxes on your building, and I have the same building, I'm gonna say something, and I'm gonna get my taxes reduced.
Yeah, but you don't need this system to find that out. You could come in here and find it out. You don't need to have all this on the internet with a big, huge database to find that out, Alexis. And I know.
Well, that's what we, that's what we were requested to do.
Yeah.
I know you don't have to. I know you don't have to.
Well, I know it's, it would be nice, but how many people are gonna utilize it? In the county?
Well, unless they utilize it, the more property tax they end up paying without knowing why.
And I know it's a nice service, but it depends on what it costs us, and that's what it comes down to, like everything else, money. Is it worth it for the money we gotta spend?
But for seven thousand dollars and fifteen hundred a year, there are some big-time landowners, I'm sure, that would like to know what they're paying comparable to so-and-so on the other border of the county. I mean, it, who knows? Who has seen that spreadsheet? Not I.
Yeah. You know, you got, I think you're talking more of a state issue here than a county issue. The state database was.
Well, not when we're one of the top fifteen per capita test counties in the whole state. It's not a state issue. Definitely relative to our, our financial situation. We can bring this up again. I think we should, could you please at least ask Comtech if they do their end of the setup, does that mean anybody can plug into it? And then we can start exploring changing our website, because whether or not you guys want to agree to putting on the online database access to the website, we still might need to change our provider. Does that make sense?
There are other people tied to Thomson Reuters that we could deal with.
Yeah.
There are several websites. There's lots of options now.
But for the processing of all this data through Rhonda, is there?
For taxes.
For taxes, yeah. Well, that's what people want to know.
I was just looking at Sling County. I don't see where it's, it is breaking out.
It should say valuation.
It just says A, so that's ag land, and it does break out by something. I don't know, but you can't view past years, so it must be coming to Orca. But taxes, it shows multiple years.
For where? I'm sorry.
I was looking at Sling County, just because I know they have it home there, but you can only view.
We should maybe ask other counties. You have, haven't you? How what they do.
Well, I've, I've talked to other commissioners.
You said they have, you were saying. But we ought to find out.
Details of who they use or how much they pay or.
Well, when we go down to Wichita next week or two weeks, we ought to talk to some of those commissioners, say, hey, do you have this, and who you deal with, and maybe they could help us.
Yeah. If you would just maybe answer the question for us as to whether Comtech has to be particular in their setup for any, you know, they have to have data from the company that we know is hooking in. And then, then we can go from there with them, and then we'll figure out.
I'm not against, I'm not against this. I think it's good service, what you ask.
Oh, I'm about to say money. We can find a way to save money.
Yeah, if, if it's.
But I also think it's money well spent. They're.
I, I'm not against it if it's feasible, it's not a hassle to operate and to set up and all that.
Okay. We are over time here by just a minute, so do you have anything else for us?
Nope, just the treasures, motor vehicle.
Give us the motor vehicles.
Quarterly.
You can always look that over later, and if you have questions, let me know.
Yeah. Is everything about normal on funds? Like, about average? No, no discrepancies or anything?
Do you, do you only have access to certain types of checkings, like this, like the money market, and then the regular checking, like as a government entity?
CDs.
Yeah, I know about the savings or those interest bearing, but I happen to know right now, there's a, like a special, it's checking through Citizens Bank that's doing two and a half percent. If that's the account where you have your debit card with, yada, yada. I mean, are we eligible for anything like that as a government entity? Do you know?
I don't think so. And we can't go out to the, to the Kansas municipal pool unless our community will not do anything for us.
I just wonder, it's only up to ten thousand dollars anyway, I think, but it's still, even the over, above ten thousand is higher than what the CDs are paying out. It's crazy. Okay. And the tax sale, do you have any updates on that?
Nope, I do not.
Or when that's happening? We're just waiting on the county attorney's office?
Of course. And hopefully now it won't be until January, I'm hoping.
Have you still had people paying since it's paying on their back? Okay. Oh, I do have one more question. The Wind Power Economic Benefit Fund CDs. We have not looked at the bond book yet. We wanted to look at it in an open session, but are you, can you make us aware of the connection? And I know, Dawn, you had mentioned this before, as to using that as a collateral for the hospital bond?
I don't know.
You weren't a part of that? I mean, do you, could you want to elaborate a little bit?
I wouldn't necessarily say it's collateral, but in order for us to get the bond rating that we have, and we have to do the bond rating, I think, every three years, so there, that probably should be coming up again. They use that information, and because we have that cushion that we fall back on, and we told the bond rating company that that is for that, if it should not.
I mean, collateral is a generic term in other words. They're banking on whatever you have there to rate you for your percentage that you're eligible for, yeah.
And it boosts us, so.
Do you know where those numbers fall? You know, up to X amount was reducing us to a certain percentage, anything like that? Do we have access to that paperwork?
We, you'd have to talk to who are, who do we get the bond from? What, some banks, right?
Well, probably.
The bankers would tell us, probably.
Probably the person that could answer that the most would be that Dustin E V that helped, like, negotiate and figure out the bond, and, and his company, like, sold him at market.
What's that company called?
I'll have to search you.
We don't, who did we get the bond from, from the hospital?
They sell them, so we really don't know who the owners of the bonds are at all.
But, but, but a company, but we went through some company or a bank, a bank, right?
Well, we need to look at those.
Well, they would know why, based on collateral.
You guys are asking me questions that we did three years ago, so I would really have to do some research. You tell me what you want.
I just brought it up. I thought you might know. So that would be something that maybe you should be a part of our next conversation on that, so you kind of know where we are and what those dollar amounts equal and what that means. I don't have any other questions. Does anyone?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
We're ready for the highway department.
We brought a guest, but first we'll meet to you.
Hi.
Scott Hartman of Van Keppel Company.
Nice to meet you.
What company?
Van Keppel.
Alexis Flew.
I'm Randy Lowman.
I'm Jim Gableman.
We can just skip to that part if you're all right.
Sure.
So we've been looking at equipment and excavators.
You could come up there if you want to.
Yes, slide a chair.
Move a chair up if you want to, thank you.
So we've, we've been getting quotes back on new, return leases and used from all the many manufacturers, the John Deere, Volvo, Matsui, and Cat. So far, the best deal that we've come across has been through Van Keppel. They have a twenty thirteen Volvo two-twenty excavator. It's in Wisconsin. The delivery price was eight-two-five, you said?
Yes.
So for a brand-new one, with all the bells and whistles that we would need on it, this size, the quote was a hundred and sixty-five thousand. For a brand-new Volvo, for a Caterpillar, was two hundred and sixteen thousand for that comparable size. This one, the only difference is it doesn't have a hydraulic quick coupler.
Discrepancy, nice.
Volvos generally your lowest-cost option, because they're trying to break into the market here. We don't have Volvos everywhere.
And what are our capabilities of servicing locally or regionally?
We're through to Pica or Garden City.
Yeah, Pica, Wichita, Garden City. We got trucks everywhere.
We would have to haul it there, or?
They could come up.
We have, we have, coming right up here, yeah.
And what kind of warranty or service?
With, buying a used piece, I mean, usually there's not warranty left.
Okay.
We can, I got a price this morning on an extended warranty, like a ninety-day, five-hundred-hour warranty is a thousand dollars. Pretty, in, you know, dollar-wise, you still have to pay for travel time and mileage to get a technician here, but they cover powertrain hydraulics on that, in case anything major happens.
Engine transmission?
Oh, yeah, that's part of that, yeah. Yep, part of that. It's a three-thousand-hour machine. It's a two thousand thirteen.
How many hours?
Three thousand.
Your excavator life is generally twelve to fifteen thousand hours.
Volvo engine?
Yes, yes.
Are those from Sweden?
Yes, exactly.
Yep. Hydraulic couplers, is that an add-on that you can fix?
We would just get a manual, we would update to a manual quick attach option on there.
Where you got one pin?
One pin instead of the main wing pins.
That's not a handicap, it's just a bell and whistle thing, yeah.
With that, we would get, we'd have it to off machinery to either change the pin size of that manual adapter, or change the pins on our other attachments off the wield excavator we have. So that way, both units can use the same.
So that ain't no issue of any kind.
Our main concern is the hydraulic compactor that we already have for the one we got. That's one thing we do need, and we can put it over onto this machine, no problem.
You did check, check the transfers, so we're good to go.
The same pin size and everything, so.
So that, that was our main concern, that we can use that compactor. And it comes with a, how big a bucket?
Forty-two inch bucket.
Forty-two inch.
And the hydraulic.
Toothed bucket and a hydraulic thumb.
Oh, extra on thumb and auxiliary hydraulics.
And we have an agreement here among the administration that you think this is the best way to go.
Corey, do you think that's, you like this?
Pardon?
You like this?
Yes, yes.
Option? Now, you're, and you have the capability, and I talked to Brendan a little bit about it yesterday, about. Option, now you're, and you have the capability, and I talked to Brendan a little bit about it yesterday, about you could put that tool eventually, maybe to use this for doing pilings, right?
I talked with Otto County, they currently use a Cat three twenty-nine, so that is a sixty-five thousand pound excavator, that is ten and a half to eleven foot wide with the tracks, so it's an oversized overweight every time you move it. This is a fifty thousand pound excavator, so it's a little bit smaller, but the hydraulics are comparable, it's thirty horsepower less than the Caterpillar. Driving over the back, yeah, it's, it, and theirs is a sixty ton pilot rating, the state requires fifty ton pilot rating. So, I don't see an issue with it, it has the hydraulics to do it.
It'd be feasible to use for your bridge piling or claytor that we were wanting to do, right?
In addition with that, the Lego block, the Tanner, might have talked with you guys a bit about in the past. In areas where it's not a large, where you're only going to be going up five feet off the ground at most, they, you can get Lego blocks, they call them, leftover concrete from Salina. They're like fifty dollars block, and each block, I believe, the size, he told me is correct, is two and a half tons of concrete. And they basically, they build it like Legos, they have one and a half buried deep in the ground, so that one and a half sit up top, and ninety it off, so thirty foot wide span is forty-two bricks for each embankment. So each embankment just for those cost is under three thousand dollars, which he said is incredibly cheap embankment. But with our excavator currently, we can't do any of those.
You can't even move the stuff.
And we looked at, when Tanner was here yesterday, or Tuesday, we went and looked in our north lot to see what we have left. We have the I beam, so we want to test it out on where the water ponds are at here on one seventieth, I believe. Going up towards landfill, that bridge is it, it needs, it could have been changed out years ago, it, it's not going to last another year. That would be a good candidate for trying this out, it's what your neighboring counties do for these similar types, because your cost is so drastically lower, it's about a quarter of the price for an embankment, do it that way. But in order to do that, you have to have an excavator or crane. An excavator on tracks, we have an excavator, but it's on wheels, so you have all this extra weight three feet up in the air, and they don't like being up in the air that is, and you have flexing sidewalls.
You have a lot more stability with this truck.
It's not, it's not, it's not a safe option.
Right. The wheeled excavator mainly is made to stay on flat ground.
So are we selling our wheeled excavator, or what's the plan?
I would recommend keeping it, because there's no resale value in those, and we do use it to trim trees, there's basically, it's, it's, it's resale value is what it's worth in scrap, maybe a little bit more. They don't generally go for much because.
And we can fare the maintenance on it ourselves, and it's kind of accommodating for.
To a point, unless it gets.
If it goes, if there's a big repair on it, then. But, well, it's still working now.
It's in shape that we can kind of maintain it, and it's more economical to keep it.
If we have a big issue on it, the price difference from selling it now versus selling it after we have a big issue is going to be miniscule, because as you know.
Save you time on the big machine too.
Correct.
Do the little stuff on the.
The guys claim they really like it to trim trees with, so they said it does work good to trim trees.
A lot of counties I talk to that have the wheeled excavator, if you keep it up on the road, you, you can reach out there and you can trim the trees, and a lot of, a lot of counties like it for, for that type of use.
But we can't, yeah, we haven't been able to do any of our own larger culvert or smaller bridge work because of.
You can't get off the road with it.
Yeah.
They, they took it at where it's sitting right now, I don't remember what intersection it's on, but they were, used it down on that bridge, and Steve told me, he said they were scared to death to get down there with it, they're afraid it was going to upset it, and it, it's just not made to go off road, I mean, that's.
Your opinion is this is a good buy?
Yes, I, I honestly feel.
Make the motion to buy it?
For that kind of money, absolutely.
I make the motion, we buy the Volvo excavator as.
Would you guys like to add the extended warranty?
Yeah, that, that warranty had to go with it.
A thousand dollars, yeah.
A thousand dollars.
For ninety days.
We need a specific dollar amount, please, for the motion.
So it'd be eighty-six thousand dollars.
Eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Eighty-three five, plus the thousand dollar extended warranty.
What is the model?
Um, and it's, it's an EC two twenty D.
Now eighty-three five is with extended warranty.
That's with the extended.
That is with extended warranty.
Two twenty D, EC two twenty D.
But on the total.
Eighty-three five.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I just want to make sure you get all that.
Here's the, the big reason why, with excavators, usually use rented lease ones, the back cap, corners of the cab are always damaged, all of them.
Excuse me one minute, we have a motion on the table, would you like to second?
Did you get the motion, or should I start over?
I got that you moved to buy the Volvo excavator, and I'm going to go ahead and put the model number EC two twenty D in the amount of eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars plus the one thousand dollar extended warranty.
No, that includes it.
Includes the warranty.
Oh, with A, so you could just put that dollar amount with.
With, 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 which, with the, with, yeah, that's what I just wanted to make sure, because.
How about I just take the thousand dollars out?
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
Make it eighty-two and then add the thousand.
Yeah, it was eighty-two five was purchase price.
Eighty, eighty-two five is purchase price.
And the company's name, again?
Van Kepel.
Van, K E.
E P P E L.
A lot of rust on there, we need this.
Got that one done, from Van Kepel?
Yeah. Where are you based on?
I live in Beloit.
Oh.
Yeah, I work north central, northwest Kansas, so.
I think I meant you right.
Yes, she's the economic developer in Beloit, yes.
Seconded by.
I'll second.
So it has been moved and seconded to purchase the used track excavator with the warranty at the recommendation of the highway department supervision, is there any further discussion?
The only thing, are you going to deliver this before we pay for it, so we can look at it, beans it's in Wisconsin, or do?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring it in, get it serviced, deliver it to you, we'll go over it, and then we'll, then if something that you don't like, we'll either take, we'll, we'll take care of it, yeah.
Is contingent upon.
Upon delivery, we'll go deliver, upon delivery and review and.
Review and inspection.
Review, inspection by our highway department management, and when you guys approve, when you guys approve it, then tell, tell Don and we'll pay for it.
Yeah, that's, I'm not expecting any of it, that's right.
Well, it'll be the end of the month anyway, wouldn't it? Or would you do middle, mid, you could do mid-month?
I could do mid-month if you guys approve it.
It'll be, because we're going to bring it in, get it serviced, time we get a truck down here, it'll probably be two to three, probably two to three weeks.
So that's fine, it'll probably end up being the end of the month next month.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm okay with that, I know how counties work, and we're not too worried about that.
Sounds good, thank you for that question. Any further discussion?
Could I get somebody to sign a sales order?
Yes, we will, I'll sign it. Those in favor vote aye, aye. Motion carries, I will sign.
And I put on there the ninety day, five hundred hour extended warranty, and change the price and.
Have you, Gordon, have you been familiar with Volvos before?
No, I haven't, just very little, but I've heard a lot of good things about them, so.
You both okay with them, you like them?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've used their, their articulating trucks or.
Okay, well, obviously the big name, the big name is Caterpillar, of course, Caterpillar's expensive.
Worldwide Volvo is one of the biggest.
Yeah, they are.
And the only thing I've heard mainly about Volvo is that front end loaders are second to none, they're, they're good front end loaders.
Okay, good, thanks. Here Alexis, can I have one too?
So.
You probably need to go to the factory and check this out.
Do you have one?
There's shipping for it, yeah.
We like this one so much, generally with excavators, anyone that's ever been used, in the back corners of the cab, there is damage to it. Anything when they swing, everything like that, so when we saw this, there's not much hours, but, I mean, if you go look at the one out here, the quarry, there, you can't get doors open on them.
The operator here.
I've run one probably three thousand hours, so.
I'm excited about getting it here, so, I'll, I'll get a truck underneath as quick as we can, we'll go from there.
Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Have a great day.
You too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Then also in regards with equipment, our dump trucks, I guess, it's what previous budgets, it's been on there constantly to replace trucks. Past years, they just never planned the budget out or something happened.
Well, they had been graders, had been purchased every year for several years, so I think that's where the majority of all the.
One of our dump trucks has a million miles on it.
Wow, really, literally?
It has eight hundred and sixty thousand when the gauge was pulled out.
Wow.
Years and years ago.
That's impressive.
So we're looking into that, and we call, Russell County just traded in their fleet, so we're trying to see where they traded their fleet in that.
I found, I found out they didn't.
They didn't trade it?
And we, they're getting rid of one and they're going to sell on purple way, but they bought a new Peterbilt, so.
Eldrum County is trading one of theirs into Salina, Kenworth, in about two weeks. It only has two hundred and thirty thousand miles on it, which for those trucks is not much, because we got a million miles on some of ours. They're, they think the price will be around fourteen thousand, so for a new truck like that, with dump body and everything, you're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, am I not wrong in that? With a dump body, you're a hundred.
I, I never priced for new one, I didn't, that, no, I didn't, but that sounds right.
Well, they're up there, yeah.
They're a hundred and fifty, yeah.
Well, my brother, you saw him, you know, he's doing this for ever.
And most of our, the, the ones that would be replacing are from nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, or nineteen ninety-three, and this is a two thousand six model. We'd like, not to agree to purchase it yet, but to go look at it, and if it does look.
Where is it?
It'll be in Salina in two weeks, Ellsworth is trading theirs in, it's an automatic.
And we can drive over to Ellsworth and visit with them, Ellsworth County has a in-depth service record of every piece of equipment they got, they got a big thick file folder, they take oil samples, they do everything over there, they have an excellent maintenance program.
Okay.
So, we can drive over there someday and talk to them about it, and see if they know if there's anything wrong with it before the final deal.
Sure.
I'd recommend if you like it, and it's good, I'd take an option on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it's priced right.
Yeah, that's.
For nine more miles.
You'd want to, you'd want to get an option on that, so somebody can't take it out from behind you until you come in here.
I mean, I mean, that's a good price, I think.
Yeah.
And then a couple other things we had, Spelman Creek, I talked with Kirk and Michael, their survey marker to do the legal description of the right of way we would be purchasing, they have to have their survey come out and do it. The marker that we need is listed in the records is obliterated, it's no longer there, so he's going to have to spend additional time surveying to get legal description. And they quoted us six hundred dollars for that survey and road description.
According to where, you already have it flagged, right?
Yes. So we can proceed with getting that legal description, total area, so we can go to the appraisers office to get evaluation of the land to go to Wally with.
Does Kirk and Mike will do that surveying themselves?
Yes, that's what that six hundred dollars will be for, they have an in-house surveyor.
Okay.
So go ahead with that then.
Yeah.
And then Wally asked to have the road open and put warning signs back up there, just saying travel your own at risk. I do not recommend that because it is family worship.
We went out and looked at it, I'm saying this for public record, that you weren't there that day, we ended up going over there, and it's just.
Too unsafe.
Well, I've been there before.
Yeah, I know, you've seen it.
And I've, well, I've seen.
That crack I showed you in the picture, that's four foot now lower.
Well, I, I'm.
There's so much movement of the bank side.
Well, I'm worrying under the beams and the woods, but I seen them, but one, I came out there three, four months ago, and now they're shifted, and I saw, yeah, because, you know, you go over there with a big tractor or a truck, that thing could go down, and we had one go down, you know, a little bridge by me there, so we don't need that.
He, he asked me to ask.
I want to accommodate those farmers.
I would ask, but I, I don't believe they would open it, but I would ask for it.
Well, we want to accommodate the farmers, but man, we got to worry about our safety.
And it's on the high priority, and you're already making plans to reroute the road, and unfortunately, I know it's a pain for everybody's this harvest, because things are already happening and it had happened, but it's just not a smart move for us to risk anything.
We, we can't go with handshake deals like we've done in the past, that's why we have to, it takes longer to get things done.
Wally and Rick would stay on the road, but we can't guarantee Fred and Farquhar coming up there.
Exactly.
Or that that car, I mean, when you get semis through there, that bank side is just moving, moving, moving.
Well, you get a thousand bushels of weed on a semi that weighs ninety thousand pounds, that thing could go down.
Oh, yeah.
Every day for hours, I mean, yeah, that's, I agree, it's just unfortunate.
Yeah.
Did he give us a, I'm sorry if you said this, the price, or?
No, not, he just said he wanted paid for it, so Kirk and Michael do the surveying, figure out the total acreage of it, which is going to be the, it's, yeah, it's going to be, oh, it's going to be a quarter bank. They, and then we'll go to the appraisers office to get what the value of that is taxed for.
You'll let him know.
And you guys will design a road, or will Kirk and Michael, Tanner help you design a road, or you?
I've already talked with him on it, and I thought I can draw something up, and he agreed with me how I was.
And you all get your sixty or forty foot rightaways and culvert ditches and everything, okay.
We, the east ditch, or the west ditch that's already there, will become the east ditch of the new road.
Okay.
And the western ditch will cut, we'll use that material to build that road up, and fill in the holes along the, what will be the eastern side.
Okay.
We'll have some culverts to put in, we'll have three.
Well, we know that, that's part of the deal.
Yeah. Then there's two copies of this here.
That's the best way to go though, to get away from that crib.
Yeah. There's two copies here, the local road safety plan, the LRSP. It's something that they started to do, they started the program last year. It's going forward, basically the state has hired engineering consulting firms to get with us to go over all of our major collectors and roadways. And it's a ninety-ten split, the maximum county portion of it is five thousand dollars, or fifty-six hundred dollars, I believe, it's on the second or third page. We're in the second stage of it, our county was selected, so we already had two meetings on it. This was sent to us back in July or August, I believe, and I was under the impression we had already signed it, we had not. So they contacted me saying we need to get turned in. So part of the high-risk rural road program, the grants, all those new reflective signs we have, that was purchased from the high-risk, that was, from the grant from the high-risk rural roads. Going forward, to get that grant, you have to have this study done. So we can proceed to not do this study, but we will lose out on grants.
And this is going to cost us five thousand dollars?
Fifty-six hundred dollars, I believe, is the maximum county cost, the state is paying for ninety percent of it. We are paying for ten percent up to fifty-six or fifty-seven hundred, it's on the second or third page, the total now.
It's from KDOT's agreement between KDOT and us.
Yes.
To do this study.
Yes.
And basically, if we don't do, we will.
If we don't do it, we will lose our eligibility for grants in the future, and we'll have, or we'll have to do it on our own for total cost ourselves.
Well, then we need to do it, don't you say, Alexis, or Jim?
Yep.
I don't see why it's, I mean, it's a good investment.
Well, it, it's something we got to do.
I didn't say I don't see why it's a good investment, I meant to say I don't see why we shouldn't.
And they'll go through there, and they'll, if they find issues.
Do we need?
We don't have to fix those issues, those are just, it's areas we can focus on. Yes, and those areas where they say we're deficient, that's areas we can apply for grants, to get help with cost for repairs there. But if we don't do something on it.
Pardon? What do you think?
I agree, oh yeah.
So we just need to sign that and.
We need to make a motion?
Yes, because we're going to be.
I'll make a motion to, uh, sign this agreement between the Secretary of Transportation, Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, and Lincoln County, Kansas, collectively, the party for, uh, this agreement on this study by KDOT to review our roads and bridges or whatever, is that what it is?
They, they review.
Did you get all that done?
The roads, roads and, they, they review everything in the county, on the major.
I'm sorry, no, I went too far.
It's okay.
They, they, it's, it's a study, they study areas.
Evaluation.
It's a evaluation.
Paper, you coordinate your.
And the purpose of, and the purpose of, uh, the motion then to is to.
I'll second that.
Facilitate grants, okay.
And we sign both, you guys sign both of them?
Do we need to?
You sign both of them?
Give one.
No, you get both in, and they will sign, or they'll return a signed copy back to the county.
Okay.
Okay.
There's actually, there's signatures there, and then I think one page behind that, I sticky noted one of them, where there's a second.
Did we make, approve it?
Oh, I, those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I was already signing it, sorry.
It's all right.
You say there's another signature behind that?
There, there might be on the page after that.
Yeah, you got, and well, there's a date, you got to fill in the day of.
Is it the top member or the bottom member?
Here's the bottom. Randy's in between, Alexis is in.
Couple of the other open meeting items, the landfill road here, bottom road they call it, that is dirt.
Yes.
Is there, is that something we were gravelling, some of the guys said that, we should have talked to them about us gravelling it, I didn't know.
Well, when we had, the, the road that goes west to town to the bridge that they fixed, is that the right?
Yes, we just put a new bridge in, uh, it's basically north road straight west out of town.
The, the, the dump road they call it, right, well, back when we had. The, the dump road they call it, right. Well, back when we had our luncheon with the highway department, I don't know if you were there yet.
I wasn't there.
They were recommending to gravel that road, but some people think it's not needed. I don't know, whatever. How far is it?
It's not a full, it's not a full two miles, because I think two miles goes all the way up fourteen, and then we got some asphalt in there.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a full two miles, because fourteen highway would be one ninetieth.
Well, that, that had been grabbled before, hadn't it?
Well, originally it was blacktop.
It was blacktop, right. So what do you guys think? Do you think it's, is it used that much where we need it?
It's used an awful lot.
The request came from the employees. It didn't come from the public, and that was their suggestion. It is kind of interesting that we spent the money to fix the bridge there. I mean, if we fix the bridge, do we not?
Well, a lot of people.
Does it get water?
They just, they're raising it right now. We got them out cleaning the ditches out and raising it.
Cause that can flood out there.
Yeah, it will. And we need, the road had never been graded up.
It's a low area.
Since the fifties, yeah, it's a swamp. And we just, they're out there working, finishing it right now. We did grade it up.
Where would it fall on our priority list if you added it to the list? I mean, do we have?
It's a high-traffic road.
Then would you do then the, uh, regular gravel on the gravel pit, then add sands in it too?
If we needed.
If, if it's too clay.
If it's too clay, then you can determine that based on when it's done. You'll then say, well, we need sand.
We're gonna have to pull the gravel out of Wolf Creek. It's the only place we got enough gravel left.
Well, and, and we'll.
We don't have.
Closest. Multi-pit's done. Lad pit has a little bit left, but not enough.
There's about a quarter mile gravel left in the lad pit, and there's only about a quarter mile gravel left in the Rosebrook pit.
So do we have reclamation to be doing? Is that?
We have a major issue with gravel. Major.
We, we, we're an extra claim.
How about getting it out of that Lonnie Ryder pit?
That, we're waiting on, that's.
We're still waiting on.
Well, I don't mean to speak on behalf of a landowner or anything, but it's been said.
Rosebrook has more, just not pushed up.
But I know, I know we already have the, I mean, that Wolf Creek pit is already in that area, but it's also been said to me that. If we could fix that bridge, or you could even get across it on, that's actually Kiowa, I guess, that keeps going west there, clear into Ellsworth.
On the county line.
Russell County, yes. If, there's a landowner there that would open gravel potentially, if we could finish that.
I have talked to probably a half a dozen landowners now about searching for gravel. I've had two of them said, absolutely not, as long as the commercial taxation's on, just stay off. Don't want you on there. That's the problem I'm running into. There's another one gonna give me an answer. We think maybe there's gravel there. But we need to start testing for gravel. Uh, we need to go out and get, do some testing this winter to find some gravel. And there's gravel around the country. We just have to locate it. But the biggest issue I'm running into right now is. They don't want us on there as long as we're gonna tax them commercial.
In the past, they have so many pits open, and then they don't, they, landlord gets a hundred dollars a year for it. And they don't haul any gravel out of there.
They're actually paying more.
They have to pay more, yes.
Yeah, it has to either come with a commission exemption for that taxation, because statutorily. The, the appraisers office has to require that to be labeled or.
Commercial.
Yeah. I'm sure the local, the local authority says that we don't have to collect it. But we, or we could write it into the agreement that we guaranteed to haul out more than what covers their annual taxes.
But I agree with what you just said. We, we, if, if they're gonna let us go in there and, and, okay, say we lease a pit for a hundred dollars a year. And their taxation on it, we can figure out what the taxation's gonna be through Ronda. And their taxation's gonna be just, say, six hundred dollars a year on that. That's what they're gonna pay taxes on that pit, and, and then I feel.
We pay, we pay an advance royalty fee, like the.
And then once we call out, we don't cut them checks until we've, we pay the difference in their taxes and get it paid upfront for that for the year.
Yeah, that's, that would be the advance royalty rate that you pay. And then, so if your advance royalty rate is four hundred dollars, because that's what the tax can be. The first two hundred yards of gravel there, we would not build up, yeah, we would not cut them a check for it because it's already been paid.
Do we go from the present tax, like if it's pasture, it's taxed at X. And then they change it to commercial, now it's taxed at Y, so we take that difference, use that dollar amount as an upfront payment.
We use that as.
So it'll be different for every landowner, but it'll be paid upon the contract.
They determine on the size of the pit, you know, and what their taxation on that piece of land was. There's gonna be a lot of.
So then, if we're doing one, if we're doing more than one-year contract, do we write that in where we pay that to you every January?
Yeah, well, it, it would be, you, you pay your hundred dollars to, that hundred dollars, and then we, on addition to that, we would pay the advance royalty rate. So that way, at least they get something out of it, even if we don't haul.
But that's for one year. But if they sign a three, we have some three-year contracts, so every year they're paying potentially more taxes. So when do we pay them that difference? Or is that, is it only the first year?
Be done on an annual basis.
Yes, the, the annual advance royalty rate, basically.
It's a little more paperwork for you, but it makes sense, because then as their taxes increase, that dollar amount that we have to pay.
If we reclaim, if we reclaim as we're going along, their taxes shouldn't increase, because the pit won't be growing bigger and bigger.
No, when we do our, when we do our agreements, we just have a, we have a set amount of acreage in that bit.
I know. Well, if they're being, well, if they're being charged for ten acres, because that's what our agreement is, regardless of how big our pit gets, then the, the amount wouldn't change yearly, really.
No, I'm saying it changes because of the valuation. So as their land valuation potentially increases or changes a little bit, it could even go down. If, if that ever happens, which.
We don't.
But maybe, we, we, we put a buffer in there of the advance royalty rate.
Maybe. I, I'm expecting. I don't know, we'll see.
I know, we talked about that during taxes.
Yeah. Then you'll have to change them all to annually and see where you are, but I would say, go through that and come up with a solution.
You guys, I was gonna.
To gravel this road then, hold off on it?
I would put it on your list.
I would put that, I would hold off, because since we're hard up to gravel, we, but do we have other priorities?
We can use.
We got gravel, we just gotta haul it far.
From all ways.
Feather away.
Not that high priority, is it? Is there a bunch of people requesting that?
No, there, there's not. There, there's not.
I know you're saying, it gets used a lot, people, instead of going down fourteen, eighteen highway. With their, with their truck full of tree limbs, they go down that road.
When we tore houses down in town, I used to tear houses down all the time. We had to use them. The state would not let us use the highway for trash. They don't like trash. Going up and down.
On eighteen highway, uh, for limb falling off.
If it falls off, the state will get on you about.
Right.
But if we wait, if, I don't know if we're gonna get any gravel much closer.
I was just, you know, a few months ago, I talked to Tim Schrader. He, and Dora, they have this Gruber pit. Up there, and that's, I think it had been used before by the county, but now it's not being used. And they just said they would be willing now to, uh, lease it again to the county. So you may wanna call him Tim Schrader, you know.
Okay.
And also Randy Meyer, at one time, was wanting to talk to us about having, having, Randy Meyer down there by.
Right.
He, he has ground up in there. He said he has areas where he thinks the gravel would go. So you may wanna talk to Randy Meyer too, okay.
And what was the other name? Tim?
Tim Schrader. He's a banker, technically. S-C-H-R-O-E-D-E-R, I think.
But no, it's not, not, as far as gravel in the road, we, we do have it graded up right now. It's ready to gravel. If you wanna do it, we got it ready. And the reason we raised it is because of all the water problems. Here a while back, when the last rains we had, I come down it, with the water stand on it.
I know. Creek dumps on that road. It doesn't go anywhere.
I know. But what do you guys think? Do you think you should gravel it? Is it ready for it? Alexis or Jim?
I just know that we kind of made a verbal promise, if you will, when the highway department asked. That was an internal request. It didn't come from the citizenry. It came from our own highway department, and we said, if you feel that that's a priority, then follow through with it. It's kind of what we said, and I don't.
Our, our guys use it a lot. Our guys use it every time they go out of town.
I think we oughta leave it on, they establish a car, and you put it on your car, and ask where it falls, falls. You can move it up or down.
And if you think it's worthwhile to go do it, go ahead and do it.
My personal opinion is, is that the public would appreciate it if we gravelled it. They would use it. And I think the farmers would use it a lot going to their, going west out to their fields and that. I know our grader guys use it all the time. Anytime we move equipment, we use it.
That's on the road you can use.
Yeah, I know. That, that's the thing. It's kinda, we're kinda between rock and hard spot.
When you get to it, you get to it.
Cause we can't jump up on eighteen with a lot of stuff and, and go down eighteen, so we do use it.
Not just cause you gotta fall gravel along, we don't come in here and wanna do truck.
Well, we already did that before.
You already got your truck out.
I already got sold on the truck.
Well, and I just gravel.
We already got, we got a million. We don't need to get a million on all of them.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Pardon? If you think it should be gravelled, I think go ahead.
I, uh, my honest opinion is that the, the public would appreciate it if it was a gravel road.
It, like we said, though, like Jim said, prioritize, priority-wise. Are there other gravel, are there other roads that need gravel first?
They don't have any major roads that need gravel, not right now. The only one that Bobby did talk to me was north of eighteen. Mile west of one eighty-one, and that was in on the FEMA deal. And I, I'm not familiar with that. He just told me this morning that that was supposed to be taken care of on the FEMA project, and I don't know where that's at.
I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, that's one I was just aware of this morning.
Yes. So I, I called with them, I, I spoke with them. They said, that's great, we have all that, that we have pitchers. But before and some after pitchers, but it's usually months before they ever come out. So the fact that we're ahead of the game and we're putting stuff together and keeping it together, that's good. I also contacted the state. The state is also releasing funds for some FEMA things on major collectors. One of those things being the slide on two eightieth by Pike here, where we only have sixty-foot right-of-way, but the hillside's falling into our roadway ditch. That one. It's an eighty-twenty split for permanent fixes and a hundred percent reimbursement for emergency fixes. We didn't hit the five thousand dollars for the emergency fix, because it was only one day and he just laid it out of the ditch. But to make a permanent fix, it'll be more than five thousand dollars, so I'm waiting, the federal highway. FHWA's gonna be getting back to me about it to come out and possibly look at it to see if they wanna consider that for more to make it. So it won't slide in the future like that.
Okay.
And then the state, I'm meeting with this upcoming Monday at one o'clock. The block pit has been closed out. File of reclamation has been returned to us, signed and approved. I submitted that to Jerry Driscoll.
That attorney's office that contacted us.
And he's coming out Monday to look at the line pit, just south of town here.
Okay.
When he, he said when he had been through there before, he couldn't, grass hadn't grown up enough, so he, he wasn't, oh, closed in. And he asked me to go buy it, and we had to call guys, because we couldn't find the pit. The grass hasn't grown up so well.
Okay.
We had, we know, we know where it was, but just to make sure.
In the interest of time, we are falling a little bit behind. We already did payroll, so we're good on that.
You wanna do the employee part?
I do wanna look at that. Yeah, let's do that first. I had asked him to, oh, good.
Those are just blanks, and then I made a tree on my own.
Yeah.
For, where everyone currently is.
Um, I had a couple brief discussions about where they need help, and you guys have some interviews that you need to conduct yet, so we're working on that.
We did not do them because we weren't quite sure how many we were gonna be able to tell them what the pay will be.
So, between the two of us looking at it, we need one more for bridge and one more truck or equipment operator.
And I had a brief discussion with Gordon about can that additional truck driver?
They'll also be helping out the shop.
Right, if we hire somebody, we wanna look at them that they are a little mechanically inclined. So that when they are not being a truck driver, we can help them, help them with repairs.
We need a multi-two, not, not a spin.
Right, because we're not intending on putting another full-time position in the shop.
No.
I mean, I understand you need help, but it doesn't mean full-time in there, for the hours.
Yeah, we'll utilize him as a truck driver or equipment operator, but when we run into, say Lance gets totally swamped. Well, then we can use him, but then we can also take him back out of there.
Yeah. Yeah, and I agree with your tree there as far as how that falls, because you're doing most of the onsite project management. When something's in the middle of going on, or logistics of getting people to places. I mean, you're gonna keep track of everything on paper and monetarily, so. Do you have the two positions that you have picked applicants that you wanna interview?
Not yet.
Are you gonna use the applicants that already?
Yes, yes.
We haven't received any.
I have them on my desk.
Is a confirmation on dollar amounts.
Right. And whether we wanna do two. Two employees, right.
I think that still keeps us down by one or two, right?
What they had historically.
The two more will make you fully functional.
We'll, we'll be able to.
We'll be able to make it work.
Did you get any applications for the bridge crew supervisor?
Just the one.
Just the one. So I think we can close that.
Apps for bridge crew or for, uh, regular driver or, uh, uh, equipment operator?
The equipment, one, basically we're getting two equipment operators slash truck drivers, but one would be assigned to the bridge crew, the other would be assigned to the road crew.
Okay.
And then we need to work on, if we don't have no more applications for bridge foreman. We need to finalize that position.
Okay.
So you're seeing three employees?
No, just two new ones.
And closing the application process for the bridge crew supervisor, because the only application we've had is internal.
Right.
So I think that's fine, that we can close the advertisement for the bridge crew supervisor. The other ones are still listed on the website, so if you get additional calls, you could interview. Basically, you're telling us, you can interview the pool that you have. And fill the two positions that you wanna do. And why don't you come back to us with some dollar amounts as you kind of look at that flow chart you created?
Okay.
But go ahead and schedule your interviews.
Okay, yeah.
And we need to look at what our starting wage is for those positions. Dawn has that. I'm sorry, I don't have. Like an actual breakdown of that anywhere at my fingertips, but.
And there is one employee that did talk to me last night about retiring soon too, so, but that's nothing we have to do right now, but.
Okay. Okay, two more things. One is, you had mentioned that you may be willing to serve as our interim appointed, um. Representative for the Regional Homeland Security Council.
Sure. Yep.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
So I moved to approve Brendan McKay as the representative for Lincoln County on the Regional Homeland Security Council. Until further notice.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, vote aye. Aye, motion carries. And then, um, in the interest of time, inclement weather. And just getting things moving, I think our highway department has enough on its shoulders. I would like to go ahead and, um. Approve the repair at Wilson Lake Estates. And if that is contingent upon the commission following through with creating a township out there. And extracting them out of our road system and putting them on their own. By the numbers that we collected from the appraisers department, the rough math says it's about sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars. That they pay into the county tax road portion. So in other words, if we really did follow through with creating a township out there. They would not get, we would not collect their road portion of the budget. They would get that in terms of spend on themselves. And I would like to just point out, that's sixty thousand dollars for three miles of rip. But there's the potential hazard there, that something. At a great expense to the, you know, budget may happen that needs fixed, which we're looking at now. But I really think, we're not gonna avoid, we're not gonna avoid having additional expenses, dragging this out or anything else. Unless we just take care of the problem, which I feel that we have been obligated to do. With all the correspondence over the years, it just shows that the county never really took responsibility, and then they're using that as an excuse. The people that have been involved to say that, see, we don't have any obligation, so.
I recommend we fix that road, because Brendan has identified somebody that we can do that in a budget.
That, I, I was wrong. That is the bridge fund that you've already allocated for fixing the bridge outside of town here.
But there's gotta be an understanding.
Well, and I wanted to ask you, there's probably additional money in the chip scale budget that we didn't use this year. So I'm gonna go ahead and push that on. I moved to approve the bid from Kenny Branda. Kenny's construction in the amount of eighty-six thousand and eighty-two dollars to repair the roadslide at Wilson Lake Estates. It's been moved and seconded to go ahead and repair that roadslide, and I will say, under the discussion portion. If the commission does wish to pursue isolating a township out there, so that they can take on any future responsibility. I'm totally willing to have that discussion and, and look at that scenario, so. So as of right now, I feel like we need to avoid dragging this out any longer through the winter, additional liabilities, et cetera. I really don't have any desire to give court.
Fix the road, but we got a lot of work to do out there.
Trouble is, uh, what more, where are we at with the rest of our responsibility out there? Are we still?
That's what I just said, we are, we have the authority to create a township and.
Well, maybe a township, maybe whatever liability, what other, uh.
The liability exists now, is what I'm saying. It's there, the liability is there. Responsibility, we can argue for the next decade, just like they did for the last two. I mean, I find it embarrassing that we have elected officials that sat here and said, it's been an ongoing issue. Yeah, because they didn't take responsibility for it. So let's just go through it. I mean, you don't have to go through it, but. Any further discussion? Oh, go ahead.
The LAPC meeting.
On this particular motion. We took, I didn't call for vote, calling for vote on the motion. Those in favor vote aye, aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries two to one. And LAPC, I'm sorry. Appoint, yes. Oh, you're right, I was, okay, so we will do that when I do correspondence. If you're okay with me, your, your name was already sent, so we'll do that later on in the meeting. We're not at work now.
You don't need your.
We're about five minutes over. No, not if you agree to it now, unless you want to obje- object.
And I do two things before you quit.
Okay.
Gary Sorenson came in and was specifically extremely complimentary to you, Gordon, about fixing that hole in the road out there. He was extremely surprised at how quick you did it and how well you did it, and I just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Now, the second thing is Jake Webke talked to me, and you know where Jake lives.
Do you live down on, Ben Wilsonville?
Yeah.
Uh, just south of him on the road is that little creek and you got a creek and a bridge and stuff. And he points out that there is a sizable dam in that creek of logs and stuff. And it's going to wash out the road and the bridge. And he just would like you to go down and take a look and see if there's a solution or if it's a real problem.
Okay, if we can get to it, as long as there ain't a beaver dam, we can, we can mess with it. Yeah, I can't touch it.
No, it's a logs washed down the creek and jammed.
Real close to the bridge, but there again, we're going to be over on private property if it's very far off.
But it'll be Jake's and you can, but you just need, go down and see if there's a problem. He wants suggestions where you blow it out or burn it out or dig it out or whatever you do with it, I don't know. But he just brought it up and I thought I'd pass it on.
I'll look at it, I'll proceed on it. One other comment I have about the Lake Wilson deal. Do you want us to, when we were out there, they pointed out two places that the ditches needed cleaned out. Do you want us to do that?
Yes, please, I do. I mean, obviously, there's a split on the board, but I think it's going to help the overall situation. We should have been doing at least that much. And then from my understanding, while they're doing that new construction, it's going to be boring under the road. So you could also look at where that culvert needs to go or how you can.
Change that water flow so it doesn't all go down the hill towards this other deal.
Exactly.
And fixing the, the problem you guys just voted for, does that include shaping that water to where it comes down that hill so it runs southwest now like it should?
Well, we just hired someone to do the actual landslide, which would be the river going north and south.
But how about the ditch? Are we going to fix that ditch that caused the culverts that caused the flood?
It needs, it needs to just be cleaned out.
That's why I was concerned about all this stuff.
And Kenny's going to move that pipe that's under the road to the southwest.
At an angle at the.
Yes, bring southwest where the water should go.
We need to make that water run that southwest so it doesn't go over.
That's, that's all we're doing.
Well, that, that, that's.
Not the culvert under the intersection is what they're talking. Putting the culvert across the intersection and then putting the other culvert at the top of the hill to not have it come over.
All the water come down.
Yeah, what Kenny's going to do is nothing to do with that water coming down that hill going to the west.
But that's what he just asked, and I say yes.
Yeah, and I say yes.
Take that, take care of that problem.
Yeah, we need to make that water.
To actually segregate them, if their roads are going to become a separate, isolated township responsibility with their own money and everything, until we do that, we don't want to continue to have these issues over and over.
We have our driveway out there, if we, there's trees there in the roadway.
If you deem it absolutely necessary to disturb any of their stuff, you tell them. But if you don't have to, you don't have to.
But like cleaning that ditch is at the lake, uh, like we, you and I looked at before, there's all these utilities in there. Or you're going to be getting into those?
Yeah.
It's just one call. And then also when a ditch washes down and it fills up, you shouldn't have any utilities in that fill. So the utility shouldn't bother us.
Okay.
What I'm saying is.
I just hope you don't tear into them and.
The normal.
Right now, fix that slide.
Okay.
We're going to continue in the very immediate future figuring out what we're going to do. Fix the slide first and then we're going to have to.
The liability still exists no matter what we do about the future responsibility, so. Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Two minute recess.
Okay.
Good idea.
I have, um, sheriff's department taking over the agenda items for the janitor line item, or the janitor's time slot, so.
Are we still talking about computers today?
Um, after, yeah, we're running a little behind. We're ten minutes behind on the agenda. That's okay, it's never enough time, but, uh.
The walking dead, I need a hat like this. You watch that show?
Don, before we discuss the correspondence with them, I don't understand what Jerry's report is when he says the difference between the four hundred and twenty-four dollars and the five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Do you know what that means? Do you need an executive session? No?
We will take up much of your time.
Okay.
Looks like there's empty chairs up there.
Doesn't have my name on it.
Oh, not yet anyway.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Mike, Delphine.
Okay.
Oh, we just want to let the commissioners know that, uh, we filled a jailer's position.
Okay.
Pending the results of the UA and the physical.
Agility test.
Whatever it's deemed as. We offered him the position yesterday, he accepted it.
Name?
Owen Kruger.
O W E N.
O W E N.
Owen?
Owen.
Kruger.
Kenny's grants.
Starting wage?
Fourteen.
Even? And beginning?
Upon completion of the UA.
Just completion of pre-employment screening.
Yeah. And Deputy James Reagan has started his second week in the academy this week. Expected graduation is February fourteenth.
Okay. Does that come with a pay raise?
After six months and completion of the academy.
Okay, that's the.
Where is that, that academy?
At Chisina.
Now, is he down there full-time then every day?
Monday through Friday.
Monday, Friday.
Comes home Friday evening and goes back seven days.
And are they still paid during that attendance? So it's paid time on, just your forty hours, no matter what the class is?
Class schedule is, sometimes there's even classes.
And we pay for their training?
It's free.
Oh.
State pays for it.
I see.
Really?
They just pay the hourly wage.
Do we, after they graduate, do we require them then to serve a certain amount of time?
Uh, last I heard, they had to serve with the sheriff's office for at least a year.
At least a year?
We've had one employee that didn't and, meaning it's a year and two had to reimburse us.
I just wondered, okay.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Benny, tell you.
I move to approve sheriff's request to employ Owen Kruger at fourteen dollars an hour pending pre-employment screening.
A second.
And, oh, as jailer, right? The title of jailer. Any further questions? It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So now you're full up?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, before I forget, I did have one question. Um, for your line item and your budget for salaries that you had factored in for next year, you gave yourself a raise, is that the dollar amount that's supposed to be coming out of that line item for the entire year next year? The, is that what kind of what you factored in? Did you both get a raise?
Correct.
And that falls within your budget that you.
Yes.
That's what we were checking.
That's all good, that's what we thought.
But from this year, you're able to do that because you didn't have a full-on salary extraction.
We had budgeted for a seventh deputy that we never hired.
Yeah, so I'm saying this year you have that covered in that salary line item. And then going into next year, that's your expected pay rate that you've kind of budgeted in with.
Yes, correct.
Because now that you're full, you have all these other, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, IT management contracts. We do need to follow up on that because we are currently in a grace period of, after the expiration of dealing with Next Tech and their last contract, which I believe was three years. So we had two bids come in. And Mr. Gableman, I don't know, I think you were not here for the one that we, right?
I didn't, I was not here when Wilson.
Did you get to look at it, look at this?
Yes.
That they gave, okay. So they gave a monthly dollar amount with the options of, um, doing what they call managed.
Managed or.
Uh, managed, whatever.
We'd manage with our old hardware and, uh, and new, and then also be managed with new, new hardware.
Leased, right.
Or leased, yeah, their equipment, but be new equipment.
Right, and we had a question, I think, I'm glad you guys stayed, because I think we weren't sure, even talking to them, how, what portions of your equipment, all of it, some of it, is still leased and goes back to Next Tech or old?
All of it.
It is, okay, so it would be a change out. And I think they gave us a bid on doing that.
Okay, I had Cheryl take because I thought hers was a little confusing and can kind of consolidate everything onto one page. So the bottom of her page is basically what the Next Tech's agreement is. If we did the comparables similar to what Wilson did. I shouldn't make copies, but you're right, if you guys want. This is what they got from Wilson, this is what Next Tech. And then she did do a separate, but she combined it on that sheet, if you guys want to pass it around. I can go make copies.
Where's this?
Next Tech.
This is next.
Yeah. Let me borrow Wilson's, this I can reprint. How many of them are you guys?
Another, a long day at the Hilton. It is, I forgot to put my makeup on today.
I like the safety, safety pioneering.
This is confusing to me.
Well, they're saying if you do the outright purchase with Next Tech for a hundred and, well, it depends if you want to do three-year contract. They're giving us a slight discount for the three-year contract. If you want to do outright purchase, you just spend upfront a hundred and fifteen or a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Then you do a monthly payout with the outlook. Forty-three fifty-seven, that's a month if you do the outright purchase with a hundred and something upfront. If you don't spend a hundred, just to continue with the monthly contract with the leased items, they're giving us a nine hundred dollar discount per month if you do the five-year contract. Wilson is doing the, um, upfront purchase, which I assume, they don't have that total dollar amount on there, but it's, it's got to be near what the other equipment, so a hundred and some thousand upfront purchase, initial purchase. They're at forty-six eighty a month. And then the leased equipment monthly is sixty-nine eighty. So it's forty dollars more than the three-year with Next Tech. Uh, thirty dollars more, forty, thirty-five ish.
Wilson doesn't have that upfront expense though, right?
But we would if you went with the managed, um, or I mean, the outright purchase, then just the managed versus, this is the managed side with the lease. So the lease is the extra two thousand a month instead of spending a hundred and, so let's do the math on that. We don't have that many aside anyway.
Wilson didn't have this upfront expense.
But it, but it's implied, is what I mean. It's implied that the difference between the forty-six and the sixty-nine.
Oh, they're talking the total.
Fifty-six.
Outright, outright expense.
Twenty-three hundred dollars more to do the lease of the purchase, right? Forty-six, I got to do that.
But I think there, I thought they said that they weren't going to replace the equipment. They were just going to update it to a hundred and fifty dollars per year.
We have our choice, we have our choice.
Well, I'm, I'm not computer savvy enough to know, but, you know, Next Tech said you should replace them all. You shouldn't just upgrade and do that. And Wilson says, no, we can just upgrade it for two hundred and fifteen dollars per year. I don't understand.
Well, it's a sales proposal, I mean, it's.
I know, but our computers are eight years old. So do I.
No, yours are out of the, yours are out of the question.
Yeah. Do I upgrade them or do I keep them for the two hundred and fifteen dollars? I just, I just see them having.
Well, we, we can make that decision by department.
Yes.
So they would customize that.
I just get confused that the two different companies are so different in that aspect.
It's not, it's just a sales proposal by Next Tech to try to sell you all brand-new equipment. It's very simple.
So it's not necessary to replace them when they get to be seven years old?
No.
But if you go online and read about computers, yes, anything over six years old, you shouldn't upgrade, you should replace.
You see, we're going to have to do something about Windows Seven. After January first, Windows Seven's not going to.
We know that, both companies agree on that. What's not agreed upon is the sale of the initial expense to change out all of the equipment. Because a computer doesn't necessarily go, it doesn't deteriorate. It's whether or not you've upgraded all your programming, which they can physically do. And that's part of this proposal.
Does that mean they're replacing the motherboard and all that?
They can.
Because at seven years old, you know.
They said they would. They said they would individually, diagnostically test.
They're gonna test them and then they'll upgrade the hardware if need be, based on the component.
Well, I just think it's hard to compare prices when you're, when you don't know what your computers are gonna need.
Wilson will give you new plus the managed cost to the right, and then the one in the managed is to the left. But the one under, with the managed means they could also, uh, upgrade certain parts of the hardware, not totally new.
I don't see how you can keep an eight-year-old computer.
That's what most of ours are.
I know.
Yeah, I know.
You can update the software, but you got all the information access devices, CDs, all that's gonna be old. The hard drive's gonna go bad, they go bad all the time anyway. Your speed's gonna be an issue on Windows Ten. And some of the, if we put the tax rolls on there, for example, you gotta have a pretty fast memory. Eight years old's a long time.
Well, I can tell you, I got approached yesterday by Eagle who wants to bid the IT services as well. So he's on the agenda to come and talk to you guys because I have about had my fill of IT.
Well, the bottom line is, we have not budgeted anywhere for an outright equipment purchase. To do this upfront cost that you have here in this first column, this is the three-year upfront, and then you're saving a, well, actually, no, you're not saving anything, you're adding on for the five-year upfront initial purchase. So.
But maybe the option is on both companies is to go with the TAS, whereas their, their computer equipment and.
Right, the leased purchase price, I just did the math on, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars over the three years in additional fees to lease it. And a hundred and fifty thousand on this other one for NexTech over the three years to lease it. So you're saving twenty-five thousand dollars over three years to do the upfront purchase, but we haven't budgeted for that. So that's not gonna happen this year, nobody budgeted for that.
But I have it in my capital out, I know it's there.
For your, for your own department?
Yes.
Well, I guess we'd have to individually ask each department if they had capital outlet expenditures to then replace their own equipment and own it. Which you have, I mean, if you request that, there's no reason we couldn't say, come in, replace this department. They're already replacing EMS, both sides.
Who is doing that? Whichever one.
Whichever one. And in, in all actuality, we got a more thorough diagnostic, a diagnostic assessment from Wilson, much more so than NexTech. NexTech kind of just printed out and copied and pasted whatever they've been doing before for us. And we got the assessment from Wilson that said, your computer's just basically, no, nothing. Yeah. Yeah. So I'm assuming that we do that no matter what. Because NexTech was even less inclined to do any customization for updating by each individual piece of equipment.
Quite frankly, from what I've seen out of Wilson, being able to get in touch with those people at two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning when a computer crashes, oh my God, it's enormous. Because they literally go into the computer remotely and it's better.
We need to have somebody to come fix our computers when they go down two or three o'clock in the morning. NexTech does that for us.
It's scary for us to think of another company coming in because we used to have Computer Solutions and accounting went to NexTech. And the transition from what we had, it was a nightmare, we were down, they're trying to figure out our systems. And now the thought of Wilson coming in, a company that I have no idea where their ITs are right now at the sheriff's offices, but the security that's required from our office to have another company come in, say they know what they're doing, come in and destroy our network, destroy our security, not saying they're going to, that NexTech already knows that and they know what our office requires, what sheriff's office requires. So just because a company is cheaper and say they can do something without being proven is scary to me. So my personal opinion, I like to stay with NexTech because they already know, yes, they're more expensive, but they also provide a level of quality that is required for our office and the standards of the state.
And do you want to do an outright purchase of your equipment or continue to lease it?
Consider release, because it gets bad. Halloween in two thousand twelve, Halloween night, our server went down and we lost everything, all of our reports. And it was Computer Solutions, that's how we came in, ten thousand dollars to put a new server in and had put this over budget in October. So for NexTech to own the equipment, bring it in, it's more expensive to pay a lease, yes, but we do not own it.
But it's only that, I mean, in their case, overall, it's only that twenty-five thousand over the three years that you save, so, and that's.
If you have to buy outright, you can buy seven new computers, two new servers.
And actually, if you looked at overall cost, NexTech is cheaper. If you look at them side by side combined, NexTech TAS for a, for the five-year is not a lot cheaper, but it's thirty-some dollars cheaper, and if you add the managed service, it's a couple of hundred dollars cheaper. And this includes everything, this includes everything. The only difference is, is how they're going to upgrade the equipment.
Well, there's also the difference in how they bill for their time. Because with NexTech, anytime we call them, we're paying billing, and with Wilson, we won't. So you can call Wilson out for service.
Not necessarily, if it's outside of the scope, but there, I, you're paying for me because I'm not managed. So you are paying NexTech for the departments that aren't being managed right now.
But the, I'm saying the bid they gave us was for everything on Wilson, no additional fees unless there was, um,
But if I didn't go, if I wasn't part of that, and I called Wilson to have him come fix me, they're gonna bill me.
But that's not in this bid, the bid is for everything that's covered.
But there's always going to be incidentals, there's going to be mileage sometimes, depending, if we're not managed.
No, what I'm saying is, we pay NexTech, but even with this bid contract, we still pay them for service calls. That's what they told us.
No, no, no.
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 Not if you're managed.
That's what she said at the table.
Install. So if you're, if you're getting something new, like when we added the HR computer, that's outside of the managed service. So you're getting billed for that.
Or like when we changed from Eagle to Eagle Internet, when they had to come and do the inside part, they charged us because that's not in the managed contract that we have. But everything else is, I mean, it's rare.
What we're getting billed is like for things like, for me, who's not on the managed service, if I need them to come, then, then we're getting a bill for me or for Rhonda or whoever's not managed right now. But when we were managed before, we never ever saw a single bill except for the monthly bill. But we haven't been totally managed this last contract because we couldn't afford it. They, because they wouldn't manage anything that was an old computer. And that's probably why the TAS would be the best option.
Right, but my concern is none of the departmental budgets are prepared to take the increase from NexTech from what they were paying out and budgeted for tw- twenty twenty compared to what this number's gonna be for, on your department's contract line item. That's my concern. There's gonna be.
Those that have.
It goes either, either company is gonna be an increase from what it was last year.
Are already budgeted. Those that are not managed services like myself and whoever else there is, is, is gonna hurt. We don't have the money to go manage, but both of these companies are saying, you have to do something, you can't pick and choose.
Yes, you can. No, you absolutely can choose one department to be.
Not inside the courthouse, you cannot. Now, the sheriff's office can choose to whichever company they want.
Right, the health department, highway department, EMS.
Yes, but I can't, anybody here in the courthouse.
They did suggest that the courthouse should.
All stay together, yeah, because you're all one facility here.
So you can definitely.
So you won't have a choice.
But yeah, but.
None of us in the courthouse. Oh, I thought you were, okay.
I think only the server is right now.
Okay.
And both of companies have said the server is no longer eligible.
When do we have to decide on this stuff like now?
Well, she just said Eagle Communications wants to come in, I mean, are they on the agenda for next week? So we can decide next week. I wanted to see what the.
I don't think they'll have a bid, I don't know what he's gonna do. I swear to God, they've already been out several times and looked at that stuff, but. I am so. I don't mean to be, I'm gonna be a witch. I am so sick and tired of salespeople coming in and demanding everything, I don't have time right now to deal with all of this. Like yesterday, it was annoying, it's holy crap. Because he just, and I said, you need to go to each of the departments and talk to them. I, I can't continue to make the decisions. I cannot continue to make the decisions for everybody, guys, I just can't. The only thing I really need to worry about is my office and. So sorry, I suck in on you guys. So I don't think they're prepared to give a bid, but.
No, they're not. That's what he said. And I didn't know if the decision needed to be made. I'm, I'm with Dustin, I would just assume NexTech because.
Because that's what you have now, they're used to.
And they, you know, if we go down, usually they're calling us before we know we have a problem somewhere. Do you know this is down about, you know, we have two different Wi-Fi's and then all, everything we do is electronic. When we're down, it's kind of like the sheriff's office, we can't do a whole lot when we're down. All our databases and everything are electronic, so, you know.
That's the way we go here, it, it comes to that point, there are no paper, paper reports anymore, you're done.
You got NexTech too, Derek?
Yeah, I, I want them gone.
You like that now?
No, he, he doesn't.
Oh, you don't like them?
But have you called them?
No.
Okay. How can you have them?
One time, he, he told me the computers do all this junk, I'm not even gonna mess with it. And he said, I'm not gonna charge you on them, that's it.
Okay, so how can you say that they're terrible then, if, and you want them gone if you're.
You need a total upgrade, Derek, for your department, yeah. That, so you're totally separate, you're separate situation.
He's saying they wouldn't even come and assess the situation. And you're not managed service, but it doesn't matter. Wilson came in, did a complete diagnostics and gave us the breakdown by department.
But he just said he did come, and he said he was.
No, he's all, he looked in the computer, he said, I'm not even gonna waste my time with it, and that was the end of the show. The damn thing goes down across the building, and whoever mine was, and I have to have mine up, and it's mandatory.
Well, you need to get new equipment, and I told you that the week that you got to.
I don't want to purchase the equipment, I want it managed.
So, well, Donna, for example, your breakdown for.
To lease.
See, NexTech doesn't give us a department, oh, yes, it does. Okay, so your current, okay, so your, if you did manage, it would come to, no, your current is only four ninety-five a month. So they didn't give us a breakdown of what the.
Yes, it won't be more than that.
Yeah. I mean, do you have that budgeted into your, that's what I'm saying, where are we going to draw the increased amount from for everybody's contractual line item? Did they give, they didn't give us a breakdown by department expense?
Who, NexTech? Well, right here.
Oh, each packet.
Well, that's EMS, well, that's EMS and everybody here.
That's everything, I'm saying, they gave us.
I know, I know, this, Wilson's, Wilson's.
They have superior diagnostic ability, but.
Well, they seem to be more, and they explain it to us better.
Exactly.
And they were, we could fix each computer specifically, based on hardware.
Well, and I'd like to see if one of us local company, but I also think that they, they don't want to go through a transition.
Well, if our, I could see our sheriff's department and, uh, the health department like NexTech. Can we keep NexTech for them and go to Wilson for the other?
Yeah, you can.
Maybe we ought to do that.
But then you're not gonna have an integrated IT system.
Well, it's not integrated anyway because this, the EMS shed has nothing to do with the highway department computer system. There's no integration there anyhow.
For sheriff's department, you guys are totally on your own, right? So, so what Derek has, you don't care, right? And so, like, Donna.
That's why we got to one IT company.
So maybe we can, maybe if you guys like NexTech, well, you guys take NexTech and maybe Wilson will work better for Derek. And maybe, uh, what Don wants for the, or whatever, whatever you guys want at here at the courthouse, you could have NexTech.
I'm gonna use the sheriff's department as an example, because I have the packet bid from NexTech. And they have you at thirty-six months with the TAS everything since you're already leasing at sixteen thousand eighteen twenty for the three-year contract, is that right? That can't be right. Sixteen, let's see. Where do they have the dollar amount? Oh, seventeen, okay, so your, the sheriff's department new contract line item would be seventeen hundred ninety-one dollars a month. Okay? And just monetarily, I'm not checking out quality service comparison, if, for you to extract you from the group and just say, your same leased TAS everything through Wilson is thirteen thirty they have for your apartment.
So that'd be four hundred.
So that's just an example.
Four hundred a month for.
For their department, I mean, should the other ones vary because?
But if they're, yeah.
So here's the health department, I have.
Fourteen thirty.
Yeah. Fourteen thirty versus one thousand ninety-five for your particular department. So that's gonna be whether or not your budget, I mean, you have to justify whether your contract line item, you want to spend the difference and stay with that particular company, I mean.
Do you have what we're paying now?
Yeah.
Do I have what we're paying now?
Yeah, what are they paying now?
Oh, it's more than we're paying now.
Fourteen fourteen, no. Why is that, is that just what they printed out from what the additional expenses were from the, the hours billed out? I think they, isn't that what that means?
The manager retail service.
Cost of agreements. Well, that's seventeen eighteen, huh?
See, I, I think.
Where'd you get that sheet?
This is what NexTech gave us, but I think it's the additional billing that they did.
Well, they're paying fourteen eight. Sheriff, you pay fourteen thirty-three ninety-five, and I don't know if that includes your.
Fourteen thirty-three and what you quoted, ain't much difference.
Well, that, but that's, no, it's going up to seventeen ninety-one.
Okay, no, three hundred, four hundred a month, four hundred.
Yeah. That's just for the sheriff's department, we did the, we did the health department, let's look here.
Well, I think Wilson'd be a little cheaper overall, but if, if these, uh, departments are happy with NexTech, it is a very big transition to switch networks, do a whole new company and all new people. I, I can understand that, so.
Well, and if, if we have to switch, I would like to listen to what the Eagle guy has to say because now that they have our internet and phones and everything else, I think everything with the same company might be better.
The whole integration, maybe.
Rather than switching to Wilson. And I would like to know how many Wilson, how many techs they have. Because the newspaper, they're looking for techs all the time. And, you know, if they've only got two and they're looking for techs all the time, you know, I've never had NexTech where they couldn't come the same day or the first thing the next morning.
Okay, but you're talking about.
And that means a lot to us.
Yeah, but you're also talking about a regional company versus a very local company.
Right.
And the less business that they get from we local participants, the less they can afford to incentivize that.
We're not local to Wilson, any different than we are today's. How's Wilson local, like?
Not like you counted.
Okay.
I mean, Wilson's just as close as Mitchell County is.
I, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm going for.
You're saying it's a smaller local business, I get it, I get it.
It is, a smaller local business. And the, and the more competitive they become, the, the more comparative the services are. They can't become competitive without clients, they can't get clients with.
No, we're not, we're not obligated to take care of them.
Nobody said they're ob, nobody said we're obligated, but we've sat here and talked about a purchasing policy for supporting local business. I'm just saying, it's a bigger idea than just, well, we've always had them, or not.
I don't want our office to be the beginning fix for them, that's what I'm saying.
Neither do I.
I'm not ready for that.
To what?
For, to be the beginning fix for Wilson, I don't want, to be the first sheriff's office for them, that's for my.
I'm willing to be the beginning fix because they've handled Ellsworth for the last six months, they're doing a hell of a job. And so, put them on me.
Okay, I don't see a reason why we can't divide it up, I mean, we can put the health depart, or the health department and the sheriff's department and keep them on NexTech. We can put you and the highway department on, uh, Wilson. I mean, I don't see that the highway department has any really emergent need for IT services.
Not really.
Does anyone, can anyone?
Well, when you integrate three eleven into that.
But it's not an emergent.
That's a separate.
Not a mercy, but it's amazing.
Three eleven's a separate, separate system, we already think that's separate. They have a network.
Integrate that into your IT.
You don't have to, they don't really have no IT there, there.
But if you, which I'm not one to say either company, but if you start picking and choosing, their prices are gonna change.
No, that's why they have the breakdown, look. No, that's why they have the breakdown. Look at, well, you don't have, see these packets? I have a packet for each, each outline entity. And then if you look at, you did get the Wilson printout. Yeah. See under each heading, they have a price.
They have a price for each.
That's the price for the thirty-six month contract.
So, no matter if one department goes on or stay with that price or if all of us?
When you take all these.
Right.
Spread apart and then you add them all together, that's how they get the bottom number.
Right, understand that, but what I guess I'm saying, they're doing a big package deal, but everybody can't.
No, there's no discount, cause if you look, th- this number is very much equal to all of the individual numbers added together. If there was a discount, it would be like a percentage left.
Wilson did say that there would be no variance if it was not an all or not.
Oh, okay. That's what I was getting.
And you guys now here in the courthouse like Next Tech, do you?
Well, they don't have managed service.
No.
But I still, I mean, I've probably called Next Tech probably three times in the last three years. But I still call them when I need them. They just bill me for the seventy-five dollars, hundred twenty-five.
So, the question is, does the courthouse need to go with managed service? Because that's gonna be a huge difference in the price too.
I can tell you I can't afford any of it, so.
I have my tech fund that I can go off of. And I have Tammy's tech fund too, that I have let her be go off.
Okay, so the printout that they gave me was two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and the current year-to-date. Between the clerk, the attorney, emergency management and treasurer, those would only be the, or those would be the only departments inside the courthouse. Your additional calls at an expense above and beyond, because you don't have the managed service, were. Thirteen hundred fifty-one dollars for those two and a half years. So, I really don't see how we can justify spending several hundred dollars more a month to have managed service when you guys called in and only accumulated through all of your departments a thirteen hundred dollar fee. We may as well just pay them the fee when we need them for the courthouse, no matter who it is. That's, that's cumulative of seventeen, eighteen and nineteen up until like September, I think. And the ambulance, you guys, even with your old computers, only cost a hundred and nineteen, or three, total of three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
They should've been called a lot more than that's right.
So, we're gonna talk to who next week? Eagle?
Well, I think we have some definitive, I mean, if, if you and your department wanna justify the several hundred dollars that it costs to do whatever you choose to do, you have to defend that. I mean, if you want the commission to say, we're not changing you, you're gonna take the four hundred dollar increase for the sheriff's department to stay with Next Tech, that's on your own budgeting, in my opinion. Health department, same thing. I don't see why the courthouse needs anything. That is any different than what it's been, which would be an unmanaged service. And I would think that we should probably go ahead and do the leased equipment for, especially the sheriff's department. That's the TAS deal. And yours is? Is yours leased or no?
No, no. Ours we, we don't. But I don't think they'll do managed care for us as old as our computers are.
Wilson does.
Our server's not that old.
Yeah.
Wilson will.
Yeah.
With that two hundred.
But I think that number we have for your department, that fourteen whatever, is that what it was? I think that includes the TAS, right? Bringing in your equipment and.
Right. But like I said, they wanna replace the server. The server's only three years old. It doesn't need to be replaced. It could be upgraded. I don't have a problem, you know. I don't have a problem telling. Next Tech, I don't need, you know, they have all new, but, um. Backup, battery backups. We just bought battery backups. I don't need all new battery backups, you know. I, I need to talk to them about. I don't need lists that she says I need. But I don't know if they'll do TAS for part of it or not. But I don't know that they'll do managed care for us if we don't replace the other ones. Either way, whether I pay for them or what they.
I don't think they do. I think that's what she said. They won't do the managed care unless you do the whole.
Cause they're too old.
Package.
So, I'll do the hardware update with everything, probably.
Well, it's the leased equipment is.
I don't have leased equipment.
No, they would bring you leased equipment.
If, if they're gonna be managed, it'd be their leased equipment.
No, or they can do managed with our equipment. But we have to.
That's not what I understood. I understood her to say the, the package that has the dollar amount for the leased equipment is the managed care. The package that has the dollar amount without the leased equipment is if you at least get Windows ten and per, and or purchase your own equipment.
Right.
Right.
Those managed services, they take care of all of our services.
Well, I meant, I'm sorry. I meant to say leased, leased equipment. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, versus purchase. If I don't purchase the equipment, whether I pay for it or I do TAS, they're not gonna manage care our equipment.
But Wilson will, is what they told us.
With the two.
With the upgrade. The ten. But only Windows ten. And then they said they would come in for two hundred dollars a computer and do a complete diagnostic. That, all that labor is covered for whatever you may need to replace, if there was something hardware wise that needed to be changed.
But how do you know they don't get in there and go, oh, yeah, these do all need replaced. If seven years old, we're not gonna put money in them.
Well, that's why you would lease the equipment then, and it would be only twenty-five thousand dollars for the whole entire deal over the next three years to go ahead and have the leased equipment versus purchasing outright.
But I have money in capital outlay that I don't know that can be used on a monthly. Don was gonna look that up for me.
Yeah, I forgot.
Yeah.
You may wanna contact them yourself on your particular situation here.
Yes, I know. I know. It's just how can I spend my budgeted money? It's not budgeted.
If you got capital outlay.
And if you have a monthly payment, can you take a monthly payment out of capital outlay or am I allowed to spend it that way?
I think you can.
I don't know.
I think you can.
That's the other.
I'm pretty sure your bottom dollar amount in your budget is what can't be changed as far as we can't take money from yours and spend it in.
Right.
A different department. Although, County General, I don't know.
County General can go to any other department. Other departments can't fund money.
Into category.
And I think because her money, like I told her, I think because her money comes from her fund, if she needed it for her fund, she could always move the capital outlay back into it. So, I think she can actually draw it out of the capital outlay, but I would need to double check to see what those statutes specifically say.
Basically make a deposit to your contractual line item, is how I would see it. Okay, well, do we want to, we're not gonna, if we're not gonna get any numbers from Eagle communication, I'm not in favor of waiting much longer just because we're on a expirant.
Do we really wanna look at Eagle? Are you guys interested in dealing with them? Or should we make decisions now based on what we got now?
I mean, it's a decision that, I guess, what, what is the decision you're making? That we can follow through with the way we, we want to do it or are you making a decision for our departments?
Well, I mean, ultimately, it's our contract. The contract is with the commission. So, ultimately, yes. But I would say that if these departments are adamant about sticking to the same company and they're willing to justify that increased expense, then that's on them.
Next Tech's gonna cost a little more, but if you guys, and I can understand you liking it because I know software and hardware systems, you get used to something. And if somebody comes in and has a total changeover, a lot of times there's snafus and bugs, like Dustin was saying, I know. So, I can understand you wanting Next Tech and that's fine. It may cost a little more upfront, though.
Well, what I'm hearing is we at least have one department that's willing to try Wilson.
Well, Derek's basically, his department basically start from scratch here though, cause you don't have much to work with now at all, do you?
What's in there?
Right, right. So, you're gonna be like get new and you can go Wilson and Don and the, and the people here, uh, in the courthouse can determine what you guys wanna do. You have to, right now, you don't have any managed, but you have, you call Next Tech to come fix your problems if you have a problem, right?
Would you go Next Tech if that was your choice?
Yes.
Okay.
And Sheriff's Department?
Courthouse would go Next Tech or Wilson?
Don, do you have any preference on anything?
I would wanna talk to some counties that have Wilson before then, because I get conflicting information from other departments in Wilson or in Ellsworth County.
Well, that's fine.
I, I just.
We're not wanna cram Wilson down you guys' throats if you don't like him. That's fine. Next Tech's fine. If you got, it may cost a little more.
Other than that, I don't have a preference. I just want, when I have a problem, somebody to come.
Sure.
And fix it.
That's true.
Fix it right and not make it worse. That's my overall goal.
Well, have you ever had that problem? Have you ever had that problem with Next Tech?
No, not since we went with Next Tech.
You're satisfied with Next Tech.
You're satisfied with their customer service.
And that's worth a lot, having good, good tech support's worth a lot and you guys are comfortable with them. I say, even if we pay a little more, it's worth it. Because I understand you got your hardware systems and your complex networks and stuff. You want them to work. And if you're comfortable with them, that's a very important item to have there.
But at the same time, I would say that at least in the courthouse, there's not the same situation where you have these existing networks and or leased equipment that would have to be completely changed out from company to company. I mean, we have a lot more option with Wilson to come in and individually test each computer in the courthouse and tell us what needs done to it while they pull the ten, the Windows ten.
To be honest, to be honest, we were briefed here by Next Tech and Wilson and I, Wilson really impressed me.
Me too.
With their detail of how they would go with each computer and each network instead of with each department and work with all you people to get what you want. And they were impressed me more than Next Tech did. But that doesn't mean Next Tech's, maybe the person presenting it to us with Next Tech just wasn't as tech savvy as the other Wilson people were. And if you guys like Next Tech, that's, I think it's the way we should go. Or at least you're each department, like you guys, the sheriff's one and the Ladonna, you guys.
It comes down to how you wanna run your own budget. I mean, you're responsible for your budget. If we continue to have budget cuts, you're gonna have to think about where that's gonna come from. Cause if your contracts are set for the next three years, you kinda know what that expense is gonna be. So, then you're looking at salaries or purchases for your commodities. I mean, one ply, two ply.
Then I think that, same with the sheriff's office and me. Unfortunately, IT, IT, living without our computers and IT, the way it is, is like road graders not having a road grader. I mean, we have to have. It's a vital piece of equipment and it has to be up kept for us to do business. So, if you cut my budget, something else is gonna get cut. It's not gonna be my computers or my IT, because I can't do it, because I have to have it. So, I, I guess that's what I'm saying, is it's, it's a vital piece of my budget.
Yeah, we know. You gotta have this.
That's your discernment there, so.
I just say the bid that I have from Next Tech, there's some things I would like to change in it. So, when you're making a decision, I don't know that the numbers are exactly gonna be right. Because there's some things in this bid that I need to change, because I'm not gonna replace a server that's only three years old. I just think that's ridiculous. So, if they can't do part of it TAS and part of it the other way, I might just outright buy my equipment.
So, you know what I'd like to suggest? I'd like to suggest that Next Tech or Wilson, whomever, does their contract with your department. I mean, why?
That's what I was asking you. Why are we doing it as a big thing?
Well, the, the numbers don't change. We're not getting a discount for signing up every department at the commission's will.
Well, Wilson, I, I don't know. Next Tech may want us to be all.
Well, it's just like you have your own contract with your medical provider for your, for the health department. That's, I mean, yes, it comes through the commission as a technicality, but you kind of shopped around and chose your, what's it called? Medical consultant. So, I see this as the same thing. If we're not really getting a discount for saying, oh, we can get five departments to sign up together, then.
That way, then you can.
You can customize your.
Yeah, you can customize your own software and hardware with whoever you want to get what you like. That way, we don't have to micromanage what you wanna do. Same way with the sheriff's department, same way with any department.
Well, I think it's just really hard, you know. When Cheryl came to my department to talk about our systems and everything, we had a discussion about things we needed and things we didn't need. But until I see it on paper, I can't really, I don't really know what they need. Now, I can go back, since I have it on paper, and say, I don't need this or I do need that. You know, I don't need all new backup, battery backups. They're a hundred bucks a piece or something, a hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I don't need, I don't need them. I have them. I, you know, those kinda things.
Yeah.
Battery backups will last forever as long as, you know.
But you have a generator, so.
Yeah, I have a generator, so they don't, we don't use it for it.
Yeah, there's certain things that are urgent or not urgent for you aren't the same for others. What about your motor vehicle program?
Yeah, I need, I need new computers. But I have motor vehicles that I can spin out of and I have a tech fund for Tammy.
But would you rather purchase or, because they gave us a, those companies gave us.
It was kind of like a lease, so if something goes wrong, they're gonna come in and replace it.
Lease, purchase.
The actual savings of doing the cost purchase is not super significant percentage-wise over the thirty-six months, in my opinion. I mean. I don't know what percentage that is, but. It doesn't seem like if you had to replace your own equipment, that you'd really end up saving any money by purchasing outright versus just doing the lease, then you know it's spoken for, for someone to pay the bill.
And Wilson has me down for seven computers. The director's license is state equipment.
I wonder if it was at the laptop, maybe?
Um, I don't know. I'm not sure.
So, I guess what I'm hearing is we need to send Next Tech to the sheriff's department and to the health department and tell them to go and refine, fine tune their contract. And then you can bring us the paper to sign. The other departments, are you're willing to try Wilson?
Absolutely.
Okay. And we have the highway department. I would say, since they're not as. Integrated into being online for services, we could try Wilson with them too. I don't see why not.
Yeah, they don't have much network or hardware, period.
And they're new there anyway, so it's not like they have to learn. They're already learning something new. I don't see why that would be a problem. So, we can do that. Who else are we missing? Do we, did they do the landfill? Is there anything at the land?
They have computers.
Yeah, but they're not using an online system to manage their accounts. You're doing their paperwork, their billing, I mean. So, they could probably try, if it's cheaper. I have to look at the.
We need landfill. They got four computers, I'd say, up there.
Put the landfill.
Managed firewall. They got a firewall and a switch and.
No, they don't. The la, the landfill doesn't have a firewall and a switch.
Well, that's what it says on the Wilson, uh.
So, do they even need service other than?
I don't, yeah, I wonder where they got that from.
I have no idea.
I don't either. I don't know either.
Well, then it would even be that much cheaper.
But. Yeah, I don't know.
Did we have a packet on them from Next Tech?
No, they're included with mine.
Oh, and.
They're included with the whole, Don and.
Everything that says Lincoln County clerk, which is not necessarily.
Is the eight hundred and thirty.
Every, really, Don has everything except the sheriff's department and the.
Highway.
Highway.
We do have to do something for the courthouse though, because we have the server, we have off-site storage, you know, we have in, infrastructure that we have to do.
So, you, what do you, would you like Next Tech to do a managed, uh, for you?
I don't wanna make that decision. I don't think that's fair for me.
No, I'm just.
I feel like everybody drops everything on me and then everybody takes it when it doesn't work.
Well, I'm not.
So, sorry, guys. I'm just gonna be honest with you.
We're not, I'm not, I'm just asking.
I don't know if it's a matter, we all discuss and visit a little bit and, and decide what our wants and desires and needs are.
Well, well, could you talk with the other courthouse people? And we had coming together as a group, what you guys would like?
Well, you also need to look at your contractual line item.
Well, I know. There's, there's two there, but you could also, yeah, Lee Anne. Yeah, and some really.
How is that being billed right now per department for the courthouse for contractual line item for IT?
They're not, because the only thing that is being managed is the server, the firewall and the backup right now.
Which is just coming out of the general, because it's shared. So, you may wanna continue that and.
I actually thought Lee Anne's was still being managed too, but you're not?
No, mine are like seven, seven years old.
I thought the last contract had you managed, but they just won't manage you anymore.
Where is the Next Tech packet on the highway department?
You pay them a highway department, don't you?
Yeah.
I don't think they ever have one.
Just after, just within.
Don, do we have a separate Next Tech packet for the highway department? I have health department, sheriff, clerk.
I think they had them on me.
They must.
Because I think that the sheriff's office, they wanted separate because they were TAS. And I think the whole department, they felt like needed to be separate because Ladonna has up with other grant funds and things that. They do with, so I think they're all included on me.
Yeah, here it is. Highway.
I think they just have three.
I think they just have three computers, and right now they're doing, like, a server backup, because they're consolidating it, that she could change that to where they just did a backup of the computers individually and have it be cheaper. Um, but it was how it was set up. But they do not have a server done, they just have computers.
Do they have a network like between Brandon's computer and the?
Well, the way I understood it, Nextech won't do, they won't do the managed care on the equipment unless you get new equipment. So they were just giving you managed care on new equipment, no matter what, whether it's you purchase or lease. Wilson was willing to do managed care on your current equipment as long as you do the Windows upgrade. And then they would come and diagnostically assess each computer as to what needs changed out. So I'm just saying right now, we don't have the money to do those purchases, either way.
He told me, he didn't put a price on it, but he told me that you get the, for two hundred and fifteen dollars, they would upgrade, and you can get the Windows seven, or the Windows ten, I think he said that in here for free, through Microsoft, through the end of January. But then he told me, when he was talking in my office, that they were assessing what computers needed. So like, if my computer was being upgraded, it, they would also assess at that time, they, that's what they were running the program for, to see whether or not we were worth the investment, I guess might you say. And he was, he told me, he says, oh, well, your machine, it has a slot, more slot for memory, and then we could put in a new hard drive. But that was all gonna be extra beyond the two hundred and fifteen dollars.
The, the, not the labor, the whatever need to be purchased.
Hardware.
Right, so that two hundred and fifteen is not.
That's the labor.
That's, oh.
That's, that's the labor and the assessment for each computer. And then if yours needs this, then you pay for that and get it, and if so and so's needs that, then you just pay for that and get it. But you're not actually purchasing out, I'm just saying, how would we afford? Someone tell me how we would afford to just purchase out all new computers, because Nextech won't do you managed care without that.
Without it, yes, correct.
So the only option is, if you're not gonna get all brand new computers, which nobody has budgeted, then you go with someone who will manage care your current thing, but what they wanna do is come in and individually assess it.
Now again, ignore what we're saying, because yours, they can't do any other.
I understand.
None of the equipment. But for like my computers that are three years old, if I started running slow, he said we could call them up, and they know that they have, we have a slot for memory, so he could bring me more memory, or if my hard drive started failing, he knows that he could replace the hard drive and make the case of the piece of equipment last longer. The question that I have is all those drivers and whether or not you can upgrade, but I guess if they're upgrading the hard drive, I don't understand computers.
No, I'm not, I'm not tech savvy enough to really understand.
I didn't wanna see there, and that's why I went online to read, and it said if your computer was more than seven years old, and you were gonna spend twenty-five percent of the purchase price on upgrades, then you should just get a new computer, so.
But that's whether or not you have the money to, you do.
Well, how much is a hard drive?
You do, I don't know.
Well, I know, I'm lucky that I have the money, I, I get that, I'm not trying to, but I'm just trying to say.
If, if, Don, if you got a new hard drive, they would have come with driver software for all that new hardware.
Okay, but would it connect with the printer?
Yeah.
Would it connect with all of the other components?
They would, yeah, it would come with, yeah, it would come with a package, a package of drivers, which would be upgraded with that operating system, probably.
So how mu- Madonna asked, how much is a hard drive, do you know?
For what kinda computer, or for, a PC, a laptop, like this?
I know, a desktop.
A desktop, oh, three, four hundred?
Yeah. And I know a stick of memory isn't that much, because I used to buy them for my, but that's.
A hard drive, yeah, there nowadays, a desktop is easy and.
But you're also talking about spreading those purchases out over time as things fail, instead of just doing a clean sweep and refreshing everything, because then everything fails at the same time, potentially.
There is a point though where the hardware's too old and you need, and you need new.
I get it.
I know what you're saying too, we don't have the money for all this stuff either, all at one time.
But then if I, you know, I know my computer.
Yeah.
Outlook won't shut down at all, and.
That's what I think.
It is slower than most.
That's what I think.
I mean, there's, 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 they're old, I mean, I don't know that they can put enough guts in there to, unless they replace the hole inside, so I don't know how many for that.
But it also depends on the sheets, that's why I think we're best going with individualized department contract.
Yeah, lease, lease for the sheriff's department, and for, thanks, you guys.
Yeah, could we leave you with the directive that you just go ahead and contact Nextech and tell them that you're gonna stay with them?
Yeah, and, and, and you could work on what you would upgrade, your own hardware, software, or lease manage and release or whatever.
You have a problem.
You know what you're doing, Dustin, and what your system better we do, so.
I mean, you're getting a better, you're getting a better, if you know that's what you want, you're getting a better financial deal to go five. But they didn't give us the breakdown, they only gave us the breakdown on the total, between three and five.
Oh, for Wilson?
No, for Nextech.
Oh, it's on this one.
But it's not per department?
Well, hers is, though.
Where?
Because she's broke out, she's on the back page. Um, so hers would be fourteen thirty versus twelve.
No, I'm sorry, it is, so there you go, I'm sorry, I didn't look at that.
Okay, I just didn't know if.
I thought they only gave us the total.
Only for a year that, that you wanted someone.
No, you may as well save the money, because you're locked into that price, so you at least know your budget for five years, that's good.
Yeah, uh, yeah, you should deal with Nextech too.
So we can leave you with that, and we can leave the ambulance department with contacting Wilson?
Derek, you're probably gonna need new hardware, because your hardware is like.
I am, but I'm actually starting to wonder if they, we never write two run reports, almost never, at the same time. I could probably get by with two computers, mine and one back there.
Instead of three?
Education computer, god, yes.
Okay.
That'd be awesome.
Whatever you think there, but you would need new hardware and new upgraded software. And why don't, and if, I think he should go with, if you wanna do Wilson, I, they seem very competent to me, uh, what, you could do that.
I need a laptop, and we need a good, good computer in the backside, if they wanna play games, they can go on to jump computers and play games. That's what destroys our computers anyway. People are going on and playing games once in a while.
Well, if you get on the internet, I'd be careful where you go, because then you can pick up malware and all that other stuff.
That's something they mentioned, specifically, number one, you can do a test run, which, I'm saying this in the open meeting, but if they open emails or whatnot, you can also, they can do a, what it, like a spam?
Like a spoof, they're gonna spoof your email people and see if they open it.
So it's like a training, it's like a live training, and you can also block certain things, you can have parameters set up by computer.
Yeah.
Some webpages are blocked.
Cause you, we're just talking. There's just enough of a firewall right now that I got a new, new printer scanner, and it won't talk to my computer, it's blocking it, blocking that.
When you talk to Wilson.
Fix that.
Yeah. When you talk to Wilson, they'll give you all the advice you need on all these problems, I think that's right.
Why don't you deal?
So then we leave you with the idea of going out on your own.
Derek, you deal with them on your own, kind of, uh, you, you know their number and all that?
I'm good, I'm good.
Why don't you talk to them, let me know, okay?
Cause I've gotta do something relatively quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, go for it, just go call them, and you have this paper, you have this one?
Yep.
Okay. That's all you need.
Put that a question on the Wilson telephone.
Okay.
Okay, what's the new managed care, uh, what's managed? Like for my department, it's ninety dollars a month. Does that include, if that price includes new computer?
Yes, yes, the right hand column is like what would be the TAS with Nextech.
Okay, so that would be a new, so I went with Wilson tel- or, it would be ninety dollars a month with new computer?
Yes. And that's, that would be for a three year deal? And they actually did email us and say that we could get the same price for five year, but I would say if we're not getting a discount, we may as well just go with the three year and see how that goes.
Then if we don't like it, we don't.
Yeah, then you're not locked in as long.
Right.
Um, but yes, you're right, the left column is if you keep your equipment, and they do these individual upgrades, at, with, with their labor being about two hundred something, for them to come in and do a diagnostic, and they will upgrade you to ten. But then anything you need in addition to that for your individual computer, we would probably have to purchase those components individually.
I have more memory.
They're not gonna bring in a brand new computer for you.
Right.
They're gonna use.
That's on the left column.
Right, right, the left one, no new computer, just component fix.
The right column is their leased equipment.
Yeah, brand new leased computer.
It's fifty dollars a month, basically.
Right.
It's, are you gonna spend the fifty dollars a month for the next three years to lease their equipment?
And he did say that we can call whenever we want to, like, if you remember the original Nextech managed contract, all you had to do is pick up the phone and call, and either they would send somebody or anybody to remote, that's what they'll do. And they said move changes and everything they would cover. Which I think is the difference between here, because right now, if we do new equipment outside of the, like, if we were managed and we did new equipment, they charge us the labor to set up the new equipment with Nextech. Where Wilson is saying that they won't.
Right.
Now, I haven't seen that, so.
Wilson's.
But I think that, that's why I tried to say earlier, I think they're trying to get into the market, and not that I want everyone to be a guinea pig, I understand if, if you're.
If it's cheaper, I'll be a guinea pig.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you guys aren't here at two in the morning, you don't need someone to show up at two in the morning, and if your system goes down for a day, it's not the same as someone losing their life.
Like sheriff's department, I understand that.
Yeah, they can't afford to not get a car or get a.
And they like, and they like Nextech, you're dealing with them, and that's worth a lot.
And I think with them, they have a separate segregated unit that just deals with law enforcement centers.
Sure.
Which is, is probably worth paying in itself.
Special, special software.
Like their own customer service or something.
Yeah.
Same hardware.
I mean, they do get Jade to come down, but they have a go-to guy that's a little bit higher up than Jade that's.
Well, I think they have a special security more too, because of law enforcement stuff, for hacking, uh, firewall.
I don't like this, because I can't tell what's treasurers, what's wrong with us.
They never did give us a breakdown, like they had, like Don said, the, the Nextech packet for you guys is just all lumped together with not just weed, with highway department and ambulance, the only thing they have separate for us to look at.
So we can't figure, well.
No, you can't figure per department by Nextech right now. But I will say this, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but it was my understanding with Wilson, when they came to the table, they give you this forty dollar a month contract, they come in, you pay two hundred bucks, they look at your computer, if you need to purchase something, we pay for it right then, so maybe it costs five hundred bucks or whatever to get all your current equipment up to snuff, software wise, and getting all your hardware working to, to the extent that it's, it's in its best shape for the age that it is. But next year, when something goes wrong, instead of going through that process again, you can switch to the TAS and bring in their leased equipment, even during the contract, but then we start paying the increased price, does that make sense?
And they said it could be either or, so like, I have three new computers, so I could be managed and you could be TAS, because you have all.
Leased, and, and leased new.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have, no, yours is bought, okay, so no one has leased equipment?
I've still bought ours the last two times, so the county has not.
Well, you got a total of special software for all your highway department, I mean, I mean, all your tax stuff and your reg- vehicle registration stuff, right? You got a whole separate set of hardware and software, is that right?
The software.
Software.
Yeah, the software, same like, like I do.
And I'm starting to have issues with all of them, so I'm not sure I wanna try to upgrade.
See, that's what we're being told.
Piece by piece by piece.
Right.
That's what we're being told. You're saying you may wanna just lease?
I wanna lease new computers.
So then where's your breakdown, so yours.
So you would be, uh.
Yours is two hundred and eighty versus six hundred and thirty, but we don't have to purchase anything outright upfront.
But if we got, if we got new plus managed, it'd be six thirty a month for you, Leanne. What if that's a, that's quite a job from two eighty to six thirty.
You know, you know how you said the general fund is paying for the firewall and the server and whatever for the whole building? Does that expense go away when you have this breakdown like this, or is that another additional expense on top of each department?
It's on top of it, because, okay, where it has clerk off right now, the only thing that I actually have is three computers. Everything else is county general.
So that firewall, that server, that switch.
That's all county general that's next door in that room.
So really, that should be spread out between all the departments.
That ain't really your stuff, it's just under your ti- under your, under your label, yeah.
And so it's always been paid for by county general, because it, it.
It services everybody, yeah, right.
So you guys don't need your own firewalls, it's one, so technically that firewall charge of one forty should be split between clerk, treasurer, deeds, preserver.
Everybody, in the, in the courthouse.
Wait a minute, we're paying for economic development?
No.
Okay, they just added them in.
Well, I think we have one computer that still is accessing through the server. When we.
I have a question about that.
Our, our system is just a little messed up, but when we had the, I'll just call it a mom and pop guy that come in and did our IT that managed us for quite some time until he quit. He installed the server, cause we didn't have a server before, he got that going. We had the networking already for the AS four hundred computers, so basically they just got the server going to where everybody stores on, in, onto the server, and then everything is backed up. Well, with that then, we've supplied internet down here, so because we supplied internet here, they had to be connected through the server. Now, since then, I think the computer that used to sit where Barb Raffin sat is still connected, but Kelly has updated her computer, so she's not even part of our system. She gets internet from us, but she doesn't go through the server like the old computers did, because at the time, that's how they got it.
Well, she doesn't need it, it's, she's all independent, just doing on my. So my question is, just related to the subject, are, are we getting a payment every month toward the internet from that department?
We fund the internet for the entire building. So that's why county general pays for it, is because it funds, it, it pays for the entire building to have internet.
But we also haven't known the breakdown like we could possibly know now, I mean.
Computers, but internet, how, how would I, how would you break that down?
Because it's access, you have unlimited access. It's not by use, we don't pay by usage, we pay by access to it, it's a flat fee, right?
I wanna say it's like three hundred dollars or something.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a flat fee.
General expense, why, all we're doing is moving Robbie Peter to Pecor.
How much is internet a month?
No, it's not, I mean, we make a separate mill to pay for economic development, and build that out, and then they don't have, they don't cover their expenses.
Aren't you just saying what, that my office should have to, to pay for it, the treasurer's office should have to pay for it? Is that not what you were saying by breaking it down, by user, or by?
That's what I understood.
You can't break it down.
No, I'm saying, it's a flat fee, but you're basically providing internet for a department that then extracts its money separately from the county, we were talking about economic development.
Yeah, why is that different than the treasurer's department, or the?
I, I get what you're saying, but I, I was looking.
We're adding two mills for it, that's why.
You're saying you got a separate budget, a mill for her, so, I know what you're saying, yeah, in other words, you got an expense for her budget.
Do they pay utilities?
They pay for their toll, I mean.
Well, that's the perk that the county economic development did.
At least supply internet for district court, too.
You, next year we'll do the budget on economic development, you can, you can add that in there.
It's part of the reason why we just always took everything out of county general, because it's.
Well, wasn't, wasn't it?
This whole building, you know, like internet, electricity.
There even, like, our internet?
California electricity, you are, you know.
No, but I'm saying doesn't that, uh, in my mind, that's like saying.
She'd get utilities, in other words, not out of her budget, is what you're saying, or not internet, out of her budget.
I understand that.
I'm saying.
Well, that's understandable, I think you got a good point, but what, next, when we do the budget in the future, when we got economic development coming up in the budget, we should say, okay, now she's getting eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and uh, part of her budget, or part of her budget goes to pay the bills, electric, cell phone.
Yeah, I understand that it ultimately comes out of what we give them, because that's all they survive on, but that justifies a return on your money versus just an additional expense. Basically what I'm saying is when you ask for their budget and you see a hundred and seventeen thousand, it's actually more like a hundred and twenty-five thousand. But no one's gonna see that, because we're covering it as a general fund.
I, I get that. Okay, for the person that has to break out the bills every month, it would be easier for you guys to say, Economic Development Foundation Board, we are no longer going to give you rent free. We're gonna start, start charging you X amount of dollars in order to offset the utility bills.
Exactly.
Rather than me trying to divide out the equal communication bill by the number of offices that are accessing it.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but that's still how you figure the, that's still how you figure the rent, is all I'm saying. So if I could do the math, just, just do at least figure the rent, and what it equals for one person to be here. Because if you have fifteen people in the building, and your electric bill's a hundred dollars, and you divide it by fifteen, that's, it's that, you know what I mean? It's just kinda that way. However many more people are in your office is what your office consumes more of, whether it's water, electricity.
But what about Joe Blow Public that comes to the meetings, uses our bathroom, gets water?
They're paying for it.
We have so many that comes and showers here without a shower, but.
Yeah. Well, we could, I mean, in other parts of the world, what you end up doing is you end up providing homeless shelters on county money. You end up providing health insurance on county money for public people who are on the system. You end up supplying housing stipends out of your county money, I mean, this is where this goes, people, in the future, because county, Lincoln County is technically thirty years behind any of that, thank the lord.
I know what you're saying.
Well, with your internet access, doesn't matter, you can't split that out, because you pay the same amount if you had one less person access.
Well, why don't we pay four hundred a month for internet, you said, four hundred a month for internet? Something like, well, how many computers?
I think it's like, it's.
How many computers?
We don't need it even now, I. We don't need it even now, I do think that should be part of next year's budget, I'm just saying, it's kinda how we ended up figuring out.
Okay, well, we talked about, no, I'm not. Well, the thing is, you got, say you got twenty computers in the courthouse connected to the internet, but some people are using the internet a lot more than other people, so that's not fair, like.
But you're paying for access.
Rhonda Thomas may use the internet a lot more than the.
Yeah, but we pay for unlimited internet, so you're just paying for access to it, is what I'm, that's the best way to break it down, you're paying to access.
I know. Right. So if you got twenty, twenty people can access it, then it should be four hundred divided by twenty and that's how much you should be getting used to.
We pay three hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month.
Three thirty-eight a month and then.
Which really isn't bad for how many people to have unlimited access.
Well, we probably got fifteen users in the county.
But if you see worth using internet, you still pay three hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month.
Yeah, but that's not my point, I'm just saying, when, when you pay by usage, like if we wanted to squabble about it. Dawn's office and Rhonda's office both have two people, you can say they use about the same amount of electricity and water or whatever, because they're all, they're both here eighty hours a week. When you have an office of someone who's here half the time at a part-time position, it's just, I'm saying, you can kinda do generalized figuring. I'm not asking you to break all that down, but I'm saying, we have a department that puts an extra two mills on the tax roll. And then gets other expenses paid on top of that.
Yeah.
It's not fair to your own budgets.
Well, they're their own taxing entity and they're a nonprofit organization. I mean, I get that part of it, I just.
Yeah.
But, but that also gives them, every time there's an increase, salary line increases instead of.
Be Rhonda.
I want to take off.
Do you have an opinion on next tech or Wilson?
That's where the money goes, let's face it.
You like, do you have an opinion on next tech or Wilson or managed or, if you need managed or not managed?
I've, I've always said, I mean, no more.
Well, maybe you, maybe all you courthouse people should discuss it and determine if you need some.
I'd like to see what other counties use Wilson, kind of call and visit with them, see to what level.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, see. I agree.
Go ahead, yeah, Dawn.
But you're looking at this, if they're gonna pay for equipment and, you know, I pay three hundred and sixty a month, to me, that sounds good, because I'm gonna need computers.
Okay.
Because once we have to update to Windows ten, we're, we're about to have to get one, because I don't think Orion's gonna run off of it.
Well, Wilson said if they can upgrade, say you didn't get new hardware, but they would upgrade your hardware so it would be compatible with Windows ten and then they do, put Windows ten.
And they'll give you Windows ten.
But I think my computers are ten years old.
Too old, well, then you probably need new hardware.
But they're at least seven years old.
Well, they're gonna evaluate all that and they'll say.
But we also have to think about financially making those purchases, I mean, can you do one this year and one next year, to spread that out over.
She's lucky because she has a capital outlay fund, because originally when Orion was being, they thought they were gonna have to have their own separate server and then that did end up. So we have money, a little cushion, maybe not enough.
Not enough to read, not enough for four computers, okay, but, you know, if I can pay, you know, get, that's why I was asking if this meant, this three sixty of mine, wherever it was. Whatever, yeah, three sixty, if that meant equipment and then the monthly.
The right column is leased equipment and monthly service, the left column is what you have. They'll come in for a fee and some odds and ends and poke around and fix, but then that's just to maintain, but you still own the equipment on the left-hand column.
Right.
And they probably actually got enough information that we could ask them what pieces of equipment are upgradable and which ones are gonna have to be replaced.
I was gonna say, because they came and looked at every.
Well, they, they went looking at each piece.
What I liked about Wilson is that they're willing to come in and look at each machine.
Right.
And basically said, we're not gonna serve you if you don't upgrade everything across, we don't have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Wilson came in and, and ran something on each one of ours.
And, and you know.
The difference between that is next tech's already has access to our computers, so they don't have to actually physically come.
But they weren't willing to do managed service unless we buy new. And they're just giving us the option, buy new yourself upfront or pay this bigger amount every month and we'll lease it to you, but they weren't saying anything about piece meal.
Well, they were almost saying, we almost had to do that because our machines are running Windows seven now or whatever it is.
I think on the historical purpose, if you, if you're talking about three hundred and sixty-nine dollars for a hard drive and two hundred and fifteen dollars for labor, you're already asked, what, close to six hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, a new computer is seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, so does it make sense, I think that's where they were coming from.
Yeah.
On the economical side of it, does it make sense to update that stuff?
Depends on if your stuff will last a year or two years, to me, that's what it depends on, you know, it.
But if it's, it's already past, I mean, I'll have to go back and look to see, I almost.
But it's a never-ending cycle is what I'm saying, if you spend it this year, it's five years sooner that you have to do it again, if you spend it next year, it's one year later that you have to do it again, that's, I'm saying it's a. Complete cycle that you're never gonna get out of because of technology and how that works. I just, I was actually more impressed with Wilson's.
Well, Wilson was more, uh, detailed with it.
But I agree with Dawn, I'd like to see what some of these other counties have happened.
Well, can you guys just decide as a courthouse and come back to us with your recommendation for you and I'm gonna go ahead with the commission, the commission, I'm gonna go ahead and tell Brendan to contact Wilson and set up their own contract.
Yeah.
I also think we wanna wait on Eagle to come back and talk to us, get more information.
No, we don't need Eagle.
If they were already here and they didn't do that.
I'd go with Wilson too for the highway department, because they don't have that complex of a setup and, then, then they're older and.
That's how I feel. So Dawn, in the minutes, they're, the commission is approving, um, instructing the highway department to set up their contract for IT for three years with Wilson.
I need you to sign this too, this is that extra door we.
We did approve it, right? We did the same thing with the health department, Derek.
And I'll have Dawn.
We're gonna take that, pass it to them.
This is a new bid for twenty-eight hundred dollars. Well, I think that's, the, the, each department should probably do what they like, if it benefits them the best.
Well, I can understand why, it's a big changeover for some and not much for the others, so, what is today?
Like the sheriff's is special. Right.
What is today?
Yeah, thirty-first, Halloween.
Oh, that's right. Keep forgetting where we are here.
What do we have else?
You just guys have correspondence.
Dawn, here's this, we, we agreed to that, extra door and there's the extra signature, I'll actually sign that.
And.
Can you, did you fax the other one to that guy?
I emailed it to him and I need to check, we applied for the project exemption, so I will check and make sure, see if we've gotten that certificate yet.
Or email? Okay. Okay, thank you.
What do we have for correspondence? Uh, Alan Serene brought those in to me and I spread them out here on the table.
Yeah, the hospitals.
Yeah, what we do, they're part of his hidden agenda.
Oh, what I wanted, what I wanted to tell you is, at the meeting, which, did you get a copy of that from Mr. Granzo, but he handed out. It was a informational packet on a new model for rural hospitals, did you see that?
I didn't.
I did not see it.
So there's a new model for rural hospitals that you, uh, Kansas Uni- um, University of Kansas is working on, not K-State, University, U, UK. And, um, or KU, they are working on a new rural model which is focused on. How do they call it? Something patient care, but it's, you know how they've come out with all these urgent care facilities? It's kind of in response to an over influx of emergency where patients who really aren't dying. So then they have this emergency urgent care option where you don't have to go to the emergency room, they're gonna treat you for your sinus infection you woke up in the middle of the night with. You know, you go up in the morning and you go to urgent care, you don't go and pay your emergency room co-pay and all that stuff. So the critical access model is what we have and we did that and we changed from your traditional inpatient. Kind of when they used to deliver babies and everything else here, so now we're critical access. There is a grant that Kansas is, that KU is writing to get money for certain hospitals to qualify to kind of be part of that. Changeover, if they're gonna change over their model, because critical access are getting paid on square footage and they're getting paid on depreciation for capital expenses.
Yeah.
Things that, as we can see, it's hard to keep up with.
Well, Ward, I brought that, Ward, I brought that up, it was about this KU thing.
Yes, and so, I just wanted to make you aware of it, I think it's very interesting and I don't even know that they're taking applicants yet, but it would be something to. Encourage the board to at least look at, what are our options there, because it really focuses on, oh, a primary care center, that's what it's called. Prime, I think, primary care center, is what it's, I'll have to look it up, anyway, interesting stuff, I don't know. We got, did you get bylaws too?
Yes.
They're not signed.
No.
That mean they're, they didn't adopt them, because I was at the meeting.
It means they're not official and that's what I told them when they, when David called and complained that he couldn't get them, I said, we don't have a set of bylaws. Well, I saw a man do it, you saw them give me a piece of paper that's unauthenticated.
Those are the ones that you asked for copies of, but we never came back and got, so I just brought them down, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's my fault.
I probably should have brought them down the week before.
But what I realized is they weren't signed, so they haven't been signed.
They are not officiated.
So they're still technically operating under their own bylaws.
That's right.
So, how, do we wanna address the board, because we made the motion to notify them that they, as the board, did not employ and contract with a consultant? There was also a question about the relationship with the consulting firm and the administration of the hospital, that was kind of confirmed at the meeting, you weren't there, but it was confirmed.
That was a dead lady.
Oh, yes, you were, I'm sorry.
Well, that's it, they have a consultant, they've hired this, uh, lady from, uh, Great Plains, she's supposed to be coming and.
But the problem is, the only two people that executed that agreement to hire was the CEO, administrator, what are your views, and the CFO, the only two people. And as David pointed out, uh, that's, and that's why he asked those very specific questions at that meeting. That identified only those two people exclusively were on the hiring of that consultant, because she has a relationship. And I was surprised he didn't pursue it, but yes, I think they need to be able to explain that and show us at least confirm that there is no conflict or that they. Did the conflict of interest examination before they signed it to ensure that there would be no conflict, but I don't see that being done, I think.
Well, if you remember at that meeting, Mr. Granzo said that they coordinated with Mr. Otting, the auditor, Eric Otting, and Eric Otting was okay with her. Being the consultant, and now I don't know, I've been saying that, you know.
The fundamental problem, yeah, no, you're right, and that was brought up, the fundamental problem is that we've already challenged the board. To be that administrative arm that they're not doing and obviously haven't been doing for a long time. So instead of being able to point the finger at their employee and say it was this person's decision, there was no collaborative effort. I mean, it's been three months since the notification of the balance, you know, of their bookkeeping triggered the need for the consultant. So they've had meetings where they could have said, these are our contract options, we're gonna hire them, they didn't even discuss it, it's like the employee just brought it to the table and said, well, here, I found one and. I've already employed them.
Well, that's, that seems to be their policy there, they've let Mr. Granzo really operate the place for them and then they just sign up on it, that's their policy.
Well, I believe.
Now, you may say that, yeah, but you may, I know, we may say that that's not enough oversight by the board, but that's how they operate.
But we've already asked them.
That was the purpose. Well, that's why we had that meeting and that's why I expanded on the bylaws and we told them we were displeased and they served our pleasure. And it's time to make them come to attention and do their damn job, it's all we want, just do your job, folks.
We have a public comment or question?
I would request that the county commission board request a, an opinion from the attorney general, asking specifically. Are the CEO and CFO of county organized hospitals, like the Lincoln County Hospital, are they considered governmental employees? Not government employees, governmental employees, that's the question.
Is that the language in the statute, i- if it's a governmental employee, it has to fi- a governmental employee must file a statement of substantial interest?
Exactly.
So.
We as individuals can't request that attorney general opinion, but the three of you can.
Right, and that's a pretty simple, straightforward answer, are they or aren't they?
And that would actually answer a lot of these questions.
Well, I think it was Great Bend, I think it was Great Bend or s- uh, somewhere near there, that there was a question about. The hospital finances being open record and between the ca- and they, they wanted more money from the county, so the county made them open their books and they refused. And then they had to go to the attorney general and the attorney general said, no, you're most definitely subject to the open records, which we know that about our hospital. But furthermore, is the administration there subject to disclosing their financial interests? Because I think there's been, what I was surprised is that they have already a lot of business that they do with Great Plains Health Alliance. And my understanding is, just from a little bit I know about the bond agreement, they have to contract with a consultant to look at their charge master and find out. Are we charging maximum amounts, are we charging, how we're charging appropriately, et cetera, et cetera. But I would think there's an inference about just the overall expenses and looking at that. So if I'm doing business with you and I ask you to come in and look at my expenses, are you gonna say, oh, you should cut me out? But I was a little just taken aback by, hmm, how do you consult with a consultant who's, you're on your, he's on your payroll, basically? Um. It's back to what you said about the board, they need to do more or demand more, whatever that means.
Yeah, just, they got it written in the bylaws, just do what you're.
Well, we're gonna get a new administrator or CEO at the end of this year, with two months from now, so.
I'm not convinced they ought to finish the year.
Well, I don't know about that, but, but we are.
And that money can go to the deficit that was created this year.
We, but, but anyway, whatever, uh, that's gonna happen, so then the board has obviously required them to take more responsibility because they're gonna have to. Get a new administrator.
Well, now, speaking of the board's responsibility, their job is fine to administer it, as far as I could tell, they haven't done a damn thing on it yet.
Their response was that all they had done was ask the current administrator for people that he would recommend, I'm not pleased with that response.
Well. And they're looking for interim.
Well, interim, okay, but.
You can't even find an interim in sixty days.
Well, I, well, I, I guess they were gonna go to some headhunter place to flick for one.
They haven't, no, they were.
And that's another fifty thousand dollars, they should have been out and advertised this, the, ago that he was gonna retire, because he knew that.
Well, I think, well, I think, well, I think you did know that, I heard, I heard that last, last spring, I heard that, though.
No, he didn't say anything about that. And that's a black mark on him.
But, but it was to be reported to the board, you know, it gives them an opportunity, they have to kind of throw in their committee.
To plan, to plan.
Right.
Nope, I, I, whatever.
Well, and you know, let's be honest, in the whole entire county, the CEO and CFO of the hospital are some of the highest paid positions, so. It should take more than a committee of two people asking who's friends with whom to find a new replacement. That's, that's that typical.
I'm quite disappointed with the way that board is operating.
Yeah, um, so what we did not do is send out the notice that we wanted to send out, which is that. Dear hospital board, you have not complied with the requirements by in fact employing or contracting with a consultant, because all they did was. Delegate that responsibility without even saying they were delegating it, they basically just didn't do it and then they got a report that it was done for them, so.
Well, I think they think they have, though, I just said that, they think that, they've, they've given Mr. Granzo the authority to get a consultant.
Show me that in the minutes.
Well, that's their insinuation, because that's what they bring up.
Exactly.
When he said that.
They didn't do it.
Well, when he said that in that last minute, they all sat there quietly and didn't object to that.
Well, let's think about this, we, and I'm not asking for them to meddle in the day-to-day operations, okay, a lot of your expenses are just your daily expenses, but. We have a six and a half million dollar budget of expenditures, they have a seven million dollar budget of expenditures, we're here every Monday. For however many hours, sometimes two days a week or whatever, they meet once a month for two hours, how do you really understand what's going on? Even ejecting all of the daily operation out of the equation, how do you really understand what's going on with your finances?
Well, that's why they rely on their.
In two hours and a meal, I mean.
They rely on their administrator to take care of all that.
But now, look, now with no administrator, who knows what's going on, literally no one, and well, the chief financial officer.
Well, did we, we did not send that note or?
No, we didn't, I would like to put together a mailing list because I.
I don't have that, but I'm, I'm gonna work on it now, just.
And it's my understanding that the, the administrator just emails the board, so they must all have emails as well, we could do that too, you could ask.
Send, spread it down the board, no, it's spread it out, it's his job.
Yeah, that's true, the president, I didn't even think of that.
Mr. Houston.
Yeah, I can get his, I'm sure I can get his email.
Here's my agenda.
Okay. And I did send the request for the documents, we wanted to see the agreements, that's just the prime example, if the board didn't even know what was in the package that was offered to the new employees. How do they really have control of the finances, they didn't even know what benefits they were getting as far as any additional expenses or, and, and even what they were getting paid.
Well, some members of the board did know.
But how do you do that, that's a violation of, really, that's a violation, if there was a quorum of the board, knowing what was happening without the rest of the board knowing and they did it all behind, without open. Meeting information, like you said, it's not the minutes.
Well, I think they go, I think they go into executive session and talk about it, they go in executive session.
But the employment contract and the dollar amount and any of that, that's not executive session material. You can make them, it's like we do, you can make the job offer without disclosure so that there's not like a competition going on.
But when you announce, when you announce hiring somebody and for the, with the amount, then it's the public, yeah.
Yeah, they don't, they didn't do any of that.
It's gotta be in the minutes. When he demonstrated the certification of the qualifications of the physician and the APRN when we were over at the board meeting, none of the members of that board had seen those. He laid them on the table, he passed them around, and where they were expected to sign and approve those. Their bylaws and the, the KAC handbook specifically says they have to validate the certification of the professional qualifications. They didn't do that. It wasn't even close. They didn't even make an attempt to do that. The only person to ask a question was Bob Krangle. He asked, where did you get the information? I made some phone calls.
And is there any current litigation?
That is. That's just, that's wrong. That's not the board, they got to do that. That's, I mean, they're just not doing their job at all.
I don't think they realize, some of them don't realize what they need to do, what their job is.
But that's our fault.
It's in the bylaws and it's in their, their KAC specific. He was kind enough to give us a piece of paper to quote how I was rude to him. Well, he should have read the rest of the damn thing and see what he's supposed to be doing and what the board's supposed to be doing. I still think you're rude to point somebody out that they're rude in a public meeting, but that's beside me.
So, you give me a permission to then go ahead and email Mr. Houston?
Absolutely.
Well, we've already voted on it. You voted against it, so I don't even need your, your permission.
Yeah, he does, because he voted, he, doesn't matter how he voted, it's a commission position now. It's his position, just as well as yours or mine.
That's true. I've signed stuff that I didn't vote for. Okay, so, I will email that. That kind of takes care of that topic, except for we should definitely follow up and find out what they're doing about appointing an interim.
We need to. That's gonna be a crisis pretty quick.
Uh huh, uh huh.
And it's not just an interim. They find an interim, but they've gotta have a concurrent process to find a permanent replacement.
Speaking of interims, I did go up, we went up to the nursing home there at, for the welcoming and I'm kinda sad to see that man go that was there. I had heard good things about him, hadn't met him, and I met him and he seemed, he seemed very engaged.
He's doing a good one.
Yeah, where he's from.
She came from Goodland to here. I think that Mr. Grace has another facility out there and they just both still working for him.
Well, they just contracted with the one in Goodland to be the management firm for that, but it's county owned.
And I talked to Mr. Grace here this week about Jim's, you know, talking to him about buying Lincoln Park Manor. He's thinking it over yet. And he, he wants to come to a meeting sometime or not, maybe him or a representative to get with us and have a discussion in the future about that and about all of Lincoln Park Manor.
So, I've been thinking about that as well, and you know, we have this line item for, don't look at it in this report. Our general fund line item for the nursing home expenses spent in our quarter?
Yes, ten sixteen.
We spent like seventy thousand.
Out of the.
Out of a hundred twenty thousand budgeted. Now, now it'll be another, since we do these doors, that'll be another six or seven thousand.
On top of that.
So, it'll be about eighty thousand you could add to that. Ten other, you know, we improved these doors now. That'll be on top that next quarter. But right now, we spent, I just looked at that, seventy thousand we spent out of that budget.
One thing I forgot to say, and I think you were gone, or no, maybe you were still there. I asked the current administrator who's leaving up there about census reports because I said we haven't been getting any. He said he was never instructed to give the census report to the county. So, we can get a backlog report, so we kind of can add up what the official debt is. But I do wanna address the debt. We can't really move forward without addressing the debt because.
Well, I talked to him about that too, and I talked to Mr. Grace. I said, you know, we're dealing with you and be, but we have this, we have your debt where you haven't paid your rent in the last year and a half or longer, and that's an issue. And I said, no matter how we go forward here, that's gonna be an issue we have to address one way or the other on that. He thinks that he'll be thinking about that too, so.
Well, there are things that we can do. You know, if we really don't wanna spend the money or believe that our own defense forces can take this to, to task, then we can ultimately regenerate that money from our own line item because we don't have to expend the money that we've appropriated. We were supposed to be recouping that money anyhow. That was kind of the idea. You put out a hundred twenty thousand, you get back your thirty thousand in rent. Ultimately, the taxpayer burden is about ninety thousand. That's kind of where we were.
Well, we, and we don't even, even though we budgeted a hundred twenty, we haven't spent that much. I don't.
But that's what I'm saying, and, and I had made the motion with the prior commission to recuperate the debt from the prior unpaid rent, from the prior administrator that Mr. Grace, he offered to take care of fifty percent. So, I said, hey, the, the way we can get the other fifty percent is just reducing the expenses that we expend on that building. And so, they agreed to that. Now, we've kind of gone beyond that because the rent is still not paid and we're still paying bills. What we could do is just put them on notice that we won't be agreeing to pay any bills until we recuperate the amount of debt in our line item that was supposed to be regenerated by a means of rental income. Does that make sense?
What kind of bills, though?
Anything, until that money is recuperated.
But he did say, uh, to me, and I presented it to the board, that as soon as we made progress on fixing those doors, he would pay that money.
He would pay that rent.
And I told him, and I, and Jonathan, well, I, well, we proved the doors. I said, the roof got fixed and Jonathan went up there and he said it did a really good job. And also now the doors we got, we just signed a contract with them. They're gonna come in two to three weeks to, hopefully, so we're in motion here to get this stuff done. I told Mr. Grace that. I said, no, we're getting these things fixed, so.
And I appreciate your follow-up.
Well, yeah, no, I, I wanna see it done.
Well, he said even though it's saying, per your discussion, Mr. Gableman, uh, you indicated that you would pay your back rent as soon as we made progress on fixing the doors and, and other stuff.
And I talked about him.
And we've done that.
And he wants to, he's gonna still meet, I said, or he's now interested. I said, Mr. Gableman, I wanna talk to you about possibly purchasing this facility. And, and, and he says, well, I'm still gonna get with his people, and then he's gonna, he wants to then come and have meet with us in the near future, within a week or two, several weeks, okay? So, we'll see where he's at. And like you just said, Alexis, uh, what you said. Now, the thing is, if we have a, a bill, building bill, that's still our responsibility.
Not when it comes out of our appropriated line items that we expect to get a return on with the rent. It's, it's like instead of.
But that's, you're tying, I disagree with you on this, because you're tying his rent with our, uh, with our line item that we're taking care of.
Because his rent is supposed to subsidize our expenses. That's how it works.
No, that, that ain't nowhere in the lease and that ain't nowhere in the contract.
Yes, it is in the lease. It says that we have to agree to the expense. It says that our, on our behalf in the lease, we have to agree that we're gonna take on that expense. And what I'm saying is, we said a hundred twenty thousand, okay? But what were we supposed to collect?
Repairs and maintenance for the facility.
But what were we supposed to collect?
But what we collect has nothing to do with us paying. If that, if that, if the heater going breaks tomorrow, it costs ten grand to fix, and he don't pay his rent, you're saying, well, we ain't gonna fix the heater because he ain't paid his rent. One ain't, doesn't have nothing to do with the other. Not in my opinion.
Well, it does, because you got, just look at the net that you're getting out of it.
We're responsible for that building. Whether John Grace is there or not, we're responsible to take care of that building.
Yeah, but we leased it to him on the idea that he's gonna offset some of.
But nowhere in that lease that I, that says, if he don't pay his bills, then we ain't gonna fix none of the stuff. I don't see that nowhere in that lease.
Is it true, the email that has the board members and their current addresses?
To my email.
And I know what you guys are saying. You're wanting to say.
Mine, yeah. Oh, see, I mentioned, okay.
Part of a deal we, we made is that we're gonna fix repairs and maintenance of the building, and all your deal is you're gonna pay rent. And, 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 and it kind of looks, Alexis's opinion is, is that rent is helping to pay for our repairs and maintenance, but they ain't legally buying.
If you go back, if you go back into the minutes of this commission for the last two or three years, I think you'll find that he has said in there that he's not going to pay rent until we fix our repairs.
Yeah, he's making, he's making the rent contingent upon.
Well, okay, now then, I agree with you. Now that we fixed everything and he has no excuse saying he's worried about some inspector coming in and writing him up and some fine. Right, we're fixing these doors. Soon as the doors are fixed, they're not fixed yet. Hopefully in a month they will be. Then we should say, yeah, Mr. Grace, everything's fixed now. Where's our rent?
Well, you don't have to fix it because he indicated that he wanted to make sure that we were in the process of fixing it.
Well, we are.
Well, we've already proved it. This board has done its duty.
And they've started their work.
The manual labor is not ours.
They're, they're coming. It's, it's in work.
That's what I'm saying.
No, I agree, I agree with you guys on that. Well, I agree with you guys.
And I wanna qualify something because I'm always talking from this particular perspective that just makes certain people irate. It's like, you don't care about the residents. You don't care about the care, the residents and the, and the atmosphere and the support for the community and this and that. That is not what it has to do with. But I wasn't hired to run the nursing home. I was hired to sit in this chair and make the numbers work. And I don't mean to make it sound so cold when I look at it that way, but if I was working in the nursing home, I wouldn't be talking about numbers. I'd be talking about the patients and how do you feel today? That's not my job here. So, my job here is to say, okay, Mr. Grace, we gave you a hundred twenty thousand dollars for this year. You haven't paid us the thirty that were due back, so why should we distribute the whole one hundred and twenty? Now we're spending a hundred and fifty instead of a hundred and twenty.
No, a hundred. It's about twenty to a hundred, that's.
Well, he made the agreement.
I'm saying, you don't collect the thirty thousand. Instead of expending ninety, now you're spending a hundred and twenty plus you're out the thirty. So, that's technically a hundred and fifty in the hole instead of being only ninety out.
But paying a hundred grand ain't paying Grace. That's paying our building. We own the building. He doesn't.
Yeah, but he's the one that put that contingent together that if you're not gonna fix the building, I'm not gonna pay the rent. He's the one that tied that together.
Well, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Have you ever rented?
Well, sure.
Okay, so think about this. Do you call your landlord saying?
I'm five years old. I'm five years old. I've never rented. Nonetheless, goddamn yes.
Well, maybe you've always owed something. I don't know. Some people are more silver spoon in the mouth. I've rented. I've also been a landlord. You don't call your landlord and ask him to fix your table. It's your table. So, you don't call him and ask him to flush your toilet. It's your toilet. By us.
Well, some landlords fix toilets depending on the lease or the rent.
How much do you pay for that? How much do you pay for that?
Depends on the rent, the lease or the rent.
My point is that, we have set up an agreement where we are having these overhead expenses covered by our insurance, by our payments, by our bill.
But I'm saying the county has owned that building for sixty years or fifty some years, and we paid, done repair and maintenance on it for sixty years.
And the last two tenants haven't been paying rent.
Okay, maybe some of them never did. Some of them maybe never did and the county disassembled.
I don't think that's true.
Well, I don't know. I don't know thirty years ago when we had Good Samaritan and then in the fifties or sixties and seventies. See, I don't know the lease or the arrangement. You might be right. I'm just saying, I agree with you here on Mr. Grace now, where we're at now, we need to say, here's where we're at. What's your deal? And he says he's wanting to come talk to us about it, and then we'll go from there, I guess. But I agree with you on this overall thing.
I don't want to see it succeed, but I also think there are other things we need to contemplate. If he has now shut down assisted living, what is his access to that?
Well, he should open, open back up or try to open it up and put something in there. That one young man, he was, who was his administrator was saying they were wanting to try to give it like as just rentals or something. Remember? He told us something.
It would just be, not assisted living, but independent living.
Independent living, yeah.
Where you have a share.
Well, at least they'd get some income out of it maybe. But no, I want, I agree with you on Mr. Grace and we're fixing this stuff up. I know that was his excuse back to tell us, well, that's over with now. Since we've got done here. And then, so anyway, that's where we're at. I don't know. I just wanna see us stay open too, and I think, and I know a lot of times you guys maybe don't like the nursing home because we're paying a hundred grand a year on it. Your Jim was saying maybe he doesn't like us to be in the nursing home business at all.
That's my stance. It's not that I don't like the nursing home.
But we've been in it sixty years. We've owned the facility sixty years. We have, so now stop and change it, quit now, close it down because we don't wanna pay a hundred grand a year in repairs and maintenance.
Oh, we are talking, closing it down.
Well.
But, but.
We gotta have somebody run it.
But if it won't make itself a viable operation, then it ought to close.
It is a viable operation now.
We cannot subsidize.
We haven't subsidized it except for repairs and maintenance.
That's a lot.
Repairs and maintenance. So, you're gonna give up twenty-five jobs, thirty residents, two million dollar cash flow for a hundred grand.
Okay, but it's all relative.
And you're gonna, okay, I want, now, I want you guys to talk to the citizens of this county when you say let's close some bitch down because we don't wanna pay this a hundred thousand dollars, uh, uh, and we've had a seven million dollar budget, so let's don't pay a hundred grand for repairs.
Okay, it's the same.
Well, that's what's gonna come down to. This is gonna come down to that.
It is the same concept as the hospital as well.
Well, we pay them five hundred thousand.
For seven million dollars, so it's relative.
And they get, and they get. And they, and they, and they lost, and they lost a million and point four.
Well, we covered it, is what happened.
Well, but they, well, this year they had eight hundred, eight four five billion in the grant. I'm just saying, so, I, well, I like the hospital too. It's just the nursing home, for the benefit of Proviso County, is cheap a hundred thousand dollars. We just spent eighty thousand dollars on a cliff out at the lake that's gonna benefit two houses. That's a, it used to be a closed road. That was a driveway. It's gonna benefit two families. You just spent eighty thousand on that and don't give a, I mean, that's okay. But, but, but we wanna benefit fifty people in Lincoln, in the city of Lincoln, and all these businesses, the, the, the hospital does this for the nursing home. The, all these other businesses do, street plumbing, but for a hundred grand, well, we can't tolerate that. That's just, this is.
How much money are you gonna put in the budget for the nursing home?
Hundred grand a year of repairs and maintenance. Yes.
If that isn't enough, you gonna go to two hundred thousand?
That's enough.
Half a million? How much are you gonna put in?
We just fixed it up. They spent, you guys spent what, three, four hundred thousand?
Four hundred.
Yeah, to fix it up last year. We just put, redid the roof. It's brand new. Now they just got it done.
Oh, plus our insurance claim on the roof, yeah.
And now they, we just filled in eight thousand dollars on doors. So, really, it's fixed up. Now, I know it's older facility, especially the east side. But I think for the, what it gives us, for how valuable it is to our community for what it costs is well worth it.
Well, how much are you gonna spend on it though?
Well, how much more do you think we need to spend? I don't think we have to spend that more repairs and maintenance.
Okay, but I, may I interject?
Yeah.
Just a different thought. We're talking about supporting a building to which only so many people have access, okay? So, if your grandma's in there and my grandma's not, I'm still paying for part of your grandma's care, no matter how you look at it. Same thing with Medicaid, Medicare. I understand.
All of our services. We spent seven million dollars in services. You can say, I don't get, half these people in Lincoln say, I never go on those gravel roads. We spent two and a half billion dollars on them gravel roads. I never go out there, so why the hell should I have to pay for that?
But we're also not running the gravel roads as a business.
We're not running this as a business. This is a bill, building we're renting out.
They are, that is a business. The person that's running it is.
But we've had it for fifty years. So, just say that wasn't now, we're tired of it?
No, I'm saying.
The county's owned it, rented it for fifty years.
But it's a proven fact that the more subsidies and the more compensation that you can get, the less incentive you have to run your business efficiently and without a, an, an increasing exponential support system from government income. I mean, that's a.
I'm telling you though, in this case, we spend this hundred grand, or seventy thousand this year. We budget a hundred thousand next year. We're getting more than a hundred thousand in, in benefit out of that. When you count all the poise it's giving us, the benefit that we have in here of, of all these businesses around here benefiting from it. The, the, uh, pharmacy downtown. Look at the people, the hospital needs patients. Where do they get them? Right now, who's elderly? Who goes up to swing bed for a thousand bucks a day? People from Lincoln Park Manor, 'cause they're eighty and ninety years old. They're the ones that have the flu and colds and pneumonia. There are four or five of them up there making four or five thousand bucks a day for the hospital. You get rid of that, that, they're gone. The hospital loses all that income.
But ultimately, what it costs.
I mean, all that stuff helps. I know what you're saying. You don't wanna subsidize something here for a hundred grand, but I'm saying it benefits us more than a hundred grand. That's all I'm saying.
But I think what Mr. Gableman said earlier is, if it's viable, someone can do it on their own. I mean, if you get, if you get a proper tax exemption for being a non-profit.
If Grace buys it, maybe Grace will buy it from us and run it. That's fine with me. No, I just like to see it stay open. That's all. Or if somebody else buys it.
He, he brought that up before. It has to be bid.
Right, yeah, it would have to be bid. We just gotta sell it to Mr. Grace.
Well, there's, there's a lot of legal things to do, but that's beside the point. So, right now.
But I just don't.
We're, we're not paying a hundred thousand. We're paying a hundred and thirty thousand.
A hundred and twenty we budgeted and we spent seventy. We spent seventy. Just 'cause you budget a hundred and twenties.
We anticipated getting thirty thousand in rent back, and now that's a hundred and a half.
Well, that's, 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 that's because a guy ain't complying with his lease, yes.
So, you're gonna throw him out? If you throw him out, you close the nursing home. What are you gonna do?
Well, we, we tried to do that here a few months ago.
Well, we haven't gotten any answers from the county attorney about anything. I remember I made a motion that I wanted the verification for the letter that she sent us about why this particular room wasn't on the map, but I haven't seen that. We asked her to file, we asked her to get us bids so that we could get a map drawn up. We asked her to file for the eviction and all she did was call Mr. Hay and we got a bill for that too. I mean, we're either gonna have to hire counsel if we wanna go to that route, or we say, hey, we'll take care of it ourselves. I'm not spending a hundred and twenty thousand now. You owe me thirty. You only get ninety. And whatever last year comes out to you, we'll take that out of the next year's too. And then we'll see if you wanna move.
Let's write him a letter and see if he'll agree to what he's already agreed to do.
To do the, he said to you that he would, he would check.
Well, he, he wants to come here, visit with us here a few weeks. We can wait for them.
Well, that's about fine.
I think he could come prepared then. We'll just send.
Okay, go ahead.
Unless you wanna, do you wanna vote on it?
Do I?
To send him a request to make good on his confirmation that he would pay the back due rent upon our portion of putting the money into fixing the doors.
I think we just send that. That's a separate issue from him coming in and talking about the purpose.
About the future of the building, yeah. Okay, I'm with you on that. Can I get the email here? Did you catch that, Dawn?
No, we're through with your.
I'm going to send an email requesting payment of back rent. Is that good enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, next.
Put that caveat in there in accordance with your discussion with Mister Gableman, where you agreed that once we started fixing the doors, you pay it.
Sure. Because we've now approved an additional door as well outside of. Computer, I don't know how to copy and paste on this thing. It's weird. Okay, let's move on to correspondence from Mister, uh, Philbrook. I do not understand it. I'm just gonna be honest. I don't know what to make out of that. Could you just read that from, I, I don't know what he's getting at. There wasn't really a request in there. There were two dollar amounts that were different according to some kind of stipulation and.
I have a, a issue or a comment on our transportation thing too. A lady went to Salina and she had a three thirty appointment down there. And that was going to make her get back here after five o'clock. And it wasn't Jerry that did it. It was the other guy and he did it and he may have fictionalized his logbook a little bit, but that, that obviates the issue that sometimes a patient will have to go down there later and are we have, or can we make some concession for a driver working past five o'clock? I don't think we have that flexibility right now.
Anyway.
Yeah, but even so, uh, he was concerned if he got back past five o'clock, he'd trigger a whole bunch of bad things.
I truly believe that's only because the current employee that's full time never wants to work past five o'clock because it would occur to me that we could make our own hours, but I think we did have to report to the state what those hours would be.
Did you say? I don't know what that is.
I also have a comment about the transportation board. I know that there's a, uh, several people in the high rise who are totally and completely unaware that they can contract with the transportation guy or OCCK to do these appointments. My, my dad gets phone calls from a friend who lives there saying, hey, can you take me somewhere? And, um, a, a, a classmate's father lives in there and she took an entire day off of work so that she could haul her dad, uh, to a, a funeral and back. I think that there should be a little more outreach from, from the bus board to actually go into places where they know people are going to need their help.
Yes.
I see an ad in Lincoln paper though for the.
The ad is meaningless. The ad is meaningless. It doesn't explain, it does not explain, hey, we'll take anybody.
I think somebody should go around to these elderly more and say, hey, you know, uh, we can haul you to your appointments if you need to. You're right.
Well, and a question. There should be outreach.
A question that came several years ago to me was why can't they do evening events? Like if, if a group of people, especially elderly people, that if they don't like to drive at night, but things happen at night.
What if they want to go to Vespren play bingo?
Exactly. Exactly. It's, it's already being paid for. Can't we somehow accommodate the hours?
Night schedule.
Changing some hour availability.
Well, I.
And, and, and what about, um, a bus service that goes to and from Sylvan Grove Park to pick up kids to take into Lincoln to swim in the swimming pool? And say every Monday at one o'clock, we'll pick you up and we'll return you home by four.
Yeah.
Cause you only have.
That's the only way to really get, I mean, you're, you're, then you're helping the pool and you're using the service and those people are supposed to pay for it anyway. So they can pay their three bucks or two bucks in the county or whatever it is.
Make a call now for himself and say, come get us.
But she's talking about getting a com- an organized group.
A regular schedule.
So that you know you're paying for it. If four kids are paying two bucks a piece, that's eight dollars each way. That at least pays the mileage.
Well, do we have the flexibility though to have the bus drivers work forty hours a week without specifying the exact hours? Because we do have a requirement for somebody to schedule that a day in advance and that would allow him to schedule his hours.
Is he scheduled now eight hours a day, four days a week, five days a week?
Yes.
Let's see that as an evenings or nothing.
No, no evenings, no weekends, which kind of defeats the purpose of people being able to get out when they can't get out.
Well, like you say, if you have evening events, they may want to go up like bingo, like you said, but.
Well, and then we end up paying for one person to go clear to Salina, which takes up a whole day of one person's.
I know. There's, you're never gonna have a perfect scenario with that deal. We're gonna have these exceptions all the time.
Medical thing, OCCK is actually the better choice because they will send a specific driver and they will come and get you and they will stay with you.
And the handicap accessible.
If, if it's a medical appointment, OCCK is actually the best.
Now, we, we have competition then between OCCK and our Lincoln bus, huh?
Well, there shouldn't be competition.
But there is. They both can do the same job, right?
Well, OCCK is specifically for medical needs though. You can't just call and say, I wanna make a shopping trip to Salina. Here, you can be seventy years old, have your, have no license or blind in one eye or something and say, I need to make a shopping trip to Salina and we'll take you.
No.
It, it's not necessarily because you have a medical appointment.
That's it.
Will OCC take you?
But you don't even have to have a disability. I'm just using that as an example. You can be disabled and still use it.
Or anything, I mean, I'm a lady with a blind eye.
Exactly.
Shots in the eyes.
Not taking a Walmart.
OCCK is.
But my point is you're, you're kinda wasting.
Well, see, you know why a lot of people don't know that. And we haven't, we shouldn't need more.
Literally.
Or, or just more hesitation to public and all this stuff. Cause like you told me now, OCCK for medical, I didn't know that versus.
Just a regular trip for something.
See, I, I didn't know that. So I don't know. I want people to know.
And a child can ride the bus. You know, I know there are some kids in Sylvan that take dance in Lincoln. They could literally catch the bus to come to dance, but again, that's after hours. So there's a.
They don't need a parents' permission slip and all this stuff?
You pay, I mean.
It's, you don't even have to.
But you gotta.
No, but it, you're supposed to pay. It's two dollars.
And, and the age.
Ain't it almost, I'm surprised it's legal for, uh, some kid just to hop on a bus at seven, eight years old and take off with somebody.
How would it be illegal though?
Well, and he's employed by the county. It's not like we don't know who's.
I know. It's just because of liability and the kids are minor and all that, all those rules.
A place like Lincoln needs to cultivate that culture and embrace it because that's what we are losing across the nation.
Well, I'm not against it. I'm just saying people are so worried about children being abused and all this. But I know you, what, just like a school bus driver, they're all certified and they pick up little Johnny and take him to school and back. But I guess the OCCK bus or the.
OCCK won't do that.
But, but our Lincoln bus would pick up children to do that?
Maybe I'll talk to county attorney, get her opinion.
Anyway, uh.
What is the name of that company? DH Pace?
DH.
Finishing this.
Yeah, DH Pace.
P A C E.
Yeah, weird name, isn't it?
You don't lose any witness to your age. I, it's.
It's DH Pace.
P A C E, okay.
I don't know. That's a weird name, isn't it? Yeah, there we. Fixing the divorce. Are we all done here or what?
No. Um, speaking of the bus board, we have more. This is a resignation from Miss Anna Marie Wolting. And, um, she will be attending, she said for December, so through the end of the year. I would like to make the suggestion because this particular person is resigning and has been the chair, that we go ahead and deactivate the bus board.
Didn't we do that?
No, we talked about it. We talked about it, but we said we would talk to the bus board. I, I think that this is an appropriate timing because the person who's been heading it up and taking on responsibility, even though they don't do their own bookkeeping, is not gonna be there. And I really feel like if those other people want to serve on boards, we have other boards that are more critical to the financial state of affairs that they could be a part of.
Yeah.
So Jerry will then listen to all those functions.
And he will report to the commission, which he does.
Report to us, anyway. Now, the other, we may need to notify the other people who are on that board. I think Mrs., Mrs. Florence is, isn't she?
And we still have next month and December, so, right? They're done this month. So I think when we talked about it, it was beginning of the month and they had already had their meeting and we talked about it that day. So.
We need a motion to.
Yes, yes. Um, what would the proper term?
Do we think?
I read the motion to phase out the bus board at the end of this year.
I guess, I wonder if the community's okay with that. I guess so.
Well, the, the, the community will not lose.
I'll second.
No, the community will not lose any functions. It'll still be.
That's true. I don't know who would care. No, I, I agree. I don't know.
Explanation.
I don't know who would care.
The bus board has been collaborating with the bus driver, but they don't do their own finances.
Yeah.
So in other words, we still have all the financial responsibility at the county, but then we aren't even really regularly meeting with the bus driver and so, and the bus board isn't reporting to the commission and they have no financial independence anyhow. So I feel like if those people want positions where they can have some influence on the financial status, they need to get on the other boards. Cause we have openings, like it took you how long to find a hospital board opening?
Oh, okay. That's ten, that's ten people probably.
Yeah. So I'd rather see, if those bus board people wanna be active, let's see them in roles that we need filled rather than the bus board that really serves very little purpose.
Right, I agree.
Patch winding down too.
And remember, they used to, they used to be. Dawn, how did they do that? When they changed, when we changed him, he wasn't a county employee, right? So he was their employee technically for a little while. So now they don't even serve that function as being an employer. I think it's just a better.
Yeah, we get, we get money though from somebody to help fund him.
But Jerry does that paperwork.
He does all that. Though we just have to, uh.
We sign it. We sign it.
Sign it, approve it.
I see as far as the public is concerned, there's no, absolutely no change.
It'll be no downfall of doing this, in other words. Well, it's fine with me. We gonna vote on it?
Yes, I call for a vote. Those in favor, vote aye. Aye. Motion carries.
There you still.
I'm just sending this email. It's hard for me to be on one subject we've already covered. Um, do you wanna appoint me as the K work representative for the meeting that we have next week or?
Yeah, might as well. You're.
Two weeks.
You're the, uh.
K camp.
You're the boss and all the other ones, or is that it, right?
Yes.
You're the, uh.
I need an official, uh, representative. It's just the voting delegate.
We need a motion.
Yes.
That's all I need.
Okay, I'll, I'll get you some of the next.
What should, what, US K camp representative?
K work.
I make a motion. I make a motion to appoint Alexis Lu, uh, K work delegate at the, uh, annual, uh, K, K Association of Counties meeting convention coming up in Wichita.
Twelve through fourteen November.
Yeah.
Second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint me as the voting delegate for K work. Any questions? Those in favor, vote aye. Vote aye. Motion carries. You can get that to Dawn. And, um.
Now, also, I'd see Dawn, that we paid on the, uh, the council's payable for our entry fees to the, uh, to go to that, right?
Yes.
Now, is that for, I didn't know if I was gonna go down until Tuesday night, but I guess you're paid, we're paid to go Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Anyway, you all.
For the meeting, yeah. They didn't have a separate.
They didn't?
They didn't have a separate breakdown.
Cheaper if you just pick a day and, but then you get a package. It's better than paying for each day.
But now you've only got reserved hotels for what, Tuesday and?
Tuesday night and Wednesday night.
For about all three of us or?
I'm going down Monday night.
You're going down, you're going down three, you'll stay three nights.
Monday night.
That's fine. Tuesday night, Wednesday night. So I'll go down Tuesday in the morning and go to the convention and then say Tuesday night, Wednesday night. And I guess Jim, I don't know what he's doing.
The, the pre-conference thing didn't, it didn't have a separate fee for it, so it's just included if you wanna go where you know.
And you got it. You'll, you'll give us information on all hotels and all that stuff. And credit cards and stuff, uh, do we?
I've set up to do direct bill, but what I'd like to do is just, I would send
Get a credit card to one of us.
One of you guys with the credit card and if any of you guys have problems with the direct bill and you just hand it off to the other one at some point in time.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, and I could even pay my own credit card if I have to and then build a county.
But the problem is you get tax exempt for the county. I mean, it's only a couple bucks, but that's something that I ran into. They said, well, do you have your?
Well, I would like to prefer to use a county credit card, yeah.
Yeah. I, I said it all.
I don't wanna make a half line.
Send you a copy of the credit card, but sometimes they actually have to physically have it. But they have all told me that you do not have to have it, that they have set it up, but that doesn't always need.
Right. It'd be good to have it there because when you check out.
Give them our, you can give the credit card number of the phone.
Give him, give him the credit card.
Yeah, I'll take it. You bet. Then I'll go, we'll go downtown to Old Town and.
I'll make it out to have all of that here on Monday, okay?
Thank, well, next week. I know, you're, you're not busy at all. You only got election coming up and payroll this week and.
Okay. I have some bills. Street plumbing, uh, a hundred and thirty dollars for labor. Technician cleaned the freezer condenser coil. The refrigerator was also dirty. The technician cleaned it the best he could with it being in the kitchen and not wanting to stir up a lot of dust. Something we could tell them that they're, they have a cleaning person at the nursing home. They should clean the coils.
She, you have to sign this or we just.
She, she initials them and we agreed to it and I, that's fine though.
I know, but that maybe should go with a note there.
Well, maybe, now some of that stuff Jonathan, I don't know if he can do or not.
You take a vacuum or like a shot vac and you suck out everything under your freezer and you're.
Well, maybe so.
Well, I, I just ran a restaurant. I can tell you, you have to. Um, gasket drain thread, uh, did it does supplies forty-two ninety-eight from Midwest Commercial Laundry. So that's for the, uh, washer and dryer, which we do. Um, precision electric bulbs for the skylights, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Wait, change, change over for the skylights. Ballast no longer available. Any objections?
No.
Um, labor and vacuum breaker assembly, coupling flange? Flan, flan for flange maybe. Technician took the flush valve apart and ordered a new one. Technician replaced part for flush valve on the hopper. Two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Okay.
Okay.
Good for me.
I think we never did get that appendix A. We had the suggestions from Mister Grace and that would be one of the things I would say for a hundred and thirty dollars.
We need to get specific on that stuff, just like all these bills we got saying that's your, that's your, right, any maintenance is, for any, uh, really maintenance should almost be a lot of his stuff.
Any recurring, recurring maintenance should not be our responsibility.
Right.
And, but here's the thing, the argument is we own the refrigerator. We own this.
We own the light, that light. We own that, I know.
Replacing the light fixtures, one thing, but having someone come in and flush the toilet and snake it like they've done is part of the operational expense of the business.
Well, that we need to, really, I'll get detailed on that appendix A.
Okay, so then we have some more. October eighteenth dated to Mister and Mrs. Schwartzfeger from the Lincoln High School. We are pleased to inform you that seven hundred South Fourth Street, Lincoln High School will be considered by the Kansas Historic Site for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places and the State Register for Kansas.
How does that affect us?
What do they wanna do?
Well, we had approved the overall county plan. They did downs, they did downtown Main Street, they did the school, they did downtown Main Street.
Historical stuff.
Denmark, I think. There were a couple, there were a variety of places.
So these are just letters to inform us that they.
We are pleased to inform you, this is to Kelly Larson for Prairie State Properties, that the CR Building will be considered by the Kansas Historic Sites Board of Review and for nomination of the Kansas, of the Register of Historic Kansas Places.
Does that help us then get grant money or and stuff to fix this stuff up?
One thirteen West Lincoln Avenue. Is it, it's, yes, once you're on the registry, then you can apply for those certain grants that only you can get if you're on the registry.
Historical ones.
Yeah, it's a heritage, something heritage grant, Heritage Fund. Thank you. Okay, so, so those two properties specifically, it looks like that's it for that. And I did think that they approved downtown Sylvan and downtown Lincoln. I'm pretty sure I heard that. I didn't see a letter for that. Do you know anything about that?
I think from the Kansas Registry, but I don't have a national.
Oh, okay.
I don't think anything in Sylvan is on the national registry.
Agricultural Foreign Investment Disclosure Act of nineteen seventy-eight, the referenced act, which became effective on February second seventy-nine, requires any foreign person who acquires or transfers any interest other than a security interest in agricultural, agricultural land to submit a completed FSA one fifty-three to the Secretary of Agriculture no later than ninety days after the date of acquisition or transfer. Or if they hold any interest other than a security interest in agricultural land on February first nineteen seventy-nine, they should have submitted a report to the Secretary not later than August first of nineteen seventy-nine. I think this is basically just a brochure that we're supposed to put up so that if any local foreign investors need to file a disclosure that they can. Am I right, Dawn? Anything you know about that? Foreign investors who hold agricultural land. So, we'll put that out in the hallway. Do you wanna read that? There's nothing.
Not really.
In addition to kinda what I just said.
No, I don't wanna.
Get a handle on foreign ownership of foreign land.
Yeah, and investment, so back to Mr. Philbrick's report, I don't know what this means.
What, does he, does he want us to do some action?
There's some sort of separate, well, it says funding request, Lincoln County General Transportation, um, requested four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
That's for twenty twenty-one. He's giving you the twenty twenty-one budget still.
But, but we. So then really we need to ask him, what, are there any details of ours specified in our grant res- receipt of money? And then he gave us the report, so I'll, that's something I should post too. Any further correspondence? Let me check our email too.
I had a question about, have we ever, we sold our, or are we gonna have Mr. Spear sell our. Emergency management pickup, did we ever at an auction, have we ever heard anything about that?
It's still sitting down there, I know they've taken the equipment off, or they were working.
Did we get a bill for that?
So it hasn't went to any auction yet or nothing.
No, I see it's still sitting down there.
Someone was asking us, maybe we should sell that on Purple Wave. Uh, like we do, the highway department sells different stuff on Purple Wave instead of auctioning off, maybe we would do better, because if we had Mr. Spear. Take it to an auction, I'm sure he'll have a commission, and maybe, I don't know, maybe it isn't worth it either way, I don't know. I just heard that recommendation.
I guess I just knew, when I brought that up, I knew that the, the vehicle had been sitting down there, we had no report as to where it was or why. I actually started calling and I asked Dawn, I said, is the emergency management like down at the EMS shed, or why is it down there? And she said, no, it's probably just getting worked on, but it was weeks and weeks, so when I called, he just suggested, hey, for, I think he said for two hundred dollars, he would remove everything. Did we get that stuff from that vehicle?
I know David came up one day to ask where we wanted it, but I don't, I was busy helping somebody else and I never, ever, so I'm assuming he had told him.
Well, I could go down and ask, talk to Jared Spear about what's going on with that truck and just find out, I'll do that if you guys don't care.
Sure.
Just to find out the status of it, what's going, and also, uh, are, have we heard any applications for our, that position? Emergency manager slash EMS slash, I talked to one person that you talked to before Alexis about that.
No interest?
No, he seemed interested, but he's been busy traveling around.
Yeah.
So, uh, I said, well, we're interested, are you still interested in that? And he said, yes, I said, well, please, uh, submit your app, that's all I said, so I don't know. Uh, where we're on with that.
I've had a couple of other people call and ask about it, but I think that they're willing to take jobs, and they're not an A E M T.
Now, by state, Scottish.
They may even be willing to be a part-time, but they're not an A E M T, so, I mean, you guys pretty much designed this job to fit.
An A E M T.
A particular person.
Well, aren't we required by state to fill that position legally, uh?
Yeah, that's what that guy said.
Well, that guy is.
We could show due diligence, that's all you have to do, show due diligence.
We could say we're making an attempt.
Well, we have an add-out, and the reason why we particularly designed that is because we wouldn't have cut that budget to twenty hours a week. So, we already have part-time employees at the EMS shed figuring they could. Get a full-time job out of a part-time job.
I'm not against that, I'm just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get in trouble with the state of Kansas that we're not complying with. If we had some incident where, uh, you know, and we didn't have an emergency manager here and, uh, something happened. They'd say, how come you don't have an emergency manager? Would that leave us open for some liability, liability problem, that's my only concern too.
And I went, I, I hear what you're saying, and I went to the L A P C meeting, which they've been having on Mondays, so I didn't go to the earlier ones in the year, because we were at the push meeting. But I went, because we canceled our Monday meeting. They had a workshop, and that guy that had called on the phone was, uh, conducting a workshop, which. They handed out this core capabilities list, um, and it just has a bunch of headings and like two sentence definitions of things that. You can try to assess about your county's abilities to be in an emergency management mode. And so basically what the person confirmed, who he is called like a regional manager, because there are seven in the state, and it's the one that was on the phone. Um, basically, it's the planning and the coordinating ahead of time, and it's the follow-up with the paperwork after the event. There's no real dispatch duty or onsite.
Coordinator or nothing, huh?
Yeah, a lot of it is, like, well, Donna gave an example, because she's the secretary of the board, and she said the example is, if we had an Ebola outbreak here. I contact that person, because that person has immediate access to make up an official request that we need six hundred Ebola vaccinations, I don't even know if they exist, I'm just making something up, but. This was kind of where she went with her.
That would be the contact, the emergency manager, with contact of the federal or state authorities, whatever that would be, you know?
Right, so the idea that this person is in need in the middle of an emergency is not exactly, there's, and I asked this specifically, because.
I thought that too.
Not only is the regional person here, but the Ottawa County person, who, she does emergency management, but she also is in charge of their nine-one-one fund. And all their nine-one-one signs for all their road signs and such, and so I said, so do you coordinate? With the fire department, the sheriff's department, the EMS, you know, when something in particular is going on? Well, yes, she does, but it's only in the event that they call her requesting her to be part of this supply chain. Oh, okay, so the state can get me something, because it's through emergency management, so it's the desk work, it's not the actual, there's no.
Phone, broken telephone.
The point of contact thing, huh?
Yeah, it's, there's no, um.
Well, a lot of the public thinks that they're the.
I know.
Public, the public in Lincoln County is thinking, because when we lost David, they're saying, what do we do if a tornado hits and? Who's gonna tell the cops and the EMS and the, and all this what to do, they think that that person goes there, tells them, will you do this and you do that?
That they're the dispatcher, and that's what I was trying to get, make clear in the meeting, I mean, it was very clear in that meeting that.
I don't think the general public knows that.
Right, exactly.
I didn't really know that.
It's, and it's not a paid storm spotter.
It's not, an incident commander.
Okay.
Right.
Well, you know, we should make that more public, I don't know if we should make it, but I'm just saying the public doesn't know that that.
Well, I feel like I got very, on very good authority from the table, in front of Mr. McKay, in front of Mrs. Reiner, and. I asked those questions specifically and was given the answer, so that it was very clear, this is not a position where you call that person because the tornado happened. They're not coordinating the fire department to get there, and who from the dispatchers at the sheriff sends this person versus that scene and that scene, it's none of that. It's all preparatory information to be able to get supplies if you run out of local supplies.
And work with FEMA and stuff like that, right?
And get reimbursements if you're eligible.
If you're eligible and work.
It's not, it has nothing to do with corresponding logistics for the actual incident.
Okay.
So do they create the plan, does the emergency manager create the plan?
Yes.
Or are those plans existing out there and that?
No, he creates the county plan, and that's integrated by the district manager, one of the seven, into the district plan, and that has to be coordinated. The county plan, uh, has to include such things as, if you have a tornado, when that is reported, who do you call? And he has a list of people who to call by name, by job, but he doesn't, he does not an incident commander, he doesn't go out on the ground and say. Mike, you take your deputies over here and, and Dennis, get your fire department west wall up here, we need you right now, that's not his job, he's a planner.
Well, we need to address this, uh, one way or another, right, put somebody in this position.
There is a person that I think would be good. But she doesn't have the confidence in herself, I guess, um, I know some other people have talked to her as well. Um, I, I know there's another gentleman that has asked, now he's not an E M T about it, and I, I don't know if he's looking for. A full-time job or a part-time job, there's another person from out of state that's working on moving back here, they own property here. Um, they're not here yet, but that's kinda what he does in the, where he's at, and he'd, you know, be interested in, and I thought he sounded like part-time.
Do you know what I'm kinda feeling? I'm kinda feeling like that interview we conducted, where the person was emergency manager qualified already and did H R on the city scale. Would really be a great fit for what we're lacking right now.
Do you want me to pull up this application?
Well, that guy from Missouri. But he, but he was wanting a lot of money.
But he would also be doing H R.
Yeah, but he was gonna do, we were gonna have that half, halftime EMS, halftime here, and we weren't gonna pay eighty grand a year, and that's what he was had, wasn't it?
I'd have to see the numbers again, if that sounds high, but.
Well, I, maybe, I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't do this, I'm just saying, when we interviewed him.
I just, I, I think there are other alternatives, since you're not getting any applications.
Yeah, yes, I, I put that out there thinking, hmm, we have some part-time people who are qualified to do this, and it, it congeals, because.
And we need to. No, that's okay.
I already asked Derek as the EMS director, I said, can this person do some of their work time if they're on a twenty-four hour shift at the shed? Well, sure, if they're, if they're not, they're watching TV or doing whatever, so there was a lot of overlap time that we figured could happen between both jobs. And then they're available when they're here, let's say in the courthouse, doing paperwork, they're available to go out as the backup call.
Yeah, they're still on call lines at EMS, yeah, no, I liked that, I liked that idea of having that person, like we said, if we should find one to fit that bill.
Do you think we just need to drop it to E M T, you're saying E N T A is too rigid, or just take the?
I, I don't know, I mean, do you want him to be able to do that, or do you wanna just try to take it off and see what you do?
We could just, we could just make it be a part, part-time EM, EM emergency manager, part-time emergency manager.
And see if you get any applicants?
Twenty, twenty hourly emergency manager? Would that comply with the state?
The problem is that pretty, oh, yeah, yeah, you don't have, there's no, you, in other counties, they have their highway department director. Just get qualified, so they have all the credentials, and then, yeah, they end up being responsible for the paperwork, but that doesn't happen all the time, the updates to the plan. Applying for these grants, it's kind of like a repetitive process, you know what I mean, it's not like inventing the wheel every time.
Well, we could contact that guy in Missouri, I'm not against it, I just think he was wanting, he was wanting a lot of money, and I saw, I mean.
But we were also asking, yeah.
But, but I'm just saying, we could ask, but he gonna, he may have come down a money, and then we won't be paying him that, so it'd probably be a waste of time doing that, but we could just.
But if someone hasn't, if someone like that hasn't found a job, then.
Well, we could still contact, I'm not against contacting, we could try, it doesn't bother me, then also, maybe just a part-time emergency manager job, if you thought maybe some people may be interested.
I mean, I have a resume up there, and I think I have an application too, but it's not for an A E M T.
We could read.
It's just for the emergency manager.
We could take, well, we could change a job description, take down our current job description, put up a new one saying part-time emergency.
Well, if I remember correctly, the budget that we approved for next year is for twenty hours a week, right?
Well, no, probably half benefits, huh, when you do that, you get half benefits or?
Well, with the state of Kansas, you had to offer them at a higher rate, I don't know, since we're going out on our own, what the contract's gonna say, I meant to ask.
Oh, like for health, health insurance.
We may not have to offer anything.
Part-time health insurance, because we're going on our own now with Rhonda, we pick, huh?
Originally, when we were on our own before, they had to, in order to qualify for health insurance, they had to work an average of thirty-seven hours a week. Now, I think it all depends on what the contract says and what we agree to, does that make sense?
I see, okay. Yeah, yeah.
So, but when we went to the state, then they were like, well, anybody that works twenty hours or more, you have to offer insurance, so that's why we always limited everybody to twenty hours.
That was a state requirement, that was a state requirement, not so much.
Okay, so now it could be up to forty, you don't have to have the full-time benefit package.
Correct.
But what we budgeted for, I know, was twenty, so if we advertise the job, it needs to just be for twenty hours a week.
Maybe we should, well, I wonder if we should, I could contact the one individual we.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, yeah.
If we are gonna just go the part-time route, why don't we just contract someone, then they're available when you need them. I mean, there's no reason to have someone sit in an office for fifteen hours if there was really only five hours of work to do that week, if we just set a dollar amount per month and said, you must be available. Then you're contracting with a private person, you ten-ninety-nine them, and you don't have to do the whole office hours, I mean.
How would you give the job description, where, how would you have their job?
They have to perform X, Y, and Z functions, they have to maintain the plan, they have to go to the meetings and get their education, and they have to be on call. In the event that they have to do the.
When emergencies declared.
And we contacted them so much money, a year, a year.
A year or a month.
Or monthly, monthly, or whatever, and then no benefits, just a contract.
Right.
We could do that.
I'm all about contracting, I mean.
You could also call Rhonda and see if maybe we want some benefits, I don't know.
Well, one thing that we'd have to double check is this, the supply part of it and fairly recent standards, because. They say that you're an employee if you're providing everything it takes to do the job, that's kinda like why we were talking about Rhonda's, it, even though she's by a contract, she's still an employee. Because we give her everything it takes to do her job, so, um.
Rhonda, right, you're done, yeah.
Yeah, now that's what we'd wanna talk about, and whether part-time makes a difference or a limited amount, and what we're willing to provide for equipment, I think.
Kind of a go-co situation, huh?
Well, we provide the equipment, okay, but let's just talk about the vehicle, we don't provide a vehicle, but we purchase. The add-ons that they may need for their vehicle, or they purchase them and we reimburse them for it, I mean, I think there are ways to. I don't see how them needing to come and use the equipment that's in the building is us providing everything for them, if they can provide their own means of transportation, and, and they buy some. Stuff that they need and we reimburse them for it, that's not necessarily them using ours, you know what I mean, I think there are ways.
Would they even need a, uh, vehicle with lights and all that flashing?
They need some kind of caution lights to be able to turn on the.
As part of their job description.
But I think that depends on what it is that you're wanting them to do, you know, I can tell you the previous one, like Will Vinaida, he would go out, but he would not be down in the scene, he'd be off to the side. In case they needed something, like a bigger, let's talk about like an interstate wreck, where it involves a semi truck or whatever.
There's a chemical spill, they have to call.
On-site resources are, are, are checked, and, you know, law enforcement's trying to do their thing, but maybe they don't have the, the manpower to set up. Uh, vehicle control or, or access control, and so, and highway patrol's not there, yeah, so, so they.
Or you call the other county.
Figure out their resources, it's kinda what he used to do, now he would go, and I think he had a suburban that had caution lights all over, they didn't have the red.
Well, yeah, they didn't have all the, all the radio.
Don't get me wrong, it's great if they do go and want to be involved within their own capacity, but I think, like you said, the general misconception is that they are the central.
Point of contact for an emergency, I thought they were, I thought they were.
They're not until they're requested to be so, so like those big fires over in, in the western part of the county?
Yeah.
And in, in Russell County and Elsworth County, those, I think they did appoint their emergency managers as the incident commander, because. They were being taxed so much.
They wanted a point of contact.
But that's why they're available, and you hope to goodness that those things only happen once a year, if they happen at all.
Well, they never happen, but, but, but they do in the real world, of course, that's why we have them.
As physical location.
And you know, we have this stuff to take out David's truck, we have the lights and.
But he can do that here, because somebody's gonna call him, and he gets on the radio phone, so he can be anywhere.
Yeah, pick up, well, you can put this stuff in your vehicle, it's got the own, but you could use it, I'm not against contacting.
Of course, we didn't have trucks, uh.
Well, would you advertise that you're the same job in a contract position?
The number of trucks that blow, so I think some of the risk squad.
You'd, you'd have to come, you'd have to come up with a dollar amount per month, and we'd say, this is how much you make, and.
This is a contract position and not, not a county employee job, huh?
Right, and, you know, we also need to get a little bit more ahead of the game and think, who is that person that fills in? Because I know David was a full-time employee, but he was away for days on trips, there's nobody to do that here when that person's gone.
As a backup, backup.
Right, so if we have someone contracted, yes, they're supposed to be available, but they let us know ahead of time, hey, I'm not available this particular week or whatever, because I'm out of town. We need to have some integration with our highway department or our EMS department, that they also are affiliated.
Would be a backup, right, true.
Yeah, and I know they have some of that, because some of them have training, but there was really no solidification on that.
We also could coordinate with surrounding counties, and we could cover their absence, they can cover ours.
Well, I was hoping for that, but there are some regional people that are paid by the state that are paid to advise against that.
Well, like I.
You mean our backup couldn't be over there?
They absolutely could, there are other counties, three counties out west share a guy.
Well, Russell Albert did.
And they're huge, population-wise.
Well, that contractor idea.
I do too.
That's fine, if that's legal, now, like.
Dawn, would you mind making a few phone calls about that?
Do you, do you? I don't, but it will, it won't have anything.
After election.
Well, yeah, some, but some jobs have to be county employees, don't they, or can they just be contracted?
Let's leave it as is.
Yeah, of course, we're showing due diligence for spending right now, so if they come down, we can say, oh, we're acting with.
I just know the federal government, I, I'll use a more simpler term, so I used to clean at the A S C S office a very, very long time ago. I was on contract, they'd pay me contractual fee, they supplied all the supplies, I think two janitors after. I think two janitors after I left, they are now employees of the federal government because they supply all of the supplies to do the job. And so the, the federal government passed a ruling that when you're supplying all of the supplies to do the job, then they're no longer contractual, they're truly employees. But I think that's, it's worth looking into to just see.
We want the government-owned, uh.
Even if we don't contract Alexis, we could hire some at hard time.
Well, I'm not opposed, I'm just saying, there are ways that we can minimize the footprint of the government expense and actually engage with the private sector, which is my preferred way of doing business between government and providing services. I mean, imagine if we had a small business in each corner of the county that hired and contracted out to do their own, let's just go with the example of road maintenance. You know, then you're putting money back into the private sector and they have their own employees, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not, I'm not trying to upset the. Well.
Well, some, I think some counties do contract everything out for.
Well, Elsworth has townships.
But some, some can contract, contract this hired and welcome, it's paid all out. But, yeah, where, you know, where's the line there of how many county employees do you need? Some jobs, do you have to have an employee of the county to do the job or not? I don't know if there's a law on that, that's what Dawn was just saying, based on the federal government, if you had supplies, maybe you have to be an employee or something. I don't know if Kansas has that.
I, I know some that, that cleans now for an organization, and they're now a paid employee because they got.
Well, you're not supposed to be able to contract someone and then tell them what hours they have to work. That's why if you give them.
Component of it.
Right, but if you give them duties that they have to perform, then they can do it on their own at two o'clock in the morning if they want to. But the function is done.
Needs, the function has to be done, and also we may require them to be at a meeting or, or have different things. And be certified and qualified, you gotta comply with stuff, and sometimes there is a time you have to do that.
Well, and sometimes KAC has employment law classes during those things. That would be a good class to go to where you can answer that question, and you guys can kind of divvy those.
Well, we might have to bring up, yeah, when we go there.
We have one more thing to do, I'm sorry. We have to appoint to the L.A.P.C. board, so Mr. O'Hare is not there. And Brendan offered to take his place, and then, and then they also had a request and an approval by the L.A.P.C. board to appoint.
What's the L.A.P.C.?
The emergency planning committee, the committee, I don't know what the acronym is exactly, but yeah, it's the whole board.
Okay.
I attended the meeting on Monday.
That's right, right, yeah.
So Mr. Keach, who we just appointed to the Barker Fire Board, was saying he wanted to be appointed, and they approved, but we have to actually appoint. And then Mr. McKay. So I moved to approve the appointment of Mr. Keach and Mr. McKay, Mr. Robert Keach as PIO.
Public information officer, he'll be the person behind the camera?
Camera?
If ever we're in a disaster.
Oh, I don't, Lincoln County already has its own problems. And Mr. Brendan McKay, she's.
You know this, Mr. Keach?
As the transportation representative.
Behind the camera or in front of the camera? The one making the statement. So in front of the camera, in front of the camera.
Do you know this guy?
I know that we looked at his credentials when we appointed him. Moved and seconded. I know that we looked at his credentials when we appointed him to the fire board. And he already has some of the initial entry-level education that you do for the emergency management stuff. Whatever they call that, ISO this and whatever that, I don't, I can't keep up with all the acronyms, but.
What was Brendan's position?
Transportation representative. So there's the health department, Ladonna's secretary, Sean Estrel is now the chairman. Dustin Florence is there, now Brendan McKay, Robert Keach is on the Barker Fire Board. I was there, the commission attends, but, and then, oh, from the hospital.
Katie.
Katie Gardner, and, and John Paul was there too, so, what's wrong, Dawn? Okay, so those in favor of the approving the appointments, recommendations of the L.A.P.C., those in favor of, aye? Aye, motion carries. Anything else for us?
I have an outstanding action.
Your singular appointment to your sole board of.
What that does is allow me to go talk to the new department in an efficient capacity.
For a long, five-year planning thing? I see no problem with it, do you?
No, I just don't want to call it a committee, that's all, just a technicality. Yeah, I.
That's the only reason I did it, which gives me an opportunity to talk to him as an official on the board rather than as a private citizen because we're not in session, and you could appoint, that's why I did that.
Yes, so I move to authorize Commissioner Gableman as a representative of the commission to discuss with each department, projection planning. It's moved and seconded to allow them to approach each department for their projection planning into the future. Be that fiscal, all of that, you know, attrition, anything like that, succession plan.
And I'd like to, as I indicated, have something by the middle of December of some sort of a draft. Uh, because a plan would not start until twenty-twenty-one, but this would allow us to provide some planning guidance and some fiscal guidance to the folks for their twenty-twenty-one planning, which we need to do pretty soon. So if I can get something together and we can agree that this is generally the way we can go, we can work the thing.
Yeah, well, some lasting impact, instead of all this uncertainty, and then when the, whoever gets in here has some ideas. Not just has to learn everything and how the history of it was and then say, well, we've always learned of it. Okay.
You, you've got to be on board with this.
I, I just said something.
You're guaranteed to be here.
You really have to be on board, because we don't.
Well, yeah, you can run for commissioner next year.
No, that's, don't you remember when we had that?
Are you running? Well, come on now, commit.
Dennis said he wanted my job when I was done.
I am not committing, I'll tell you that.
Are we gonna vote?
Those in favor, vote aye, aye, motion carries.
I should have voted aye.
Just to be contrary.
No, because I have to work now.
Well, the other thing I wanted to remind us is, we said we would have a purchasing policy, I want to see that in writing.
Yes.
And we need to take time to work on the handbook.
Yes.
This coming, like, I wanna.
Does not Ladonna have that?
Well, she gave us some revisions, I have them here, their own suggestions for revisions, we really need to dig into that.
We can review them.
Well, I gave her a draft, a complete plan.
That hasn't come here yet.
I know, but I did give it to her, and it's, I'm sure it's not what we want, but it's certainly a full plan.
Well, you gotta start, we'll go from there.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Okay, anything else? Just, let's go over quickly, can we look at the bond books next week? Dawn, do you have anything on the agenda yet for the fourth? That would be December.
I don't, unless I have an election, the date.
November.
Can you just bring down the book now? You don't have to, I mean, there's nothing else other than us to look at it, read it, see what we understand, what we don't understand. So please put that on the agenda for next week.
Meeting Monday?
Yes, the fourth of November.
Can you do that? No, I'm, since Tuesday's the election, you're not a bit busy, are you? No, I'm joking here. How's that election prep coming, okay?
Okay, so the fourth, we will at least look at the bond books, and we know what we're talking about with the hospital board, what our obligations are, what their obligations are. We will move forward with that. If anyone else calls in to put on the agenda, Dawn, feel free to cut us off earlier on the, that day, if you want to stop taking people and just put like the highway department on there if someone else has anything. We do need to make some decisions about the IT contracts too, so hopefully.
Well, we kind of did here today.
Well, I'm gonna, oh, that's the email I need to send to, to the highway.
Sheriff's Department went ahead with Next Tech, and so did Ladonna, and Derek's gonna do Wilson.
Well, but what I'm saying is, we need to hear from the courthouse, kind of how they had that discussion, what happened there. Because ultimately, we still have to sign the contracts, but we ask them to kind of.
But we kind of, I think a lot of these groups have decided what they want to do. The highway department, we said, we can do Wilson with, I don't think they care. The group, the people in the courthouse here have to decide kind of maybe what they want to do.
And then the canvassing, so we have that on the fourth.
Canvassing's on the eighteenth.
That's the week later, isn't it?
There's more than that.
We're not meeting on the eleventh.
That's right.
Then we have the canvassing, we're starting early on the eighteenth. And then we have the luncheon on the twenty-fifth with the thing. And then there was one other thing that I saw in the minutes that we had. What did, what was that? Something about. To be put down.
Well, we've got our three-day absence.
No, maybe it was into December. Did we say, we talked about December, are we doing the half a day on the twenty-fourth? That's a freebie, so you know, that's a paid half a day.
Well, the thirty-first, we were gonna do a meeting at night, wasn't it?
Oh, that, that was it?
Thirtieth.
That was it. Well, yes, that was it.
New Year's Eve, why don't we just do a New Year's Eve and bring some liquor here, then we'll have a.
We would have a turnout. Are you offering to pay full, free bar?
It's his turn, he's the only one that had it.
No, he didn't, he didn't help to.
Yeah, but it's his turn again.
But yeah, yeah, okay.
I don't already think of it.
Then we stand adjourned?
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there anything I can do at the warm, breathing?